All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call to order the 1,618th regular meeting of the Thornton City Council. Before we begin, just like to remind everyone in the audience to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. The audience seating area is provided for observing council meetings from a seated position only. Audience members wishing to stand must stand in the aisle along the rear wall opposite of the council dais, all the way in the back. Also, if there's anyone in the audience who needs assistance in listening to or participating in the meeting and has not indicated so on the signup sheet, you can raise your hand and a staff member will provide assistance. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Item three is a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Item four is the Land Acknowledgement. Councilmember Salazar, would you please read the Land Acknowledgement this evening?
The city of Thornton respectfully acknowledges the land on which we stand is the traditional territory of the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Kiowa, Lakota, Navajo, Pueblo, Shoshone, and Southern Ute tribes and nations who were the original stewards of this land. We honor the history, culture, and contributions, both past and present, of these indigenous nations and tribes. We pay respect to their ancestors, elders, and present-day community members, and extend our gratitude to the indigenous people for their ongoing care and stewardship of the land, water, and resources. We also recognize the lasting impact of colonialism, forced removals, and continued injustices that have affected indigenous communities throughout history and into the present. We also acknowledge the labor of enslaved Africans and their descendants who worked this stolen land for the colonists and who continue to disproportionately face economic oppression, racism, violence, and exploitation. May this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our responsibility to be mindful and respectful of the land, its history, and the indigenous communities who call Colorado home, and to use it to guide our policies and decision-making for the people of Thornton.
Thank you. Item five is a roll call of council. Clerk, would you please call the roll of council?
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember Acunto?
Here.
Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Mayor Potembikolo? Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Here.
Councilmember Unrain?
Here.
Corvus, President, Your Honor?
Thank you. Item six is approval of the agenda. Are there any staff changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no proposed changes. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Councilmember Ayala?
Yes, I'd like to move item, um, let me see here.
7B?
7B to the next formal meeting.
Are there any objections? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Approval of the agenda as amended has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council.
Counsel, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item seven is presentations. Item 7A is a resolution declaring the week of September 17 through September 23, 2025, as Constitution Week in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Councilmember Sangrim, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Thank you. I introduce a resolution declaring the week of September 17 through September 23, 2025, as Constitution Week in the city of Thornton, Colorado, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas every American shares in this legacy of liberty, and we are grateful for the courage, conviction, and sacrifice of all those who have helped preserve and uphold the principles of a free society. As we remember the enduring importance of the Constitution, we also recognize our responsibility as citizens to respect and defend the values of our founding and participate in the unfolding story of freedom. And whereas, in celebration of the signing of the Constitution and in recognition of the Americans who strive to uphold the duties and responsibilities of citizenship, the Congress by joint resolution of August 2, 1956, 36 USC 108, as amended, request that September 17 through September 23, 2025, as Constitution Week, with Constitution Day being on Tuesday, September 17, 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, as follows: That the week of September 23, 17, through the 23, 2025, is Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities with that privilege involves, which that privilege involves, and I move for its approval.
Salazar, seconded then.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sangrim, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Thank you. I know that the DAR members are here in the audience somewhere. I'm not sure where they are, but they are here somewhere. There they are. And so just want to thank them for coming out and bringing this forward. I know they go around to all the cities and do this publicly. Several of us are members of the DAR, and we're just grateful for your service to the community and service across the country that you guys do. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll add mine as well. I actually became a member of the DAR last month. We've been working on it for quite some time. As you know, it takes a long time to verify your patriot. I found out I have five patriots in my family. Went through with one, so it was really exciting. So, I am excited to be a full member now and looking forward to participating. With that, would you please pull the council?
Counsel, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution to join me and the council up here in front of the dais for a picture. All right. Thank you very much, and thank you, ladies, for joining us. Item 7B has been moved to the next meeting, so we'll move on to item 7C, which is a resolution declaring the week of September 7 through 13, 2025, as National Suicide Prevention Week and the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution declaring the week of September 7 through 13, 2025, as National Suicide Prevention Week and the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Thornton, Colorado, whereas Suicide Prevention Month is a national event held in September each year to draw attention to and raise awareness of suicides and to acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends, remembering those who have died by suicide. And whereas, all too often, those who suffer from depression and suicidal thoughts feel that they can't discuss those feelings because of its stigma. According to the World Health Organization, nearly 3,000 people die by suicide daily, and for every person who dies by suicide, another 20 or more attempt to end their lives. And whereas, in a time when communities across the United States come together with the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline Organization, other mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members to promote suicide prevention awareness and spread the word about the actions we can all take to prevent suicide. And whereas, throughout Suicide Prevention Month, it is important to take time to reach out to those in need and help people understand the severity of this cause by providing information, or starting a campaign, or sharing stories of hope on social media. And whereas, the city, in conjunction with the Lifeline Network and its partners, are working to change the conversation from suicide to suicide prevention. #BeTheOneto is the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline's message for National Suicide Prevention Month and beyond, which helps spread the word about the actions we can all take to prevent suicide. And whereas, the goals for suicide prevention organizations across the United States are: One, establish effective, broad-based, collaborative, and sustainable suicide prevention partnerships; Two, support upstream, comprehensive, community-based suicide prevention; and Three, reduce access to lethal means among people at risk of suicide. And whereas, the city prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to equality of life among our residents, and through community awareness, residents are encouraged to join together to raise awareness of those victims of suicide throughout the month of September and continuing throughout the year. Whereas, through this effort, it will give those with suicidal thoughts in our community and around the United States a chance for a safe and positive future. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, as followed: That September 7 through 13, 2025, is hereby declared National Suicide Prevention Week, and September 2025 is hereby declared Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Thornton, Colorado, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Russell, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Yes, I think, you know, over the years, decades, mental health has been a more discussed item. I think many individuals, many in this room even, have had those that have struggled with depression or thoughts around suicide. So, this is one that I have read last year and this year and will continue to read, because I think there needs to be a concentrated effort in changing the messaging around suicide. I'm a veteran. I work with another veteran advocacy group, and there's very high statistics even amongst our service members who come back. So, definitely something that personally resonates with me, and I think with a lot of people. So, this is an opportunity for all of us to just do one extra thing. Reach out to somebody. Ask them if they need help. Ask them how they're doing. Something as simple as smiling at them while they walk past you on the sidewalk is enough to make a positive change and potentially save a life. So, we look as a community to take care of each other, and this is an opportunity for all of us to do that. That doesn't require a whole lot of effort. So, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilmember Russell for reading the resolution, and thank the city of Thornton for bringing this forward. I think that the idea of suicide prevention is an investment that is incredibly valuable to the entire community, and literally lifesaving techniques and strategies are being developed, and I admire the fact that the city is supportive of bringing those techniques forward and hopefully giving us all more tools to help our friends and family deal with times of crisis. I would be confident in saying that just about everybody in this room has been impacted in one way or another by suicide. And if we had more tools available to us and strategies for connecting with our friends and family, I'd like to think that that could be lifesaving in the future. So, I admire all of this effort, and I'm fully supportive of that.
Councilmember Sangrim?
Thank you. I know we've brought this forward pretty much since I've been on council, and I just want to remind folks that there are lots of resources out there, a fairly simple training, that is an eight-hour training, mental health, first aid. It does just provide some of those basic what to look for, what to do. Nobody wants to be put in that situation, but at least if you have that awareness. Again, it is just a simple eight-hour course, so I would encourage everyone to take a look at that. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll just thank my colleagues. Well said. Please pull the council.
Counsel, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 7D is a resolution recognizing the third week of September 2025 as National Co-Responder Appreciation Week in the city of Thornton, Colorado. Councilmember Martinez, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a resolution recognizing the third week of September 2025 as National Co-Responder Appreciation Week in the city of Thornton, Colorado, whereas the city of Thornton, along with the state of Colorado and the United States of America, have continued to address the issues of mental illness and substance abuse because of the large number of people affected directly and indirectly by these, as well as co-occurring conditions. And whereas, nearly one in five citizens of the city of Thornton, Colorado, and the USA currently deal with a certain level of mental illness or will in their lifetime. And whereas, the opioid epidemic continues to rage across the nation, Colorado and here in the city of Thornton, with over 100,000 overdose deaths occurring annually. And whereas, mental illness, substance addiction, and co-occurring conditions often lead to homelessness, criminal charges, and arrests, as well as expensive and less effective jail housing, broken families, suicide, homicide, and community destruction. And whereas, the many issues created by mental illness, substance abuse, and addiction are community problems, not just a problem for law enforcement, fire services, and emergency medical services. And whereas, many communities, town halls, cities, counties, and states have realized the need for additional resources to address these issues, and specifically when individual persons are experiencing crisis situations. And whereas, many of the above entities, including those in the city of Thornton, have identified in an evidence-based and effective program called Co-Response. And whereas, Co-Response is defined as pairing a crisis-trained mental health clinician with a first responder, such as a deputy sheriff, police officer, fire officer, or paramedic EMT, who respond as a team to intervene in the varying levels of crisis with the goal of diverting individuals from arrest and jail, if possible, diverting individuals from emergency room visits, and connecting those individuals in crisis with necessary and effective resources, such as counseling, access to medications, medical-assisted treatment, MAT for substance addictions, access to housing, food, basic necessities, and others. And whereas, the Thornton Police Department has a co-responder unit comprised of specially-selected and trained police officers and licensed clinicians since 2023. And whereas, the Thornton Police Department Co-Response Unit has responded to hundreds of emergency and non-emergencies calls for service, provided crisis intervention, conducted important follow-up, comprised safety plans, helped countless people get connected with the resources they desperately need for healthier living, including access to mental health treatment and counseling, antipsychotic medications, MAT, and other community services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Thornton, Colorado, as follows: That the third week of September 2025 is hereby recognized as Co-Responder Appreciation Week in the city of Thornton, Colorado, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Martinez, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is certainly worth calling attention to Thornton's efforts in building a co-responder program from the ground up. As mentioned in the resolution, since 2023, our officers in police department and our firefighters and EMTs have been working with co-responders to help save lives, and that includes better medical outcomes. It includes getting them the treatment, all the things that we mentioned in the resolution. Those are lifesaving things. And I will say that the city of Thornton is even more committed now than ever. We have, looking at the 2026 budget, although it hasn't been approved yet, one of the items on that budget to be discussed in a future council meeting is converting co-responders from a temporary contract position to a full-time, permanent role within the city of Thornton. So, I think that that is just one of the first steps, showing the commitment that the city has to this program, to saving lives, and making it safer for our first responders. So, I'm proud to introduce that resolution. I'm proud of the city of Thornton to bringing that program to life, and I look forward to approving that in the 2026 budget to keep this momentum going, and hopefully someday, we'll be able to expand that program and save even more lives.
Councilmember Sangrim?
Thank you. I just want to thank the co-responders that are in the room tonight for the work that you're doing, and I think that it's definitely made an impact, a very positive impact, not only for the colleagues that you work alongside with, but also for the community. So, thank you for your work as well.
Any additional discussion? I'll add thank you to my colleagues for well-stated statements as well, and I don't need to add anything additional. Would you please pull the council?
Counsel, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item eight is audience participation. This is a time for members of the community to speak on any item that is not on the agenda as a public hearing or going to be on a public hearing in the future. Pursuant to City Council's rules of order and procedure, speaking time is limited to three minutes per person, with a one-hour limit on this segment of the agenda. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers registered before the end of the in-person comment segment. Residents of the city, as indicated on the signup sheet, will be given preference in the order heard in each segment. The podium located on the dais of the council chambers must be used to offer public comment during the audience participation or public hearing sections of the meeting agenda. In the event of physical inability or preference, the public may offer comment by microphone while seated in the audience seating area. At no time shall the public comment be made while moving around the chambers. Ms. Rosenbaum, is there anyone who has signed up to speak under audience participation?
Yes, Your Honor, we have three individuals in person and two online.
Thank you. So, in just a moment, again, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak in this segment of the agenda, and it is limited to one hour. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. When it turns red and you hear multiple beeps, your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium, and those who indicated on the webinar registration that you wish to speak will be allowed to unmute and speak when the clerk calls your name. Ms. Rosenbaum, who's the first person signed up to speak?
Thomas Scoville, 13457 Williams.
I was born on Constitution Day. My daughter, my sister was born on UN Day. I think I got the better deal. 17 September, 1862, was the bloodiest day in US military history, in a bloody war where 700,000 Americans died in the cause to end slavery. I would suggest that the authors of our Land Acknowledgement incorporate that sad fact into their statement. God bless the Israeli Defense Force. They had a bad day today, but so did Hamas. Disarm the terrorists, and the dying will stop. I'm here because I'm concerned about that you may collectively act to support the large tax increase the Adams County School District, Adams 12 School District, has put on the November ballot. This issue is outside of your lane, and you have lots of city matters to deal with, one of which is putting white paint on the stripes in our streets so my old eyes can see them when it's dark and rainy. Even so, I understand as politicians, you may be tempted to sound off on this tax issue. Our government schools and their union bosses covet my money, but I'm not inclined to give them more until they fix things like poor academic performance and bad discipline. The goal should be for every classroom to be like the ones they have in Stargate, but school and union bosses seem not to care. It only takes one reason not to vote for something. Here is one of many. Adams 12 has an awful policy on gender matters. Now, for starters, let me say, by boys, I mean those with XY chromosomes. Of course, we all want to protect our students, and that includes those who are gender dysphoric. But it does not protect anyone by keeping secrets from parents. It does not protect anyone, it does not protect girls when we put boys in girl sports. It does not protect girls to put boys in girls' restrooms. It does not protect girls to put undressed boys in locker rooms with undressed girls. And on road trips, it does not protect girls to put boys in their bedrooms and in their beds. All of this is allowed by Adams 12 policy. It needs to change. You should encourage them to do that change. When they rescind this dangerous policy and fix performance and discipline, and when Colorado fixes our School Finance Act, then we can evaluate the adequacy of Adams 12 funding. In the meantime, I suggest you stay out of their knickers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Tom Lambo. No address provided.
All right. Hello, Thornton. I'm Tom Lambo. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Thank you for supporting the Constitution. I'm here, once again, objecting to your land statement, which really isn't a land statement, but an accusation against one group of people. Multiple times before prayers, I've stated, we are in a spiritual battle that is manifesting itself in the natural. Today is September 9, 2025. On April 30, 1789, in New York City, as George Washington raised his right hand and placed his left hand on the Bible, he was sworn in as the first president of the United States of America. The Bible was open to Genesis 49, a passage where Jacob is dying, and he passes on the Abrahamic covenant, the covenant made by God with Abram, later Abraham, to the next generation, or the 12 tribes of Israel. After the swearing-in ceremony, President Washington's first act as president was to lead members of Congress to St. Paul's Chapel, where they would pray and worship, a church service. There, President Washington made a covenant with God stating, "He will be our God, and we will be his people." He entered into a covenant with God for this nation. Covenants are agreements between two parties. In this case, the covenant which George Washington as the elected leader of the United States of George Washington, as the elected leader of the United States of America, entered into with God is still valid. God cannot change His word. God cannot change His covenant, which he enters into. Saint Paul's Chapel, where President Washington and members of Congress had church service, still stands today and is less than one hundred yards from the World Trade Center. The covenant with God for the nation began in New York, and because of the covenant, because of that covenant, New York is a spiritual battleground. There are only two nations that have a covenant with God, our nation, the United States of America, and Israel. God initiated the covenant with Israel, and George Washington, as the elected leader of this nation, initiated America's covenant with God. God doesn't take a covenant he enters into lightly. His word is everlasting. The covenant this nation has with God is everlasting. This nation exists to spread God's word to the rest of the world. And you before me cannot remove the everlasting covenant which God has entered into with this nation. This is God's nation. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Stephen Mathias, two zero seven six, East One Hundred Second Avenue.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. As a survivor, I want Thornton's sex fence policy to effectively prevent harm in the real world and stand up in court. At the last meeting, I flagged problems with the bus stop policy. I appreciate the city's work to revise it. Tonight, I'm recommending targeted amendments that make this ordinance more rational, just, and durable. On rational basis, the ordinance currently applies to sexually violent predators. That is a very small cohort, and they didn't all target children. If this policy is protecting children, the legal trigger should match that interest. Instead of SVPs, focus on individuals who must register for life for offenses against minors. Keep all of our residency policies, including the cohabitation rule, applied to the same category, and make clear exemptions for staffed and supervised medical, rehabilitative, hospice, retirement, and treatment facilities. These facilities already reduce risk through monitoring, and individuals within them either lack the right or ability to move freely. On equal protection, the proposed grandfathering operates so that homeowners can stay in place, while renters must move when their lease ends. There is no public safety rationale for an owner-renter disparity. Instead, we should allow anyone registered in Thornton before enactment to stay in Thornton so long as they maintain continuous full compliance. That promotes stability, incentivizes ongoing treatment with oversight and accountability, and avoids punitive outcomes that have nothing to do with risk. The minute compliance lapses, their protection should be gone. Finally, on due process, allow individuals to petition with notice to the city for tailoring or exemption based on individualized analysis, validated risk, treatment, proximity to likely victims, compliance, and stability. Relief should be narrow, conditional, and revocable for non-compliance. This is not a loophole. It is a case-by-case, record-based pathway that cures the ordinance's biggest vulnerability, punitive-adjacent restrictions with no individualized due-process mechanism, while preserving strong restrictions where needed. Please help me make these revisions. Together, we can protect Thornton, keep offenders accountable and supervised, and make the ordinance constitutional upon review. That is Survivor-Informed, Evidence-Guided Policy, safe, enforceable, and defensible. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
John Algy, four one eight seven, East Ninety-Fifth Drive.
Hi there. Good evening. Can anybody hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. John Algy, candidate, Thornton City Council, Ward Two. I am looking forward to our first Thornton City Council Candidate Forum taking place on Wednesday evening, September twenty-fourth, from six P.M. to eight P.M. at council chambers. My thanks goes out to both the city for hosting and the League of Women Voters, Adams County, for moderating. I feel it is very important, as a candidate, to face questions from our neighbors about our ideas and solutions to the problems we collectively face as a city. In closing, actions speak louder than words. I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Austin Johnson, four one eight three, East One Hundred Twenty-Ninth Circle.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
We can.
I would like to speak about the one five five one, East Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Maker Housing.
So, we'll have to hold your comments till the public hearing. This is general public comments at this time.
I apologize. Thank you.
We'll move you to the next one. Thank you. I think that was the last person signed up to speak?
Yes, Your Honor.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't know you needed to sign up? If so, you can come to the podium now.
Good evening, council. I hope everyone has been well. My name is Gabriel Cervantes. I'm a descendant of the Koeltikon and the Nawa. Praise the sun. I wasn't going to speak about this today because I honestly just feel like it's not really worth my time anymore, but I felt the need to tonight. One day, my niece came home from school with a history book, and as we know, history is written in the lenses of the victors, or so they say. And we can see that in our books. We can see that in the way that we're taught things. We can see it in every aspect. This day in particular, this book in particular, had a section of the Trail of Tears, and it was rebranded. Instead of a story about the forced removal, betrayal, and genocide of my ancestors, it was buttered up into a day, or a week, or a month of calm trips with your black-haired friends. This is why we have a land acknowledgement. This land isn't conquered. This land wasn't won. It, in the eyes of the United States Legal Code, according to treaties made in Colorado, it was stolen. This land was never ceded. It was repealed after the fact. It was legally stolen, in the eyes of the United States. This is why we have a land acknowledgement. And if you don't agree with this land acknowledgement, you may not like it, but this is history, and it's real. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
If there's anyone else that wanted to speak, can come to the podium now. All right. We are going to move on to the next item, which I believe most people are here for. Item nine is public hearings. And before I ask everyone to stand, Councilmember Sangrin, would you make a statement, please?
Yes, thank you. As Chair of Maker Housing Partners, the board, I am going to be recusing myself from this item, as I have previously done on all other housing authority issues that have come forward for the council, not because there is a direct conflict, but because I want to ensure that there's no perception of bias. I deeply value the work that Maker Housing is doing in the community, and I look forward to more of that in the future. I want to make sure that this process remains fair and transparent and beyond any question. So, for that reason, I will be recusing myself and removing myself from the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I will ask anyone in the audience who is intending to give testimony, including citizens who've signed up to speak, to please stand so you can be sworn in.
And please raise your right hand. Do you hereby swear or affirm that the testimony before your counsel will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you.
Item nine is a public hearing concerning a zoning amendment, including an overall development plan and planned development standards, and a conceptual site plan for land generally located north of East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, between Claude Court and Lafayette Street at one five five one, East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, one five five one, East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Maker Housing. Public hearing is now open at seven forty P.M. Kara Stoller, Senior Planner, will present this item. Please state your name, address, and whether you've been sworn, and if you have not, please respond to the clerk after she gives the ult.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. For the record, Kara Stoller, Senior Planner for the city at ninety-five hundred Civic Center Drive, and I have been sworn. So, this public hearing pertains to requests for approval of a zoning amendment and conceptual. Yes.
I think we can turn the microphone up just a little bit so that the room can hear.
This public hearing pertains to requests for approval of a zoning amendment and conceptual site plan for the purpose of developing a three-story apartment building with eighty-one units. The applicant has satisfied all noticing requirements, and the corresponding affidavits have been delivered electronically to be entered into the official public record for this hearing. All public comment received following finalization of the packet and provided to me prior to four P.M. today was distributed to council at the start of this meeting, and I would now like to formally enter this documentation, along with the meeting packet, into the record. This presentation will include an overview of the project from staff and the applicant, a summary of public input received, staff's evaluation of the applicable code criteria, and a corresponding recommendation. So, the subject site is highlighted in yellow on this slide. The property is generally located north of East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, between Claude Court and Lafayette Street. It is approximately three point seven acres in size. The East Lake Transit Station is located about a half mile south of the property, as is noted by the corresponding transit icon on the map. This station offers commuter rail service via the N-line, as well as multiple bus connections. Here is a closer view of the subject site. When the application was submitted, the property was zoned Neighborhood Services with planned development zoning to the north, east, and west, and parks and open space zoning along the Signal Ditch Trail. To the south is Business Park and East Lake zoning. You'll notice there are already a variety of housing densities in this area. This includes single-family detached lots, condos, and three-story apartments. The subject site is also near Century Middle School and Fire Station Number Four. All right. So, the next few slides are providing photos of the subject site and surrounding area. On this slide, the top-left photo is looking northeast along the Signal Ditch Trail, which is located to the northwest of the property. The subject site is to the right of the trail in this photo, and you can see that there are many mature trees on the left side of the trail along the ditch, which help to screen the neighboring single-family homes during much of the year. The top-right photo was taken from the southwest corner of the site and is looking east toward the Estates subdivision, and the bottom photo was taken from the Signal Ditch Trail, looking southeast across the subject site. These photos showcase more of the surrounding area. The top-left photo is looking east along One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, towards the intersection with Claude Court. You can see the railroad crossing sign for the tracks that run along the eastern side of the property. Again, the East Lake Transit Station is located about a half mile south of the site. The top-right photo is looking south across One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue and shows the Adams Twelve School District Building. And the bottom photo is looking north across the site and features the Century Middle School in the background. This last slide of, this last slide of pictures highlights the type of housing that already exists near the subject site. Again, the top-left is looking northwest toward the single-family homes across from the Signal Ditch Trail. The bottom photo is looking east towards the single-family homes there. While these lots don't have as much screening, they are set back significantly further from the subject site due to the hundred and fifty-foot railroad right-of-way that runs between them. And then, the top-right photo showcases the three-story apartment buildings that are located just a tenth of a mile west of the subject site. Moving on to the future land use map, here you can see the designation for the subject site is Transit Oriented Development, or TOD. The intent of this category is to create a mix of uses and a compact and pedestrian-oriented environment that take advantage of transit. Now, looking at the zoning map and overall development plan being proposed, as a reminder, when the application was submitted, the property was zoned Neighborhood Services, which is intended to allow for small-scale commercial development. This designation has been in place for over thirty years without any corresponding proposals being finalized for the property. The infill site's unique shape makes it somewhat difficult to develop. Therefore, the applicant is proposing planned development, or PD zoning, with standards that largely align with the multifamily zoning. The requested adjustments include an increased dwelling unit density, a reduced minimum parking requirement, a reduced maximum building height, and alternative landscape buffers. It should be noted that the zoning boundary extends to the center line of East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, and therefore encompasses more than just the three point seven acre property. Additionally, please note that the multifamily and Neighborhood Services standards are from the pre-two thousand twenty-five development code update rather than the code that went into effect on September first. This slide showcases the proposed site plan overlaid on a photo aerial to give an idea of how the development would fit into the area. Again, the applicant is proposing a three-story multifamily building with eighty-one units and hundred and twenty surface parking stalls. This development would also be required to make roadway improvements along East One Hundred Twenty-Eighth Avenue, and twelve feet of right-of-way dedication is already factored into their proposed site plan to accommodate this. One other thing to note, you may have noticed in the site photos that the property is currently home to a prairie dog colony. The applicant is aware they will need to make a good-faith effort to relocate the prairie dogs. However, this does not need to occur until a later stage of the development. Staff will ensure that the proper procedures are followed regarding this matter. I will now pass the presentation over to the applicant team to provide some additional information regarding their proposal, and then they will hand it back to me to speak to the public input and code criteria ahead of the recommendation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, neighbors, and staff. My name is Peter Lefari. It's my honor and privilege to serve as Chief Executive Officer for Maker Housing Partners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Can you state your address and whether or not you were sworn as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is, my address is thirty thirty-three West Seventy-First Avenue, Suite One Thousand, Westminster, Colorado, and I have been sworn in. Thank you. All right. Okay. All right. So, I'm first going to go over the agenda, kind of our run-of-show tonight. I'm going to make introductions for our team, talk about the project process, and outreach, our guiding documents, proposal, and then, of course, there'll be time for questions and discussion. So, our team consists of my wonderful colleagues at Maker Housing Partners, our fantastic architect at VTBS, as well as the Parker Company, who's been helping us with community engagement and land use and entitlement engagement. So, here's a bit about Maker. There's been questions about who we are and our statutory creation, and so, we proudly serve as Adams County's Public Housing Authority. Maker provides affordable housing, administers federal programs, and invests in community development focused on disrupting generational poverty via empowered residents and vibrant, sustainable, affordable housing development. You can see the Colorado State statute, which I threw up based off of questions we received during our planning commission, so I wanted to jump to that point for you. And then, also, talk about our fiscal strength as a political subdivision, special-purpose entity. Every dollar Maker generates is reinvested into Adams County through new affordable home development, acquisition, preservation, and community programs. Our board is appointed by the Adams County Commissioner, and this is our fifty-first year in operation. And so, we proudly serve across Adams County via dual-generation programs and services. We've recently received a very strong credit rating by Standard and Poor of an A+, which demonstrates our financial fiduciary responsibility and the market's response to that. We are a full-owner, operator, and developer of multifamily affordable housing. We currently operate nineteen communities, and you can see our unit count and the number of residents that we serve across the great county. We also have a full family and community vitality program, which is resident services, where we partner with nonprofits, as well as do some direct-service support internally at Maker, focused around wellness and economic mobility. And then, I'll just also share, and we'll see in the slides, that we do not just develop homes in Thornton, although we love to develop homes in Thornton. We develop in Westminster. We develop in an unincorporated Adams County, and we share that economic development activity across the county equally. All right. So, here are some of our recent community investments. Here in Thornton, we have Crossing Point North and South, an award-winning, multi-generational, intergenerational community, serving two hundred and six homes. You can see the breakdown there. We have sixty-four for elders and a hundred and forty-two for family. That's another transit-orientated development that we're very proud of, off One Hundred and Fourth in Colorado. Recently, Caraway, which is one of the first adaptive reuse projects in the Front Range in the last decade, which was a wonderful partnership with Adams County, where we adaptively reused a decommissioned county asset, taking a location that used to serve youth in foster care and transforming that with their input into a place of respite, where youth who have aged out of foster care can set down roots and thrive, as well as alto, where we co-locate our home office in Westminster, at Westminster Station. That's seventy homes. That is a mixed-use community, and we have a fantastic partnership with Kids' First Healthcare Clinic to provide pace-based pediatric care for kiddos and families that call the station area home. And then, we also renovate and preserve community assets, and you can see some of our recent developments there here in Thornton at Overlook. We just finished that this year. Very proud of it. A couple of years back, we did Aztec Villa, and then, we also have done Casa de Redonda, which is for elders and/or disabled community members in unincorporated Adams. We just finished that a few years back as well. Here's some examples of our recent developments, harmonious with market rate developments, very much the same type of built environment, follows all the same codes and regulations. Many of these have won awards. We're very proud of that, and just gives a taste for everyone here tonight to see the type of community investments that we create. We're building where people want to live. Here's an example of our geographic dispersion. So, just coming back to, as I mentioned previously, investing equally throughout the county. You can see there our communities, the seventeen, as I had mentioned, two additional ones that are third-party managed, as well as future development sites that you can see where we are endeavoring to build homes in the near and distant future. Here are some rent and income limits. There are questions from our neighbors and interested stakeholders in reference to why are the rents what the rents are, why are they placed what they are. We utilize rents as set by the Colorado Housing Finance Authority by law, and here are some of the AMIs that will be served at the community of Claude Court that you hear tonight. We also pulled some recent job postings to give examples of some of the professions that will call Claude Court home. I'm going to hand it off in a second, but I just want to kind of share, you know, councilmembers, Claude Court is a rare opportunity. It's a perfect alignment of land and need. It's almost as if this site has been waiting for this purpose. There have been market actors that have tried to develop this site and have failed, but when we stand on the site, what we see is children riding their bikes to when we stand on the site, what we see is children riding their bikes to school. We see seniors and elders resting in community gardens. We see families walking the trail after dinner. We see nurses, teachers, artists, small-business owners, first responders, Thorntonites, living close to where they serve. Claude Court is a place where, you know, trails, school, transit, and parks come together to create a stable foundation for families to thrive. On behalf of Maker, it would be our honor and privilege to continue our development anchor institution story here at this lovely site, building homes created for community with community and designed with balance and care and promise. So, I'm going to hand it off to our colleagues. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'm available to answer questions later.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Marcus Pockner. My office is 1480 Humboldt Street in Denver, Colorado. I have been sworn in. I'm here tonight as a land-use and community outreach consultant. Again, I want to thank the staff, Kier, for leading us through a very thorough staff presentation initiating this. We are here tonight to request two separate items. The first is a zoning amendment, a rezoning from Neighborhood Services to PD. The second is the corresponding site plan that goes along with that request, and we'll go through some in detail this evening. Here to frame the project site, I always like to start with a little bit of looking at the community amenities surrounding the site. This shows the parks, the trails, the grocery stores, the retail, all of this that surrounds. So many neighbors in this room understand this as a neighborhood. This is a remarkable start site to bring in additional community members. As you see the site on the right, it shows a little bit more of the opportunity of triangle. This is literally framed by trails and rails and a roadway. It is completely isolated from the surrounding neighborhoods. As there is trail, a railroad easement, and a roadway, it only connects by infrastructure surrounding to those neighborhoods. As we look a little closer at this 3.75-acre lot, it's important to look at the framework of that existing uses that surround the site. Again, it is located close to community amenities. It is in the East Lake TOD master plan, which I will talk about in some detail. I also want to note the blend of multifamily, significant three-story multifamily to the west and east of the site, single-family, school, and then industrial and offices to the south of this site. I do want to show just our process that we have gone through. We actually started with a charrette from experts, community members, and stakeholders to really start envisioning this site. That happened in 2022. We have been envisioning this site for three years, but then, and most importantly, we needed to transition to the neighbors. We needed to work with them. We actually designed a system where we worked with neighbors to the west on a focus group and the east, as the issues are different, the perceived issues and real issues, and then combined all of that feedback in this submittal, supported by Planning Commission, and now before City Council. We use something that we have developed called a concentric outreach philosophy. We absolutely believe that we can learn the most from our adjacent neighbors. Those great neighborhoods that surround this site have been very active. They'll be active here tonight. It does not mean that we get unanimity of support. It doesn't mean we even garner support from them, but we learn from them, and we incorporate that feedback into our site plan. We've also worked with community-wide assets to really understand and bring this through. This shows a linear picture of this outreach. From November of 2022, looking in that first neighborhood meeting, I want to focus on those last three meetings that have happened this year. We focused intently on landscape, traffic, parking, noise, and light. How do we buffer and transition? How do we become proper neighbors and really blend into that surrounding based on the guiding documents that are in place today? I'm going to frame this just as we did in the neighborhood meetings. This is what you hear, and you'll hear tonight. Really, what type of development should occur here? What should be here? What's the density? What's the height? All of those things. Council members, Mayor, you understand this process very well. Our guiding plans are what we have to follow for this site to move forward. Anyone that would come forward needs to look at the underlying guiding documents. So, on the left-hand side here, you see the existing Neighborhood Services. That was zoned, I believe, actually in 1993, 32 years ago, and then, there's a line. I want to stop right there. Since 2015, the last 10 years, there have been three iterations of planning documents about what should happen on this site, and each time, it's gotten more specific and has led us to the rezoning request that is before you this evening. I'm going to talk about those again. I just want to frame. Here's the existing context. Neighborhood Services will honor the existing zone district there in a sea of planned development. You see the existing neighborhood. Planned development is definitely the right zone district. Now, we need to look at the guiding documents to understand what should be embodied in this zoning request. I want to start with that first master plan. What leads us forward? Adopted by Thornton City Council in 2015, the East Lake Stamp Plan. This is the plan that guides all 600 acres in this site. We are part of that site, as you can see in the light-blue color. We are in the northeast planning area. I will read it directly. The northeast planning area is proposed medium-to-high residential zoning, which allows for 30 units per acre. Period. No ambiguity. That is recommended. We are coming forward with a residential zoning application at 23 units per acre, fully in compliance with the stamp plan for this site. Next, the second refinement takes us to what is the future land use? Based on that stamp plan, as you see that kind of pink fuchsia color there, it's TOD. We are bringing forward a TOD site, that triangle there. Again, noting on the north side of 128th, that brown color is mixed residential neighborhoods. There is substantial three-story product on the north side of 128th, and we tie in to the overall East Lake master plan. This is the context, why this development makes sense, and why it was adopted in your plan as the future land use to have a TOD designation, which we are bringing forward tonight. Finally, you all recently adopted in 2024 a housing needs assessment. You did the findings and then the recommendation. One finding I will focus on here. By 2040, we need 17,000 new homes in Thornton, and over one-third of those need to be for low and moderate income. That's the findings. Now, the recommendations. The first, encourage affordable housing development through density, all of the other tools that you have. And then, the last one, identify mixed housing opportunities in the city and promote a mix of housing typologies. Exactly what we are bringing forward in this application. We're going to transition here to our planner to now talk about the conceptual site plan. We have used your guiding documents. We're now going to focus on the conceptual site plan, and then, I'll come back and close out and focus on how we've continued to take the neighborhood feedback to incorporate into the site plan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eric Hall. My address is 1526 Cole Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado, and I am with VTBS Architects. We are the architect and designer of this project. I want to start-
And were you sworn in?
I was sworn in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to start with an early site study that was shared and presented even at that 2022 charrette process, just showing that this triangular-shaped site is technically complex to develop, both because of the shape and the excessive boundaries, the extensive boundaries that exist on all sides. The signal-ditch trail runs along the northeast corridor. This is great for access for a community-oriented affordable housing project, but it is a challenge for drainage. The railroad that exists on the northeast side of the property, similarly, you know, this is great because it provides an additional 150-foot buffer to the single-family, but it has potential challenges. You cannot run things into the, into that area either. There's a 30-foot utility easement in addition that's shown on the northeast side of this, you know, which is required and has been worked into the development concept, reviewed through our conceptual site plan, and accepted by all the referral agencies for how to manage what's happening within that utility easement. And finally, 128th to the south, which sets points of access. Those were given for this site, and 128th exists as kind of the highest source of noise for both residents that we would intend to live onsite and for neighbors due to the high level of traffic that exists on 128th. Starting with design principles, I just would start with saying that Thornton has an extensive guidance within their documents to speak to how developments and architecture should be laid out within the city of Thornton. There is a strong encouragement to base the architecture that we develop on the agrarian heritage of Thornton. In fact, the site that we are developing used to be a beet farm, and there's intentions within the public arts to recognize and acknowledge the history of the site in that regard. Also, I would note on the upper left is a picture of the Co-op Green Elevator that was transitioned into the actual East Lake Station RTD hub. What is worth highlighting there is just the vernacular and shape and form of agrarian architecture. Tends to be simple forms, gable roof shapes, and so, what we've attempted to develop really is a modern take on those traditional forms, which leads to a timeliness of style with simple functional gable forms, board and batten, lap siding. And then, also highlighting just proximity to the railroad that functioned for a long time and is future RTD usage. There's a rhythm and cadence to railroad that also informed our thoughts in developing and designing the architecture. I would just state, as we move into kind of pictures of this, that our goal from the beginning, and our goal always, is to create beautiful architecture, to look at providing contextually appropriate design with an emphasis on livability, both for residents and adjacent to the neighbors. This is a rendered version of the site plan. The, I'd like to just kind of speak to why the site ended up laying out the way it did, and it really starts with that site development slide, that the edges of this site have particular needs. I would start with 128th and just acknowledge that arterial roadway, we had a desire to hold the building from that for noise reasons, which is why we chose to locate parking between the building and the roadway. Then, if we look at the eastern side of the street, we'd note the dashed line there, which is showing that 30-foot easement for utilities, and that also led us to hold the building off of that side. The, you know, vertical architecture couldn't develop within that easement edge. Finally, I just point to the signal-ditch trail along the northwest, and really an intention to minimize the amount of massing that is aligned with that side of the street, where all of the amenity and green spaces are allocated and aligned along the northeastern edge of the site. Finally, I look at just the amenitization of the site, both interior and exterior, noting playgrounds, access to the trails, gathering spaces, community gardens, and exterior and interior, that there is a full bike maintenance and interior bike storage. That also includes e-charging for e-bikes, exercise areas, and supportive services. Finally, parking is provided at this site at 1.48 spaces per unit. That 1.48 per unit is providing for both residents and guests parking. We want to emphasize that in terms of designing and figuring out how much parking to add, that the aim is to right-size this, given the area, given Thornton, given the TOD context and Maker's experience in TOD affordable development. This is an architectural rendering of the proposed architecture. I want to highlight that this is a three-story massing, similar in height to the three-story massing that exists further to the west on 128th. Again, that we're looking at agrarian-style-inspired, simple gable roof forms. We're going with a steeper sloped roof on the sloped roof portions. Every unit has a patio and/or balcony. Again, emphasizing livability and an increase of just kind of variation of building plane and texture. Materials intended include cast-stone veneers, cementitious siding, accented dark window frames, earth-toned color palette. We strongly aim, in every project that we do, to develop architecture that we feel fits the character and is appropriate to the time and the goals of the city and the place where it's being developed. This next slide has a, just a flat elevation. That uppermost elevation is along 128th, and here's where I would speak to real desire to break down the massing of this building horizontally, such that the length of this building is broken into pieces that have a more standard kind of residential scale and a rhythm of repetition that hearkens back to single-family architecture. In terms of sustainability, intentional practices and sustainability are going to be utilized, emphasizing livability, conscientious use of resources. This does include zero energy-ready homes, multifamily version 2 certification, Enterprise Green Community certification, and full use of water-wise landscaping processes. This is my final slide here, where I really want to speak to just the zoning aspect of this. You know, why did we pursue a PD zoning instead of a multifamily zoning? Really, as we interfaced with community at the charrette level and in following, there was a goal from the beginning to say, what is the appropriate height for this property? Where the multifamily zone district would have allowed up to 60 feet, we're limiting the height in this zone district to 50 feet. The site also is in the TOD zone, as laid out in the stamp plan and the comprehensive plan, and so, our parking ratio is tailored to that TOD location. Also, through community interaction, we have sought to produce and include in our PD standards enhanced landscape buffers as they face the adjacent neighbors. Finally, the other request in the PD is about density, and we are pursuing a density in line with the stamp plan and comprehensive plan, maxing at, you know, 20, 24 dwelling units per acre. And finally, with the PD, that allows us to specify the kind of innovative and design amenities that want to be incorporated. And while I touched on some of those amenities, I would just reiterate here that that includes, you know, interior bike storage and work areas, dog wash, exercise and yoga, interior community gathering space, a game room, exterior patio, exterior play structures, grill area, dog park, community garden, pedestrian trail access, private balconies and patios, EV charging. And another one that came up in Planning Commission discussion is that the trash facilities in the facility are actually interior to the building, that there's trash chutes and interior trash room where trash is then taken to the curb on pickup day. With this, I would just end and say that the goal in all of this is a space that would feel, live, and work well, both, you know, for the residents of this community and in adjacent to the existing neighbors. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'll now finish up just with a few more slides here. I just wanted to take it and go through a few of those items. I focused again on our last three community meetings, because we will heard about these five issues, and you'll hear about them tonight. We want to again talk about how we've done reflective planning, learning from the neighborhood, and incorporating these into our plans. The first is looking at the signal-ditch trail, how we talked about an enhanced corridor, enhanced landscaping. These are your minimum requirements. We will be having eight-foot minimum evergreen trees. That was a specific crest to have to evergreen, as there's a lot of cottonwood on the trail as image there, and also to provide 24 additional trees as a buffer and transition to the single-family that surrounds us on the site. We'll also be doing that split-rail fence to really identify and delineate the fence or the trail network itself. I want to focus again just on the parking approach, how important we think that is, and how we heard from neighbors. As you all know, in a TOD zone district, it is usually one parking spot per unit. We are exceeding that by 150%. We have a shared interest in providing ample parking at this site. So, again, we are providing 120 spots for 100, excuse me, for 81 units, providing ample parking on that. Additionally, at the request of the neighborhood, we are using resident, will use resident identification stickers, so we're able to track if people are parking in the neighborhood, and that would be incumbent on our lease to enforce that they're not able to do that. Also, and most notably, we do not charge for parking. You hear about multifamily parking overflow because people charge for parking. We do that all the time in market-rate communities. That does not happen here and will not happen on this site. I just want to show on the traffic issues, a few items here. The primary signalized access at 128th and Claude Court is a Level of Service A. We are generating very little traffic from this site. If you look at the morning peak hours, things we all think about, there will only be 17 trips that come from this location in the morning peak hours. To focus a little bit more on the existing traffic, you will hear about that tonight. To focus a little bit more on the existing traffic, you will hear about that tonight. There is existing traffic challenges on that stretch on 128th. There are 20,810 daily trips. We will add 170 trips. We will be less than 1% of the existing traffic volume. We are not changing the traffic patterns whatsoever. To reiterate that, showing the Level of Service Full Movement to pull into our site, our second act, secondary access is a Level of Service F, because that's a controlled stop from a stop sign entering in an arterial. You actually want that to be a lower level of service so that we're able to control that and use that as a secondary access point. I just want to show, even though our traffic impact is so minimal, city staff appropriately said, still solve some of the existing challenges. Help us approach the existing traffic problems. So first, we are widening the right-of-way. We are giving 12 feet of right-of-way into our site. We are revising the signalized intersection to add a eastbound left turn, northbound turn lane to that site, so we're adding a new lane edge there. We're also adding two decel lanes to both of our westbound entrances. You can see that in pink. Those are the additional lanes that we are adding to this. Why does that matter? Because we are not changing any of the through lanes. So all existing traffic flows just as it does today, but we are adding lane edge to accommodate our site and mitigate any impacts that we would have to the surrounding community. I want to again focus on a great opportunity that we have in transit. That's to add pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. We want people to use the TOD and the trails and bicycle. Here, we have the Signal Ditch Trail, so we are immediately adjacent to that. We also have the now-approved 128th projected bike lane outside of this, so we're adding in additional right-of-way that someday can accommodate that. Again, providing the opportunity for much better pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. I want to focus on these two items again, as citizens will bring these up again. We do not add significant traffic to this, less than 1%. And people have noted, there is really some queuing issues as people turn into Citri Middle School here. It'll back up at Lafayette Street. A bus, if we need that at our site, will be able to pull into our site and then exit our site as well. So again, no change to the thoroughways or the roadways surrounding the site. Obviously, we believe that our students will walk to the school as needed, but we are able to accommodate any school bus. Lastly, I'm going to close here on this slide. We are completely cognizant of the noise buffer, being respectful for our future residents, and also using our building as a buffer from the noise that is 128th. Lastly, at the request and in full correspondence, we will use all dark side, dark sky provisions for our lighting, to be sure that our lighting does not affect any of the surrounding neighbors. Folks, our, our last image here is to look at all of the neighborhood comments that we've had and show something in just a separation. So the first three numbers on the left, I just want to focus on, this is the existing product. This is the Hunter's Glens apartment. They are currently 125 feet away from the enclave. Those are existing three-story multifamily. Our proposed use is actually more than that, 140 feet and separated by a trail, does not have direct access. We want to honor that setback and the same cadence that's in the neighborhood. On the left, to the east of our site, we are full 265 feet, structure to structure, and 165 feet of property lines. Again, very ample. Lastly, you see the blue dashed lines. We want to be sure and show in this view that we do not expect and will not have overflow parking issues. You would have to walk and drive a quarter of a mile and then walk back to the site by the roadways to get back to the site. There is nothing other than the trail connection or the roadway connections to the neighborhood. We will not have overflow parking because we're parking adequately, and the site has a natural attenuation not to have overflow parking. We very much appreciate this opportunity to thoroughly go through our presentation. We very much look forward to your questions, and I'll turn it back to staff.
So the applicant team already spoke some to the neighborhood meetings that occurred during the review process, but I wanted to highlight a few more things. First, the code requires that notice be sent to all property owners within 1,500 feet of the subject site. In this instance, that amounted to about 478 property owners. While only one neighborhood meeting is required, a total of four outreach events took place for this proposal, and the dates and estimated attendance for each of these meetings is noted on the slide. City staff directed the applicant to host a second neighborhood meeting for the proposal to ensure the public was well-informed, as the first meeting was highly attended and multiple audience members mentioned having trouble hearing the speakers. Prior to the second full-scale meeting, the applicant team also decided to organize those two open houses that they mentioned for the east and west neighbors to have more focused discussions. For the second full-scale neighborhood meeting, in addition to mailing a letter to all property owners within the required notice area, the applicant sent an email notice to anyone who had previously provided their email address on one of the open house sign-in sheets. City staff also posted a notice of the meeting on next door. As a courtesy, city staff also sent an email notice to the same list of addresses ahead of both the Planning Commission and City Council hearings. This included nearly 100 individuals. All public comments received prior to finalization of the meeting packet were included in Attachment 12 of the zoning communication. This included a petition voicing objection to the proposed development that was signed by 393 individuals. Staff received 47 additional comments following finalization of the meeting packet. These letters were distributed to council at the start of this meeting and were previously entered into the record. There were 24 letters voicing support for the project, 22 opposed to the proposal, and the last letter mentioned seeing both pros and cons to the development. So this slide highlights some of the questions and comments that came up from the public, both at the neighborhood meetings and within the letters that have been sent to city staff. They pertain to wanting to know who owned the property, when it was purchased, and where the applicant got their funding, what the rental rate would be, and what criteria residents would have to meet to live in the building, whether the building had to be three stories tall, what the impact on property values and crime in the area might be, as well as a preference for maintaining the existing zoning designation. Others indicated they would prefer to see owner-occupied units versus a rental product, and there were concerns about too much density being proposed for the site. Others thought there would likely be result in problems with noise, light, safety, traffic, and parking, and concerns about impacts to aerial wildlife. The applicant did speak to a number of these items with their slides. So looking at the city services analysis, you may notice that the format of this slide has been revised from previous hearings. We removed the green, yellow, and red ratings for each of the different divisions because we found that this tended to cause some confusion in the past. So moving forward, staff will just be speaking to any items of particular significance. In this instance, there weren't any noticeable impacts to financial, water and sewer, fire services, or traffic engineering evaluations. In terms of the police services evaluation, data was collected from two existing apartment complexes for comparison, one being income restricted and the other being market rate. A summary of the corresponding statistics for each site is summarized on this slide. On a proportional basis, the income restricted apartments averaged three more calls for service and one additional incident report per month compared to the market rate site. While it is projected that the proposed development would require additional police services in the area, the city does have sufficient resources to address this. So looking at some additional considerations, the applicant did speak to sustainable design elements that are to be incorporated into the project. As a reminder, this included things, but is not limited to, EV parking provisions, low flow water fixtures, and energy star construction. No metro district is currently proposed, and in terms of the school district analysis, the developer will enter into an agreement for cash in lieu of land dedication for public schools with Adams 12. Referral comments from the school district projected the development would result in seven additional students, three at elementary level, two in middle school, and two in high school. These figures are based on the school district's established student generation rate, and it should be noted that each type of residential product uses a different multiplier. So multifamily uses actually yield the lowest number of projected additional students on a per-unit basis compared to single-family detached, single-family attached, and modular homes. At this point in time, it is estimated that the school's cash in lieu requirement would amount to somewhere around $16,000. Moving on to the corresponding code criteria, looking first at the zoning amendment, the proposed PD zoning is consistent with the future land use designation of transit-oriented development, as it would allow for compact development that is able to take advantage of transit. It is also consistent with several comprehensive plan goals and policies as outlined in the communication. This includes encouraging the development of affordable and workforce housing and planning for equitable distribution of housing options throughout Thornton. Concentrating higher-density housing options near existing services and amenities where established infrastructure exists and/or high-frequency transit exists is also desired. Please keep in mind that although the applicant is proposing affordable units, zoning only dictates land use. In other words, all apartments fall under the same land use category, whether they are affordable or a market rate product. Looking now at the planned development criteria, while the zoning that was in place on the site when the applicant was, when the application was submitted, did not allow for any residential uses, much of the surrounding area has previously been developed with various densities of housing. Therefore, rezoning the property to allow for the development of one multifamily structure is not out of character with the existing community. Additionally, the proposed PD standards are sensitive to the surrounding area, as the maximum building height is 10 feet less than what would have been allowed in the multifamily zone district, and enhanced landscaping is proposed were feasible to help screen the Finally, looking at the conceptual site plan or CSP criteria, the subject site is a priority area for infill, as it is designated for transit-oriented development, and the applicant's proposal to build affordable multifamily units will promote a diversity of housing options. There are adequate facilities to serve the proposed development, and the CSP complies with all applicable use, development, and design standards, including circulation, pedestrian connectivity, landscaping, setbacks, and open space requirements within the proposed PD and the code. Now, moving on to the Planning Commission summary, following a public hearing on August 19th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning amendment, overall development plan, and plan development standards by a vote of five to three. They also voted for approval of the conceptual site plan by a vote of six to two. A total of 22 individuals spoke during public comment, with only two people voicing support for the proposal. Opposing comments focused on the development changing character of the neighborhood and leading to crime and traffic issues. A few individuals mentioned being supportive of affordable housing overall, but feeling that the subject site was not a good location for it. The Planning Commissioners generally felt the proposal met the corresponding code criteria and aligned with other adopted city plans. This includes alignment with the transit-oriented development, future land use designation in the comprehensive plan, as well as conformity with the East Lake at 124th Station Area Master Plan, which identified the subject site as being suitable for residential development of up to 30 units per acre. The commissioners who voted against the proposal felt that the development was not compatible with adjacent properties or walkable to services. So in summary, the proposal complies with the criteria in Sections 1841, 1842, and 1843 of the pre-2025 Development Code pertaining to zoning amendments, plan developments, and conceptual site plans. This proposal requires two actions, and staff's recommendations based on the findings in the communication are for the zoning amendment to approve the ordinance to establish PD zoning on the property with an overall development plan and plan development standards, and for the conceptual site plan to approve the resolution for the proposed residential development. This concludes the presentation, but both staff and the applicant are now available for any questions.
All right, Council, questions for the applicant or staff? Councilmember Russell?
You'd mentioned the numbers for the letters of support versus those that were opposed. Could you repeat that for us?
So the numbers I referenced were specific to what was submitted after the packet, and I believe, let's see. It was 24 letters voicing support for the project and 22 opposed, with one kind of being in the middle.
Councilmember Ayala?
So there was some crime analysis done for the Maker project. I was just wondering if there were any crime analysis done of any of the surrounding, like, similar housing neighborhoods around this specific area?
So in terms of the comparison sites, one of them was the existing apartment buildings within a tenth of a mile of the site, the three-story structures there. They were one of the comparative sites, and the other one was another Maker project that was referenced earlier at 104th and Colorado.
Councilmember Martinez?
No surprise, I have a lot of questions, so you can interrupt me if you want to chime in as well. The first question I have is about Maker Housing. I'm curious to know a little bit more about Maker Housing. How is, how is it funded? And also, if that funding coming from Adams County, what, what kind of requirements is Maker Housing obligated to fulfill as part of that public funding?
I will let the applicant speak to that.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we, we fund these community assets via the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is not federal funding. Occasionally, depending upon the available federal funding made available by Congress, we'll use home funds, Home Opportunity Investment Program, or the Community Development Block Grant. Those generally constitute less than 10% of the overall pro forma, or the capital stack of the development. We receive no direct funding for operations from any local government. We subside and subsist off of our real estate portfolio. These assets are not public housing. That's why they are maintained at the level that they are. It's kind of a shared burden between our members, renters, we call them members, as well as our operational practices. And so we have received some federal, some local funding that was made available through the American Rescue Plan Act. We also compete for funding from the Division of Housing, which is a department within the Division of Local Government, EDOLA. We also have competed for, but have yet to receive, but we are eager to do so, Proposition 123 funding. I will also mention that this development, if we are so approved, and once, once the, once it's approved, would count towards Prop 123 unit requirements. And so, long story short, is we subsist and exist off of our business operations. We receive grant funding, and then we compete for those low-income housing tax credits. That brings in the equity and then keeps our debt low so that we don't have to service high-debt interest rates off of the rent of our members.
Okay. My next question is, I think, would be relevant to Maker. Does the, going back to the rent table that you showed at the very beginning of the presentation, does the rent table indicate that the amount of rent charged to residents, does that vary based on the income of the applicant? Because you showed a, a range of different things. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, Councilmember, thank you for that question. And so it's updated annually, based off of the Housing and Urban Development Annual FMR Rates, which are published by HUD. Then the Colorado Housing Finance Authority updates them. It's a publicly available document. I have it in front of me here. It stipulates maximum rents as well as income limits based off of family size and demographic. And so as an example, on our higher end, because this will serve Thorntonite's earning at 70% of AMI, if you are at 70% of AMI and you're renting a one-bedroom, this was just updated, and this is in reference to escalating costs across the front range here in Adams County, at $1,839 would be the maximum rent for a one-bedroom for a 70% of area median income individual. Let's say that's a family of four. That family of four could not exceed $98,070 annually. On the lower end, if we have a 50% On the lower end, if we have a 50% AMI unit or home, and that is a one-bedroom, that one-bedroom would be $1,313, and if that's a family of four, they could earn no more than $70,050 per month.
Okay. So, for example, a single person making $49,000 a year would be charged 13, around 1,300 rent, but their neighbor, if they made 68,000, they would be charged toward, in the upper end, at 1,839. Is that, do I understand that?
Correct. It's set on 30% of their income.
Okay.
And they have to earn two times the rent to qualify. That is a, that's by state statute.
Okay. And is there, does that factor in at all in, on the approval of, of rents? I mean, do you have like a prescribed number of 70%, 60%, 50%? Or is it just first come, first served?
No, we do have a set designation of units at the 70%, 60%, 50%. They all have to average, though, at 60% of AMI for all of the units, once they are averaged out.
Okay. And could you remind everybody what the breakdown of the number of units are? How many one-bed, two-bed, three-bed? I know it's in the packet, but I don't recall seeing it in the presentation.
Yeah, I may call my, yeah, I'll have Eric, our architect, answer.
So, the specific question was, what is the breakdown of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units? There are 34 one-bedroom units, 32 two-bedroom units, and 17 three-bedroom units.
Okay. So, vast majority is one- and two-bedroom, just a handful of three-bed. Okay. I think my next question is really more towards our staff, because it's a question about the, the details of the plan development. Can, can you help me understand how the plan development provides for enhanced landscape buffers? Is that because of the specifics of this plan development? Or is that generally, plan development always equals more options for landscaping?
Yeah, so, that's specific to their proposal. Because of a lot of the boundaries of the site being impacted by easements and things like that, they had to come up with kind of alternative ways of meeting the typical landscape requirements. And so, they are providing enhanced areas, we're able to, to kind of substitute for the areas where you can't provide as much landscaping.
Okay, yeah, because there was a cool, maybe we could put that built-out site plan up with the landscaping up? Because my next question is about all the concerns that we have on the record from the residents about the three-story building being adjacent to single-family homes on the, on both sides, west and east side. But in the east side in particular, with the, there's a bigger buffer due to the railroad. How, how does that landscaping design in the, in the plan that we have here alleviate those concerns?
So, I think where they're able to, they're providing a lot denser plantings than would normally be required. The challenge on the eastern side, side of the site is, there is a 30-foot sanitary sewer easement that runs in there that limits the ability to plant anything of substantial size. So, I think based on the fact that they have the larger separation from the homes in that area was part of why they had designed it in that fashion, but the applicant may have more they want to speak to with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just add that with regard to the PD standards, the way that it is written is that Thornton defines a tree as a tree equivalent, which may be a tree, or it may be a number of taller shrubs, or other, other ways to meet something that's considered a tree equivalent. And so, the specific language in our PD states that in every 50 feet where there is enhanced landscaping happening, there would be an additional tree equivalent added. And I think Marcus, when he was speaking, spoke to the fact that if you crunch those numbers, that comes out to like 24 additional tree equivalents on the site compared to the standard zoning provision of, of one for every 600 square feet.
Okay, that, that kind of helps me understand what is going on in the PD, but I'm interested to know if there is anything more that can be done in addition to what we've already seen, within the boundaries of the property, right? Within the bounds of the, the oil pipeline, the easement for the railroad? Are we, are we at the maximum amount of mitigation for this issue, or is there anything else that can be done within, within reason?
The one thing I would like to highlight is that this exists currently as a conceptual site plan, not a finalized landscape plan.
Okay.
So, it does lay out parameters that we would design under, but when we look at the final landscape plan, it's going to be fleshed out more than this one is. So, I can't specifically speak to how many more trees could we potentially say, or even how many definitive trees do we have where this is laid out? So, our landscape architect, while not present today, has laid out areas that speak to trees and tree equivalents. I, I apologize. I gotta lean right close to it.
Okay. Are there any other tools available that address this issue of, like, view sheds from three-story buildings into the properties of others? I know we talked about landscaping, that one's obvious. I'm not a, a planning expert, so is, are there any other options, or can you share what, what you've talked about at least?
Yeah, in terms of enhanced landscaping buffer, there is use of fencing, there is use of burming, those kinds of things can allocate, but in terms of distance, we're looking at, if we, if we looked at ratios and said, okay, I've got a two-story building here, and then 265 feet away, I've got a three-story building here. I mean, those sightlines are, are pretty shallow.
Okay, yeah, so landscaping is probably the most effective way.
Yeah.
Because, due to the, the geometry. All right, well, my next question then is about the, the rail, the light rail. It's, is that right away part of the planned RTD Fast Trax program to complete the end line? And do you know where those future stops are planned? I'm only asking because I know that recently in the state legislature, there has been movement to get that end line completed, so the probability of that happening has, I believe, improved. So, I'm, I'm interested to know how that would impact this property, or vice versa? How would that, this property be a part of that if it was approved?
So, I was in a meeting with some RTD staff just about a month ago, where they were kind of evaluating options for the next northern stop that would be planned at 144th and York. And so, this line would run further that distance if that station were to be built, but at this time, they said based on, they're not being funding designated for it officially, it's probably at least a decade out at this point.
Okay, so not really a consideration here yet. And then, back to the presentation from the Pockner Group, they, was mentioned that there was regional engagement. Now, I know, because I've received many of the feedback from the community on the local and the adjacent community, but could you share a little bit more detail about what type of regional engagement occurred?
Sure, absolutely. When we talk about the concentric impact, Counselor, we always talk about the most impacted, the immediate neighbors, and learning from them. But then, when we talk about regional, that really goes back to that first meetings when we had the charrette to talk about the need for affordable housing, transit opportunities, TOD, and how to scale it appropriately. That first meeting was actually in 2022, and in that meeting, we decided not to pursue 30 dwelling units per acre, but to transition down to 23 dwelling units a acre because of the neighborhood context. So, those were the regional leaders. It was actually 50-plus people, teachers, school district, all of surrounding property owners. So, that really envelopes and talks about a lot of that kind of larger regional context. I'll also add, just to your earlier question, TOD is always identified as within a half-mile. We are in a TOD site. We are under a half-mile, and so even the existing station, we believe, is key to that. Future expansion of that to the north obviously would continue to grow that, but we believe this is a truly TOD-anchored site.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned TOD, because it kind of leads into my next question. I think TOD and parking are kind of linked together to a certain degree, and we have received many concerns from the, from the neighbors about the parking. And I know that an underparked facility poses an increased risk on the long-term sustainability of a multifamily development. So, how will the proposed development be able to mitigate the potential negative impacts of the reduced parking?
Yeah, first, I just want to restate how much we have a shared interest in providing ample parking. These are our residents, we want them to be able to park there and live there and really experience that. You all know that you adopted a new TOD parking standard, I believe, September 1, and just to run that as a comparison, not to say that's the right analysis, but under the new code, this site at 81 units would park at 98 total parking spaces. That's 1.21 per unit. We are parking at 122 spaces or 120 spaces. We are right at 1.5, and that's for us. We also, because we heard this at Planning Commission, in the intervening time here between Planning Commission and today, and we'll enter it into the record, we commissioned a parking analysis of the three sites that we showed, the newest sites here, to look at ours. All of them are parked at an average of 1.5, what we're proposing here, at all times of day, three different analyses done on each of the properties. There is 45% of our parking is open at all times. So, we only utilize 55% of our parking in our properties. So, again, we believe we are providing more than ample parking, and we want to honor that in the neighborhood as well, and honor that request, and that's why we're over-parking from a traditional TOD perspective.
Okay, that's, that's helpful clarification. And then, there also, you mentioned the parking with the stickers. What does that program look like? How would that be enforced?
Yeah, we, we actually, and we hear this often, there was a lot of comments from the neighborhood, I think very fairly, that there's overflow parking from some of the existing multifamily. Market rate generally charges for parking, so a lot of times you see spillover parking in the neighborhood. So, we're doing two things. One, we never charge for parking, we want our residents to park there. Secondly, we want to be able to identify our residents, right? So, we have a sticker, when I live there, I get a sticker, and that's assigned to my lease and my building. If that is becoming problematic in the neighborhood, always parking on a side street, we are able to be contacted and try to work with that resident, so we don't have that overflow. So, it's just a way of managing and operating respectfully and as part of the community. So, it's just an extra step that we're putting in place.
Okay. And then, well, my next question is probably for staff, about, because it's about the police study. You mentioned that it was compared with Crossing Point, and I think I understand, but just to be clear, the Crossing Point North, Crossing Point South, one of them, is one of those dedicated to the senior facility?
Yes, one of the three buildings.
Okay. And did we not, did we use the senior facility in comparison, or was it all of them?
My understanding was all three.
Okay. So, I, I find that a little bit interesting, because I, I would really be interested to know how the, internally, just at Crossing Point, how the distribution of calls and incidents on, you know, between the senior residents and the, and the rest. But that's just, because it seems like there's a very different population. And then, okay, one more question. It is about the school analysis. That was conducted by Adams 12, right?
Correct.
And did the school district differentiate market rate multifamily versus income-restricted multifamily when it looked at how many students would?
To my knowledge, that was not mentioned in their analysis.
Yeah, I, I heard from, you know, there's many documents in the record that are skeptical of that, that result, and it seems that might be, you know, there, there is a different, I don't know if you're comparing apples to apples. So, that was it. I will probably have more questions, but that's it for now.
Councilmember Unrain?
Excuse me. Get the, count on the apartments again, which, which were one, two, and three-bedroom. I didn't get, get all that information from you.
Thank you. Yep. So, in terms of answering questions on number of units, there are 34 one-bedroom units, 32 bedroom units, and 17 three-bedroom units.
Excellent, okay, thank you. You mentioned in the presentation on the onsite slide that there was a, going to be supportive services. Does this mean that there's a full-time manager on the residence at all time? Or if not, what, what exactly do you mean by supportive services?
I think I defer to it.
Thank you, Councilmember, happy to answer that question. There will be a full-time community manager, a full-time assistant community manager, and most likely two maintenance professionals onsite. We will, depending on demand, have resident services. We have housing navigators, we also have community organizers that help folks, you know, work towards the things that they care about. That will have office hours at the location. We also have amenity space for partners like Kids First, Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, Food Bank of Iraqi. So, we have hoteling space where folks can come in and provide services based off of the prevailing demand from community members. Sometimes it's for tax services when it's that time of the year, other times it's to bring in backpacks for school drives. It's really driven by the community needs, based off of our surveys and engagement from site staff.
Okay. And you have any guidelines, rules, or limitations as to how many residents you can have in each unit?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. So, the occupancy limits are three people for one-bedroom, five-bedroom for, five people for a two-bedroom, this is maximum, and then seven people, up to seven people for a three-bedroom. I want to make it clear that we, following the feedback from our neighbors in reference to this question, we went out and reviewed the average household size for our comparable buildings here in Thornton, and the average household size regarding one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom averages out at 2.2 individuals per unit. And that's for Crossing Point South, that's for all of our recent Thornton communities that we've developed.
Okay, that's helpful, because with the 1.5 parking spaces per unit, depending on how many adults are there and how many drive, those could be consumed very easily.
Yes, and if I may, Councilmember, we also have a one-parking sticker per leaseholder policy, no more than two parking stickers per household, and this is made abundantly clear when individuals are looking to lease up a home at our communities, that we will only provide those stickers, and any unauthorized parking activity is subject to the state's towing laws, which we follow.
And, and if you have more residents than you, in a, in a, in an apartment that have stickers for, is there any kind of a suggested backup plan, how they should park or anything?
Well, there could be a reasonable accommodation request, which we will follow with our substantially legitimate nondiscriminatory legal obligation, Councilmember. Those are one-offs. What we found is from our recent parking study, as my colleague Eric shared, we are significantly overparked, meaning that we have a lot of capacity. And so, we have not run into those issues in our new developments. Some of our communities that are aged, that were developed in a bygone era, are not applicable at this site because of the way that this site is developed.
Okay. And maybe if you're somebody else, the gas line that runs through the east side of the property, is that a high-pressure gas line?
I'm going to give that to my colleagues, I believe that is correct.
So, that gas pipeline is not on the subject property, is it actually within the railroad right-of-way? So, it is beyond the boundaries of the subject site.
Okay, but it, it's close enough to the property, you know, if it's a high-pressure gas line, or if there's any booster pumps on that property?
Say that last part again, please.
If there's any booster pumps on the property?
I am unsure of that. I don't know if there's anyone else that knows more specifics.
Yeah, while I can't speak with complete authority, as the architect, the civil engineers worked through this, and then the review of the, I wonder how close to this I need to be. Can you hear me? I apologize. Make this podium even taller. The, yeah, high-pressure gas line is in the RTD right-of-way. There is not a booster pump on our property. I do not know if there is one somewhere along that line, but that high-pressure gas line is not only adjacent to our property, it continues on and rolls through these neighborhoods as well. So, I would just make a statement that it is an existing condition, not just for this project site, but for all of Thornton in this area.
Okay, and that's natural gas, correct? Okay, and that's natural gas, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions.
Councilmember Ayala?
So I just have a question. Could you outline the routine maintenance schedules for the facilities and explain how we can be assured that the constant upkeep is happening? I've heard from residents in my ward that maintenance often appears event-driven, and they would appreciate more regular attention to the outside of the buildings, outside of special occasions.
Thank you, councilmember. You know, we do sidewalks every day to pick up trash. We have maintenance on staff and onsite every day. We have routine inspections from our investors, as well as state agencies and entities, and to include the county, depending on funding sources. We take great pride in our assets. Of course, if individuals come by on a weekend or on a day when there's trash pickup in a community that has aged infrastructure and not like what is being proposed today, it's going to take for us, that's not an emergency. We have 24/7 on-call, so if it's a maintenance emergency, folks will come out and address it, if it's fire, flood, or some sort of major concern. We'll come out, we'll come out on a holiday, we'll come out at any time of the day. There's many instances of that demonstrated. Our staff is very committed to providing a habitable environment. We're also subject to the laws and regulations from the state assembly when it comes to warrant of habituality. And so we turn around our maintenance tickets in a timely fashion. Everyone is, we're earning folks renewals, right? So it's not just when folks move in. We want to make sure that folks want to stay. It's far better outcomes for them and for us if they renew, and that is mainly driven by their customer satisfaction when it comes to timely and quality maintenance orders and the satisfaction of their, of said concerns.
How often are they asked about their satisfaction in their living?
We do surveys periodically. We have site meetings, town halls consistently. We have many opportunities for individuals, members at our communities, to provide feedback to us, for us to be able to meet their needs. And we also have co-location. Our office is co-located with one of our communities, and so we see our members every day and have opportunities to engage with them. There's community organizing and community councils where folks and individuals have opportunity to engage with staff, up until myself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Cunto?
Thank you. Just, I may have missed it, but the access to the front doors, are they like traditional, like open-air access where I can walk up, knock door, are they key fob interior access?
All-access control, key fob only, so no open-air access to any of our modern communities.
Do you provide, from personal experience, I find that a lot of times apartment complexes like that are very reluctant to share key fob access to first responders. There's been many times where I've had to stand outside doors, getting ready for breaching tools, because we can't gain access to the building. So what is the policy for you guys and this Thornton, I guess Thornton staff, do they require knock boxes for public safety?
I'll have to, I don't want to misspeak here on this very specific question. Eric, you have access to that?
Yeah, so I would say that all of our modern facilities are equipped with knock box at access, and the discussion with fire departments is typical first responders, that they have that knock box, knock box have appropriate access to the building.
Fire services has access to the knock box. What about the police department? That's oftentimes two different things.
I appreciate that clarification, and I don't know if someone else can answer that addressly. My personal experience is in communication with the fire department.
Hi there, Steve Kuncher with Maker Housing Partners, address 3033 West 71st Avenue. Steve Kuncher with Maker Housing Partners, address 3033 West 71st Avenue in Westminster, and I have been sworn in. You bring up a great point. Throughout the process, there's coordination with the fire department to include knock boxes. And so what we've been doing, but the police department is often not included in those discussions, but what we've been doing like at Crossing Point is having conversations with police department about locations of security cameras, access control systems, providing a code to those access control systems, so when they get a call, the 911 responders can relay that code, and so they can get into the building.
Okay, thank you.
But I would agree, it needs, it's a solution that should be included in this process along with fire.
Other questions from council? Don't forget, we'll have another opportunity to ask questions after the public comment as well. I actually have a few questions for you. You had mentioned that there are 19 properties, your purpose is upkeep, and two in particular in Thornton, you did a complete overhaul. Can you give some examples of what was done on those properties to improve them, and then what kind of maintenance will be done in the future?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm actually going to ask my colleague, who was just up, who led both those projects.
Thank you for that question. So we just completed the renovations at the overlook of, at Thornton. 160-unit tax credit community, all of the units are at 60% of the area median income. It was built like many communities in Southern Thornton in the early '70s, had a lot of deferred maintenance. So we did a full renovation inside-out, approximately $35 million project, new landscaping, we replaced utilities, all the driveways, retaining walls, playgrounds, pool, brand-new clubhouse, units, buildings inside and out. We took everything down to the drywall, and all-new kitchens, bathrooms, roofs, stairs. So that was a full interior/exterior site, got rehab. So it's a, it feels like a brand-new community. And then the other one, Aztec Villa, we did similar project, but with less work on the facade. It has a brick facade, but all-new landscaping, units, everything in the units, new roofs.
And you mentioned deferred maintenance. So can you talk about plans for avoiding those kind of expenses in the future?
Great question. So, you know, as properties age, maintenance needs increase, and the costs of those maintenance needs are high. So what we aim for when we develop communities or when we rehab them, like at Overlook at Thornton, for example, the exteriors was a wood siding painted material. We've put stucco on the building, so that's a, you know, 25-plus-year product. So we look at longer-lasting materials and better-quality materials that will last longer. You still have regular turn items, such as appliances, and cabinets break, or flooring is typically, you know, carpet needs to be replaced, things like that. But we really look at how we can lower the maintenance needs and the costs. So, you know, as much as I love doing renovation projects, you know, we aim to not have to do renovation projects in the near future, certainly, you know, with the 20-plus years out.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Lafar, you mentioned that this would qualify for Prop 123 funding. At what time would that qualify? Because the governor just cut the funding for Prop 123 for the 26 budgets.
Yes, mayor, thank you for that question. You would receive credit once you grant permit, not when we deliver the units, and so that would be much sooner. I share your, well, you did not say that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I am disappointed that we had to divert those funds, but we understand the state budget shortfall needed to be addressed. And so hard decisions had to be made during hard times, but we continue to provide the homes that Thorntonites need so that your commitment can be fulfilled in the eyes of the state, and we would ask them to award us proportionately in the future Proposition 123 funding, because we believe it should be available.
Okay. And then the entrance and exits to the property, there are no street, this is probably a staff question, there are no streetlights planned for that in the proposal. Looking at the property across the street from Adams 12 and recognizing people will be returning home from work at the same time Adams 12 is getting out from work, is there future plans for a streetlight? Or how close is the nearest streetlight to this location?
Are you speaking more to a traffic signal?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So there will actually be improvements done to the traffic signal that exists already at Claude Court and 128th. So this development will be adding the additional traffic signal to allow traffic out up there. So that would be a signalized intersection on the east and then the right-in, right-out on the west.
Okay, so future light is proposed there?
Correct.
Okay. And is that covered as part of the developer expense, or is the city, or is it shared?
That is usually discussed as part of the developer's agreement later down the line.
Probably another question, I'm not sure who should answer this one. It was mentioned that it would be, if a bus were to come in here, it would fit in the parking area. Are there any plans for a bus stop? Because we don't have anything north of 120th.
So I think part of why that came up in the past was somebody had asked the question about school buses maybe needing to stop, like on 128th Avenue, and that becoming a traffic issue. And so the developer has indicated, based on the fact that a fire truck can navigate the site, that a school bus would be able to do the same, and therefore, if a school bus stop was needed there, they have a ability to accommodate that.
Okay. And then on the police calls for service, it shows a moderate increase on calls for service, just based on high-density housing itself. Were there any changes in the types of calls for service?
I would say the police representative that's here may be better able to speak to that. I do know there was a table breakdown that kind of showed the various types of calls for each of the comparative sites, but I think I'll turn it over to Deputy Evans to speak to that more.
Keith Evans, 9551 Civic Center Drive, and I have been sworn in. As far as the calls for service, it's kind of all over the place. Most of the time in the, in the survey sample areas that we looked at, it's a lot of your domestic violence calls, party calls, that type of problematic calls for service when you have high-density housing locations.
Is it similar to the existing apartment complex, or is it unique because of the situation?
It would be, well, we're guessing, because we're looking at a sample size of similar-type complexes, and those are the types of issues that they typically have, you know, property crimes, your stolen cars, disturbances, domestic violence. Nothing that much different than your single-family neighborhood's experience as well.
Okay. And then a question for the applicant, actually. There is a site map that shows amenities, and I just have a question about something that's on the map. It's, it shows playgrounds, trail access, gathering spaces, community gardens. There's a square in the bottom left-hand corner, I'm just not sure what it is. And I don't know, in my packet, it's page 251, but I don't know that that helps you on the slide deck.
Yeah, I can speak to it. It'd be great if they can put it up. I believe the square in the bottom left-hand corner is actually community garden.
[inaudible]
How much? I got to talk into it, over it, get under it. Yeah, I believe that the lower-left-hand corner of the site plan, if that's what you're referring to, is location of community gardens.
Is it community garden? Okay. I just wasn't sure. It just shows little rectangles, and it doesn't explain what it is. Okay.
Yeah.
And I think, oh, the one other question I have for the applicant is, you mentioned that there would be full-time services onsite. Are they living there, or are they just there during business hours?
We'll have office hours, mayor, onsite. The resident services staff, which are employees of Maker, we do have some employees who live onsite. We don't anticipate that, but if they desire and qualify, then they are eligible to live onsite. And so we have hoteling space, and it's really driven by demand, and so we will flow our resident service staff, generally based off of the time of year. We see heightened needs when school comes in, around the holidays, those types of dynamics.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. Does anybody else have any questions? I'm going to actually ask us to take a quick recess so that we can do a break. I am going to ask the audience to not discuss this project with the council, because we are still open in the public hearing. We need to run to the restroom, take care of that, and be back, and the less you talk to us, the faster we can go. So I appreciate your willingness to let us take this quick break. We will recess now for a few minutes. I appreciate the grace to give us a few moments of a break. All right, one last call for questions from council before I open the hearing up for public comment. All right, Ms. Rosenbaum, do we have anyone signed up to speak in favor or in opposition to the proposed development?
Yes, your honor, we have 28 individuals in support that are in person and four online, and we have 27 individuals in opposition, in person, and two online.
All right, so in just a moment, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow, when you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. When it turns red and you hear multiple beeps, your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and whether or not you were sworn for the record. And then those who indicated on the webinar registration that they wish to speak will be allowed to unmute and speak when the clerk calls your name. And again, please state your name, address, and whether you were sworn for the record. Recognizing we have a lot of people that would wish to speak tonight, you have the option. You can come up and say ditto. We will keep track of what you're saying and how you're saying it. You can give your three minutes. Or if you have a spokesperson, we can extend some of the time for one person to talk for more than a group of people. It is up to you how you want to handle it, and I'm going to support making sure everybody gets heard tonight. So with that, would you please call the first person?
Yes, your honor, and I'm going to call three at a time and go back and forth between support and opposition. The first three in support are Lisa Jansen-Thompson, 8859 Fox Drive, Lynn Fox, 4262 East 130th Drive, and Eva Henry, East Lake Village. Yes, okay, sorry, I want to make sure you can hear me. Lisa Jansen-Thompson, 8859 Fox Drive, and yes, I have been sworn in. I know many of you as the executive director of the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, and normally you see me up here talking about making sure that families have access to childcare. However, tonight I am here to ask you to support this proposal, because in addition to childcare, we know that all families need access to affordable housing. We have many young families in this community who cannot afford to live here, and we are currently losing about 2% of our child population in Adams County because families need to move out, and we know that that is not what we are looking for. In addition to that, families with young children are at their lowest earning potential, and so being able to afford housing and childcare is very costly. We also know that we have an early care and education provider crisis. Right now, we do not have enough childcare for the families who live here, and those childcare providers make in the bottom 5% of all occupations in terms of their wages. They need a place to live, they need to be in their community so that we can continue to build that. At the end of the day, we know that decisions need to be made on our mission, they need to be made on data, and not made on inaccurate information. I know that the city of Thornton, your mission is to have a diverse neighborhood, and that includes having affordable housing. Last, I want to say that I encourage us all tonight to reflect on the fact that you did a resolution for the Constitution today. Constitution speaks to the fact that all Americans have rights, and part of those are rights to be able to afford to live in their community. And with that, I encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Fox, 4262 East 130th Drive, and I have been sworn. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm a former councilmember and a resident in Ward 3, along the 128th street corridor or avenue corridor. And by the way, thank you for improving 128th Avenue over the last several years. I encourage you to vote to rezone and approve the conceptual site plan. Reevaluating zoning is a regular duty of the council, and this change is appropriate. This irregularly shaped, small parcel has had decades to develop under its current zoning, and it hasn't. Changing to planned development with this conceptual site plan develops it in a way that allows it to serve its location near the train, station, schools, and businesses in the area. Workforce housing is essential to support business development in Thornton, and I know that's been our city goal for quite a long time now. that's been our city goal for quite a long time now. It's important for everyone to remember that this property has always been intended for development, and I have confidence that the council will approve development in a way that will be best for the whole city of Thornton. We need this housing. I look forward to welcoming new neighbors and supporting their life goals in stable, safe, and beautiful housing. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Would you, Ms. Henry, I believe you're next.
Good evening. I'm Eva Henry, a former council member and a former Adams County Commissioner. I want to talk to you about something that not only changes lives, but strengthens the entire community's, attainable housing. Years ago, I was a struggling, single mom. I was working hard, doing my best to provide for my children, but I was just one paycheck away from being homeless. My car was unreliable, breaking down when I needed it most, and every unexpected expense felt like a crisis. I remember thinking how different my life could have been if I had access to a home I could afford, located near reliable mass transit. It would have meant stability, less worry at how to get to work, and more time to focus on building a future for my family. Attainable housing provides exactly that kind of foundation. It allows working families, seniors, and young people just starting out to live within reach of jobs, schools, and transportation. When people can afford to live where they work, they spend more in local businesses, they participate more in their neighborhoods, and children benefit from the consistency of stable schooling. Communities with attainable housing are healthy, more diverse, and more connected. They reduce traffic congestion because fewer people have to drive long distances. They create opportunities for economic growth by supporting a stable workforce. And they give people, just like I once was, a chance to breathe, to catch up, and to plan something better. Investing in attainable housing isn't just about buildings. It's about building lives. It's about creating a community where everyone, no matter their stage in life, has the opportunity to thrive. I hope you support the Maker Project. Thank you. And Councilmember Enryne, I appreciate your service. I don't know if I'll see you by November, but I appreciate you. Thank you.
Would you please call the next group?
Sarah Wolski, 1460 East 128th Court. Dale Wolski, 1460 East 128th Court. Pam Harvey, 2345 East 127th Place.
Testing. And I have a slide presentation. Good evening, Mayor Coleman and members of City Council. My name is Sarah Wolski. My address is 1460 East 128th Court in Thornton. I reside at the enclave at Hunter's Glen. As included in your packet, many residents have submitted public comments and signed a petition, nearly 400 strong, expressing deep concerns about Maker's proposed development at 1551 East 128th Avenue. These voices include neighbors living next to the site, families both inside and beyond the notification radius, and parents of students at Century Middle School. We care deeply about our community, and we are asking to be heard. We support Thornton's commitment to affordable housing and inclusive growth. However, responsible development must be rooted in safety, compatibility, and long-term sustainability. This site simply does not meet these standards. The parcel is triangular and unusually constrained, wedged between a water ditch, oil and gas pipelines, train tracks, and a high-traffic corridor. These physical barriers are not minor inconveniences. They are serious safety risk. A multifamily housing project here feels forced, not thoughtful. Instead, a more modest, community-oriented solution is needed that respects the site's limitations. The proposed design stretches the land to its limits, compromising privacy and quality of life for adjacent residents. It lacks walkable access to essential services, and with over 300 projected tenants and visitors, severe parking shortages and traffic congestion will ripple through East 128th Avenue and surrounding streets. We are also concerned about long-term maintenance, public safety, and affordability. Maker's existing properties have shown inconsistent upkeep and limited staffing. Police data suggests elevated safety concerns in similar developments. And rents for this project have already increased by seven and a half percent since March, raising serious doubts about its affordability and long-term viability. We are not opposing progress. We are advocating for smart community center planning and urge you to preserve this site as neighborhood service. Many residents support for relocating Maker's development to a larger, safer, and more suitable site, one that aligns with Thornton's values and infrastructure, and one that can truly support a vibrant, sustainable tenant experience. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to protecting the integrity of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Wolski?
I have a slide presentation, please. My name is Dale Wolski. I live at 1460 East 128th Court in Thornton, and I've been sworn in. Good evening, Mayor Coleman and City Council members. Maker says their property is going to be beautiful. But as you can see, it doesn't stay that way. Granted, one of these properties is an old one, but why did it take so long to correct the problems that they had? Maker also has problems with some of their other properties, maybe not quite as severe, but give them time. They seem to attract homeless people and individuals who like to put graffiti everywhere. Even one of their newer properties that they've been bragging about, Crossing Point, is starting to show signs of neglect, letting a trailer park in the lot, a light pole falling over, dead tree laying on the ground. And on August 29th, I observed a homeless person camping right at the entrance of the road that leads to their property. As you can see on the map, the proposed site is surrounded by single-family homes who want it to remain neighborhood service. You are not making a decision that will affect all of Thornton, but only impact the neighborhoods surrounding this site. I know we have some city council members who have their own special interests that guide their decisions. That's fine, as long as it concerns your ward or all of Thornton. When did it go from "we, the people" to "we, the special interest groups"? Interfering with what goes on in our ward and only our neighborhood would be like our 400 petition signers coming to your ward to interfere with your elections. It's just not right. This business said that we need to change the zoning because, one, no one has built anything on that site. That was because the seller was always asking too much money for the land. Did Maker decide to take the chance and buy that property for $1.2 million because the Chair of Maker's Board of Commissioners was also on City Council for Thornton? He probably thought they would have no problem getting the zoning changed to suit their needs. So far, their plan has been working. I also question why didn't Maker wait almost three years to apply for a zoning amendment? I think I know why, but I don't want to open up that can of worms. So instead, I will offer a solution to our problem. Maker can always just sell the property at a price that other builders would be willing to pay to develop the property. Maker can just write their loss off as a bad investment. Or they might even donate the property to the city of Thornton to build a park or a parking lot for the drop-off and pickup of students from the nearby school, or possibly both. So remember, when you vote, you're only affecting the neighborhoods surrounding the site. Please don't destroy the neighborhood that you created 25 years ago. I'm sure you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
Hi. Oops. How do you do, testing? I'm Pam Harvey, 2345 East 127th Place in Thornton. I wasn't planning on talking. I didn't realize that.
Did you get sworn in?
Pardon?
Were you sworn in?
I think I did the last time I was here.
Do you want to look at the clerk's swearing just to make sure?
Please raise your right hand. Do you hereby swear affirm that your testimony before this council will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I am opposed because the one thing, it's location of where this would be. The traffic on 128th, I've been there like nine and a half years at her home, and it's, the traffic is so bad and it's so fast. And my backyard faces York, and it's just as bad there. But I can't imagine having this right there on 128th. I feel like that it should be someplace else that's not on such a busy street and has plenty of room for parking. And it's just, with the Century Middle School being there, I have a granddaughter that goes there, and my grandson's going to be going to Century. I just feel like it's too much in one spot. And I wish that there would be something else built there that would be less congestion there. It's just, and then with the ditch that's in there too, I mean, I've been hearing things how it could flood and the pipelines and everything. I've been hearing all these things so, because I'm not used to doing the politics thing, you know? But the more I find out, and since it's hitting home, when it does hit home for you, you really get a compassion to talk about it and to try to help. Because I think this is a nice thing for the affordable housing, but it's the location and the traffic and the noise. It's just not a good spot to be building this. I feel like they could find some other open land that's for sale that they could put it on. That's just my opinion, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Would you call the next group?
RJ Delaney, 4262 East 130th Drive. Michael Ferguson, 11775 Wildsworth Boulevard. And Diana Laura, 10370 Tumbleweed Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is RJ Delaney. I live at 4262 East 130th Drive. That's just east of this development, and I drive 128th regularly. I drove it here tonight, and I'll drive it on the way home. And I'm a cyclist, and I go down the Signal Ditch Trail at least once a week, if not more. And I support the zoning change. I think the proposed Maker development will add life to the neighborhood. It will be so much better use than a self-storage or any business area entity in that area. And as indicated, it hasn't been sold or developed until now. It's close to the train, to Amazon, to Murphy Constructings, so people can work there and live and walk to their work, which is so much better than taking, driving a car. Since apparently the Broncos aren't going to use that spot, I guess they just found a new location for their stadium. I think zoning change is what should be done. It's good policy, and it's good for Thornton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Farrington. My name's Michael Farrington. I just have bad handwriting. 1175 Wildsworth Boulevard. I have been sworn in. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Farrington. I'm a lead with the MB North Metro, a local advocacy group focused on housing access and affordability. I'm here tonight to strongly support the Maker Housing Project located at 151 East 120th Avenue. This development's not just about 128 units. As some of you know, 100, we say units, 81 units, but there are 81 homes. These are 81 new homes with new families that can live there. We looked at this, and one of the concerns was that it will impact our schools. It will impact our schools here because it will add new children, because new families will be able to afford to live in this community that were previously facing the reality that they were going to be priced out or unable to continue to live here. Every one of these 81 homes is a place where people can live and contribute, where they can join the community and participate in a community that they want to call home. These are people who think that Thornton is so great, like the rest of us, that they want to live here too. As you know, Thornton is expected to add 17,000 people over the next 15-ish years, till 2040. Thousands of those people will inherently, fundamentally be on the lower end of that AMI scale. This development creates a ton of affordable housing, 81 homes worth, in that 60, 50, and 70% AMI range. Projects like this directly respond to the reality that people can't find affordable housing in our community. And this creation of affordable housing here in Thornton allows people to stay connected to neighbors, to our elderly parents who may live here and own homes, to our younger families who may be moving out and hoping to find a new place. The creation of affordable housing means that our kids' teachers can live here near the school. The police officers, who start at about the same wage as qualifying here, can continue to serve in our communities without them driving 40 minutes to get to work. In fact, I attended law school with a young man who has a family, who lives in affordable housing, because it's the way he was able to stay in the community he loved as he attended law school and was able to take time off from school. That's a forward-looking growth plan that allows the community to grow and mature while still adding housing and maintaining the people who've lived here and made Thornton a special place. This location makes perfect sense. It's a site near schools, jobs, right near the fire station. The roadway improvements will improve a road that has challenges. There's a lot of parking involved. It's right near the transit stop, which RTD tells us any day now they will complete. It's consistent with the East Lake Station Transit Oriented Development Plan. It's consistent with the Transit Oriented Development Plan the state has rolled out, and it will help us minimize both the economic and social impacts of a new development by reducing the amount of parking we need, so it won't result in parking spillover into the neighborhoods around it. This project embodies Thornton's priorities. It creates housing choice, strengthens our economies, helps put families, helps allow families to put down roots and dignity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, council members. My name is Diana Lara. My address is 10370 Tumbleweed Drive, and I have been sworn in. I would like to open by making this statement, the housing is a human right. Today, I'm here only, not only as a maker, but I'm only here as a resident of Thornton. And I want to spring my strong support for the Cloud Core Affordable Housing Project. Affordable housing is more than a place to live. It is the foundation of stable families, thriving neighborhoods, and healthy communities. Too many members of our community, working families, seniors, and young people are being prized side of safe and stable housing. The Cloud Core Project represents an opportunity to provide dignity, security, and opportunity for those who need it the most. This development will not only help address the urgent need for affordable housing, but it will also bring long-term benefits to the entire community. Families who are securely housed are better able to contribute to our local economy. Children perform better in school, and individuals are more likely to thrive in their jobs. Affordable housing creates stability and strengthens every part of our community. Cloud Core will also reflect our values as a community, that not only should have, no one should have to choose to between paying the rent or putting food on the table, or between keeping a roof over their head or affording healthcare. It shows that we are committed to creating a community where everyone has the opportunity to succeed. I urge you to move forward with this project by supporting Cloud Core. You are not only approving housing development, but you are also investing in people, families, and the future of our community. I invite you today, members of the community, to partner with us and take a chance to continue to work together for a better future for all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Would you call the next group?
Michael Carter, 1445 East 128th Court. Jim Wiegel, second to Advocate Circle. And Kathleen Martinez, 1985 East 127th Circle.
Good evening. Michael Carter, 1445 East 128th Court. I have been sworn in. I want to touch on three things real fast here that I want to make sure that you pay attention to in the packet. you pay attention to in the packet. One, of course, is crime. You, thank you. Uh, one of those is crime, of course. Uh, you asked about crime in the packet, specifically in the Crime Analysis Data Request Report that was dated August twelfth. At the Crosspoint South, which is the comparable city to, or comparable location to Pinnacle at Hunter's Glen, which are the apartments that they've referenced that are right there, service calls for police were a hundred and forty-one percent of the comparable property. So Maker is having a hundred and forty-one percent of those at the Pinnacle Apartment Complex. So different neighborhood, different environment, different density of what's there. So please do pay attention to that. I also want to talk about parking. So Maker mentioned that parking at one point, one point five per unit is acceptable. That's definitely understated. They mentioned that the, it's okay to, or it's too far of a distance to walk, a quarter of a mile to the, the residents nearby. But in the same breath, they also say it's okay to walk two miles to the local supermarket. Which one is it? It's either too far to park, or it's too, too far, or too far to walk to the other facility there. So parking is definitely an issue. I myself have, uh, live in Hunter's Glen, uh, enclave area, which is right next to the Pinnacle Apartments. I've had residents from the apartment complex move my trashcans, run me over from when they come park there, and I ask them to move. I've had those apartment complexes, complexes block me in. So there's just not enough parking in that space, that it's too small of a spot. Um, and also, they say it's low cost or, or affordable housing, but when you look at the other areas, the other apartments nearby, when you consider things like month free, two months free for some of the comparable properties nearby, these are actually a higher rate than other comparable properties. So please consider that before you consider approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm Jim Weigl. My wife and I live at two Avast Circle, and I have been sworn in. Please send this project back for two revisions. Reduce the number of units on the third floor, keeping those closest to the center, near one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue, and replace a few units on the ground floor with some shops, like a convenience store, ice cream, cafe, or the like. These changes acknowledge the adjacent single-family homes and the need in the surrounding area for neighborhood services, both of which the city has long recognized through its zoning and its more recent mixed-use designation. These changes will keep the important affordable housing proposed by the developer and make a place where the new and existing residents can gather and break bread. Maker has said nothing's been developed or proposed here for over thirty years. The newer TOD designation overrides the older neighborhood services zoning. The project may not pencil if there are fewer units. As a developer and home builder during the nineteen nineties, the company owned by my partner and me built the greatest number of affordable single-family homes in the Denver area. An example in Thornton is at Holly Crossing Community at one hundred and twentieth in Niagara. I remain a passionate supporter of affordable homes and the people who live in them. My partner tried several times to purchase the property, as did one of my neighbors. I know two other developers who tried to buy it, and in every case, the asking price for the land was way too high. The reason it hasn't been developed over that time is not because neighborhood services were infeasible or unwanted, it's because the landowners wanted too much money for the property, and it's very difficult and costly to develop. At several comprehensive planning sessions over three decades, I've been told to expect low-rise neighborhood services here, even with the most recent mixed-use designation in twenty-two, twenty-twenty's planning session. Maker has commercial in its Westminster facility. Why can't they build mixed-use here in Thornton, as they've done in Westminster? Every board meeting I've been to, the city highlights the accomplishments of its Business Development Department in bringing restaurants and other businesses to the city. Why can't they help here, where there are nearly one thousand homes within walking distance and over twenty thousand people drive by every day? To avoid a structure towering over single-family homes in the neighborhood, which is what the thirty-foot height limitation of the current zoning addresses, can't the developer compromise a bit and remove half the third-story apartments closest to those homes? The project will still pencil because fewer units will cause lower construction costs, and it's still subsidized in at least four ways: no property taxes, and through CHAFA dollar-for-dollar tax credits for its development costs, low-interest-rate loans, currently about half what homeowners can get, and cash grants. Even if the nonprofit developer doesn't make a surplus on the project with these changes, so what? In my day, and after reviewing the development code-
Thank you very much. I have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been sworn in. Can you hear me? My name's Kathleen Martinez. I live at not, one, nine, eight, five, East one hundred and twenty-seventh Circle. Since the very first Maker presentation, all residents near the proposed development have been adamantly against it. This is not the right location for low-income Section Eight housing. According to your future land use designation, this property does not create a vibrant mix of uses or function as a gathering space for surrounding residents and visitors. Are we going to gather at this apartment complex? This is just an apartment complex plopped into a residential neighborhood. There are no pedestrian-scale offices or retail or cultural, cultural facilities. Certainly, there are no gathering spaces or community-oriented, oriented uses. This is a terrible place for a three-story structure looming over single-family residents' backyards. For those residents at the apartment who have no car, there is no grocery store in walking distance, no park for families and children to gather, not even the low-income residents who live here will benefit at this site. The parking is a major concern and probably the biggest problem. Though Maker touts it as providing more parking than other projects, there is not enough parking spaces for the residents there, and certainly none for their visitors. Having a sticker on their car means nothing. There will be parking disputes, and people will park on surrounding streets or in the Adams School District Lot. The zoning change should not be allowed. This small tract of land is not suitable for this low-income housing project. Every tract of land does not need to be developed. We need open space also. The commissioners mentioned that they have never seen so many people attending these meetings until this proposed project. That should tell you that we are very concerned and upset with this particular project. We have said over and over, we are not against low-income housing, but this is not suitable at this location. The city does not get tax revenue from this project. If you approve this, that tells us you are pleasing the builder and not your constituents. The meeting on September eighteenth was unethical and biased. Two commissioners should have been removed for their bias. That decision should have been rescinded. The vote would have been three to three. Transit-oriented development goals are not met with this proposed apartment complex. This affects us the rest of our lives. Maker builds it and walks away, the city goes on to the next project, but we will live with this forever. This affects our peace and quality of life. Our lives matter.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Fazal Haq Hashimi, one, two, one, seven, zero, Washington Center Parkway. Caroline Leland, two, nine, five, South Wa, Williams Street. And Lucas Hogan, Denver.
Good evening, um, Madam Mayor and council members and fellow neighbors. My name is Fazal Haq Hashimi, uh, one, twenty-one, seventy, Washington Center Parkway, apartment, um, ten, two, two. And I'm here to support Claude Court Project.
And you were sworn in?
Sorry, this is my first time.
You were sworn in?
Yes, I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
So I, I've been a resident in Thornton for, for almost a decade now, and long before that East Lake, um, Station was there, and long before that, um, the Amazon Delivery Center was there. And what I have, um, give me one second. Yeah, and, um, what I have realized is that we, our beautiful city of Thornton is expanding, and what it is lacking more affordable housing. Now, I, when I speak about affordable housing, I'm, I cannot, um, miss the fact that I'm reminded of this barber at Great Clips who was cutting my hair and asked me what I did for work. At that time, I was a, a, a Section Eight officer, and I told her that I work in affordable housing. She was cutting right here around those hair, and she looked at me and said, isn't that an oxymoron? Affordable housing in our community is oxymoron. And she, she, she has, she had another, uh, single mom kid, with two kids who are going to be moving in with her in her house, and she was worried about how she was, she would navigate this situation. Now, with, um, and, um, and our city, our beautiful city has expanded a lot. And a city is built, I believe, not just by structures and by buildings and businesses, it is built by the people. It is built their stories. And more and more people are being priced out of our beautiful Thornton, and their stories are also being taken away from that. And those people that have the stories, they will tell you what it was, that there was this little pasture over there, an empty lot before Carl, Carl's farm, uh, when there was Carl's Farm before these new housing were being built. This is for those people that are going to be earning that low-income, um, bracket there. They're our first responders, our, our teachers that are going to be teaching in these schools at Hunter's Glen, at Adams County School, where they can walk there. That is, they, it is for those people that we would like to reserve, um, these affordable housing, and Claude Court is the answer to that. It provides a breathing room for, um, the people, for our first responders. And I strongly support, um, uh, support this project. And I know many people over here are concerned about parking, but they are, I, I feel like they're not realizing that it is transit-oriented. There's a, uh, there's a train station right there next to it, and most of the time, this is low-income, and most families that I know of, they don't have two cars. They are only, they're low-income people. So that, that argument, I feel like, is, uh, not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Caroline Leland. I live at two, nine, five, South Williams Street in Denver, and I have been sworn in. I work on housing and land use policy at the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, or SWEAP, and I am here to offer what I think is a unique perspective tonight on why Claude Court is a good idea. In addition to the essential affordability benefits that other speakers have described and will continue to describe tonight, this project, as an excellent example of multifamily infill housing near transit, is smart for Thornton's land, energy, and water use. In addition to the comprehensive plan priorities mentioned tonight by staff, Claude Court fits perfectly into Thornton's comp plan vision theme of growing smarter and greener. Everyone needs a place to live, that much is clear, so the question is where? From a climate perspective, building homes on the edges of cities locks in longer commutes and trips for everyone who lives there. This generates more traffic, local air pollution, and about twice the amount of greenhouse gases. It also results in unnecessary development of natural open land, while stretching municipal resources over a much greater area, and that's financially unsustainable for the city. Multifamily developments like Claude Court will result in an eighty-two percent reduction in per-capita land consumption as compared to a more sprawling business-as-usual scenario. Because Claude Court will be next to transit, its residents are expected to drive at least thirty percent less than families living further from transit. Plus, fewer than half of low-income people living near transit even own a car in the first place. Claude Court's location clearly will help boost transit ridership and revenue. In addition to being smarter land use and reducing driving, developments like Claude Court are smarter for per-capita energy and water use. Heating and cooling consume the most energy in homes. Single-detached houses are bigger and have four walls and a roof to insulate and thus take more energy. The shared walls, ceilings, and floors of apartments means less energy use. In fact, families in detached, single-family homes use three times the energy used by a typical apartment-dwelling family. Perhaps most importantly in Thornton, apartments use about eighty-six percent less water than a typical single-family house uses. That's mostly due to lawn care requirements. A large, single-family house, which typically has a large yard, typically uses twenty times more water than an apartment. You all know how precious water is in Colorado and in Thornton. I urge you to allow developments that use that precious resource wisely. In conclusion, please heed my fellow speakers in support of Claude Court and ignore the fearful opposition voices whose concerns are rooted in classism and racism. Claude Court is a well-designed project-
Okay. I'm, hold on just a moment. I'm going to ask the audience to please respect everyone speaking. Everyone has differences of opinions. You'll have your moment to speak, and we'll continue your comments. Thank you.
Claude Court is a well-designed project that will be good for the people who live there and good for Thornton's smart growth that uses land, energy, water, and municipal resources efficiently. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. Uh, my name is Lucas Hagen. I am the Research and Policy Manager at the Neighborhood Development Collaborative, and I've been sworn in. Um, we're a coalition of twenty-four mission-based affordable home builders, nonprofits, all of us, and we're proud to count Maker Housing as one of our members. And we support this development. I want to take this time to bust a few myths about affordable housing, um, uh, and about who needs affordable housing today. Being unable to afford housing is not a personal flaw, rather, it's an indication that housing costs grew faster than wages over the last twenty years. Back in twenty fifteen, a teacher in Thornton could afford ninety-nine percent of the homes in the city, but that number has fallen to thirty-two percent by twenty twenty-one. Today, fifty-six percent of renters in the city spend more than a third of their income on housing, and these houses, households are often those that keep the city running. In fact, residents of new affordable housing projects are more likely to be existing workers in the community than not. Aside from teachers, this shortage affects workers, our nurses, social workers, firefighters, and paramedics. Living in affordable housing helps families avoid difficult decisions and unsustainable financial decisions. When housing consumes a significant portion of household income, families face dilemmas at the kitchen table, like deciding between meeting, uh, rent obligations and covering other essentials like food or clothing. And a study found that to afford rent, thirty-four percent of young Coloradans bought fewer groceries. Affordable housing adds community character, cohesion, economic stability, and not only are people in stable housing more likely to engage in community activities and contribute positively to neighborhood well-being, but may find themselves also with more disposable income, which lets them address outstanding debts, save for the future, and invest in education and skill development. Research shows that affordable housing leads to more economic mobility, which resonates across the city. The proposal for these homes incorporates, uh, feedback and input on density and parking requirements, as outlined by the Maker team, to accommodate concerns from neighbors, makers proposing more parking and less density than what the zoning and city plans allow for the site. Our analysis indicates that this project aligns with Thornton's adopted plans and contributes to the city's long-term vitality, and we urge you to approve this development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Martha Hiskie, one, nine, four, one, East one hundred and twenty-ninth Drive. Kevin Orchid, one, nine, eight, one, East one hundred and twenty-ninth Drive. And Lee Carter, one, nine, eight, one, East one hundred and twenty-ninth Drive.
Good evening. I'm Martha Hiskie, and I live at nineteen forty-one, East one hundred and twenty-ninth Drive. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. On August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, many here, and myself, addressed the Planning Commission concerning the proposed Maker Housing Project. I want to express my gratitude for the attention and support given during those discussions. I do understand a commissioner that evening voted in favor of supporting the Maker Project. I found, though, at that time, her comments to be concerning. The accusations directed towards us citizens opposing the project seemed to undermine the integrity of the discussion. She accused us citizens who were in opposition of the project- She accused us citizens, who were in opposition of the project, to be generating and creating a sense of fear of those who lived in affordable housing. She also stated that she was personally offended by the comments made by those who were in opposition. Earlier, she had expressed that she could be impartial during the hearing, but it is now my understanding that she has resigned from the commission. It is imperative that integrity and ethics are foundational in government. It was apparent to me that she was biased. Therefore, our concerns have been raised and continue to be raised is about the suitability of the proposed location. It is not in opposition against affordable housing. During the vote of the Planning Commission hearing, Commissioners Stutz, Tompkins, and Butler, and I'm sorry if I've mispronounced any of their names, they voted against approving the Maker Project, saying it does not fit. The surrounding neighborhoods consist of single-family homes ranging in value from $600,000 to even multimillion dollars. The planning of the nearby Hunter's Glen community exemplifies effective integration of diverse housing types, which I believe is lacking in the proposed Maker Project. The Hunter's Glen community provides high-density housing, multifamily housing, single-family homes, aligned with similar price ranges. The proposed Maker Project does not seem planned to integrate with the existing single-family home communities. Additionally, I've found that the assertion that residents could realistically walk to employment opportunities seems to be dubious, particularly if there's inclement weather. The distances involved present significant challenges. And during the CBS News Colorado news story this last week, CEO Peter LaFari stated that residents could walk to places of employment. This, to me, would not be realistic during poor weather, specifically the 120th Avenue and Washington Street Business Corridor, along with the 136th and Washington, is 100, is 1.6 miles away. It appears now that most supporters of this project do not live near this property, as I've heard this evening. I thank you in advance for the decision that you will need to make.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Kevin Orket, 1981 East 129th Drive, Thornton, retired police sergeant, Thornton PD, 1980 through into 2015, 35 years. During the planning hearing, parking seemed to create much conversation with many of the commissioners. Most directly was the concern of a lack of parking for this project. One of the commissioners posed a question to Mr. Pakner regarding alleged negotiations with five-star schools using their parking lot as an overflow parking lot. Mr. Pakner seemed surprised by the question. He looked around and behind himself, at his staff, for an answer to the question. He then stated, "I'm not sure if we are. I will have to get back to you." One commissioner stated, "This thing hasn't even been built, and already we're looking for alternative parking." We have been down this road before...
And I hate to interrupt you, but can you confirm you were sworn in?
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's my fault, I didn't catch it earlier.
I, I was.
Thank you. Please continue, I apologize.
All right. We have been down this road before, approving these apartment complexes that don't have enough parking. From the CBS News Colorado story, which aired September 3rd, CEO Peter LaFari stated, "We would never develop a community that didn't have adequate parking. This is, is the nightmare of every home builder. In fact, if this project is built, as is, it will be not Maker's nightmare, it will be the City of Thornton and the police departments. Maker is providing 120 parking spaces for the project. That would be just fine if those living there have no family or friends who plan to visit. Maker's parking solution is to identify residents' vehicles with a sticker in the window. Let me tell you how this is not going to work. There will be an excessive, there will be excessive parking in this lot. The proposed sticker-in-the-window plan is unenforceable. Law enforcement does not enforce private property parking. Visitors' vehicles without a sticker in the windshield will face no consequences. The manager will have no way to identify the owner of the vehicle. Most of the parking problems will occur on weekends. Maker has already reported that their property manager will only be on-site Monday through Thursday. During day hours, residents who have the sticker in the windshield will often find no parking available. The resident will have no remedy for their parking complaint. They will have to find a place to park, probably in a five-star school's lot or surrounding neighborhood street parking. The neighbors will not like that. Residents will then cross 128th Avenue in heavy traffic. This may result in a serious autopad accident. Even though there's a crossing light at Claude Court, this problem is a quality-of-life issue. It cannot be solved as more parking spaces cannot be increased due to the size of the location. We will be stuck with this problem. It will never go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lee Carter, 1981 East 129th Drive. Yes, I've been sworn in. I also have pictures. Are they not? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Maker Housing Partners, and fellow Thornton residents. This photo shows yellow markers with warning signs on the east side of the parcel, west of the RTD tracks, where the high-pressure crude oil pipeline lies. We contacted a representative from Suncor in Cheyenne, Wyoming after receiving literature from Suncor regarding the safety of the pipeline. Suncor said what to look for if there was a crude oil leak and phone numbers to call. Suncor stated that if leaks do happen, it will first affect the groundwater. There could be a risk of a crude oil fire if it rose to the surface. The Adams County and Jefferson County hazmat teams would respond to this type of fire as they have the necessary retardants to put out such a fire. Oh, wait, sorry. Thank you. There's a natural gas pipeline on the property, a warning sign for the pipeline, and a vent pipe. This could also be a risk. Next slide, please. Kids are attracted to railroad tracks to walk on and to flatten panties. In the future, the light rail train will go to Colorado 7. On average, a child dies from being struck by a train every five days in the United States. For every death, nearly three children are injured. The statistics highlight the significant risk of train-related fatalities among children, particularly those under the age of 19. These statistics were from Safe Kids Worldwide. Irrigation ditch. The irrigation ditch has been operated since 1867. It cannot be fenced in due to maintenance. Like the railroad tracks, kids are attracted to water. When the ditch is flowing, there is a risk factor of a child drowning. In the United States, over 4,000 unintentional deaths occur annually among children, making drowning the leading cause of death for children ages 1 through 4. This is from the CDC. Next slide, please. This site plan shows all the items I have discussed. It also shows high-volume traffic on 128th Avenue, already strained by current growth in the area. To add these units with all their vehicles and travel needs will push the limits of congestion. As three of the Planning Commissioners stated, "It doesn't fit. Let's find a safer, better, larger location, less traffic, more parking, no pipelines, no railroad tracks, no open ditches." Many Thornton citizens here tonight are from the Neighbors North Thornton Group. We are long-term residents. As Maker stated, their tenant's turnover rate is 43% annually. Maker has other sites available. If this is voted down, they stated this is at, this at a meeting with us at Rocky Top Junior High. Please vote to uphold the integrity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you please call the next group?
Jody Nowicki, North Glen. Ashley Edinger, 501 East 102nd Avenue. And Gabriela Chavez, Commerce City.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jody Nowicki. We office out of 1500 East 128th Avenue in Thornton, right across from the proposed site, and I have been sworn in. I serve as the Senior Director of Stakeholder Engagement at Rocky Mountain Partnership Cradle to Career. Our mission is to ensure more young people in our region, from cradle to career, reach the milestones that they need to thrive in school, in work, and in life, and contribute to a vibrant economy. But here's the reality: none of those milestones are possible without access to housing that families and workers can afford. A child can't be ready for kindergarten if their family is moving from place to place. A teenager can't stay focused on graduating high school if they're worried about eviction, and a young adult cannot begin a career or start a family here if they can't afford to live here. This is not just a theory. In the Adams 12 Five-Star School District, only 13% of teachers can afford to buy a home in the community where they teach, according to the Keystone Policy Center. If even our educators are priced out, we're putting the entire cradle-to-care pipeline at risk. And it's not just teachers. Young people who grew up in Adams County are telling us that they want to stay, but they simply cannot afford to buy or rent here. We risk losing the very talent we've invested from the start of their journey. The Claude Court project is exactly the kind of attainable housing our community needs, housing that supports family stability, meets the needs of our workforce, and ensures that young people have a real chance to remain and contribute here. There are concerns about where attainable housing belongs, and I would offer this. Attainable housing isn't about other people moving into our community, it is about our people, our teachers, nurses, first responders, and those young adults who want to raise their own families here. These are the neighbors who make our community stronger. And then I will also add that personally, as a mom raising my family in this community, that I want my kids to grow up in a community where their teachers, classmates, first responders, and peers can all afford to live. That is the kind of community where kids and families can truly succeed, which is why I urge you to pass in the rezoning ordinance for Claude Court. Doing so is more than a land use decision, it's an investment in the future of our children, our workforce, and the long-term strength of Thornton and Adams County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Edinger. I'm a Thornton resident at 501 East 102nd Avenue. I also work with the last speaker, so our offices are directly across from the proposed site, and yes, I was sworn in. I also, I serve as the Data Impact Strategist for Rocky Mountain Partnership Cradle to Career, where you heard a little bit from my colleague who just spoke. And my job is to equip our community and decision-makers with data to support young people in achieving milestones that are tied to upward mobility and economic vitality. And I am here in support of the rezoning ordinance and the site plan for the Claude Court Affordable Housing Development. When we look at the data, the data is clear. In Thornton, 61.8% of households spend more than 30% of their income on housing, leaving less money for childcare, transportation, and other necessities. Our employers here in Thornton are already feeling the strain. When workers can't afford to live near their jobs, businesses face higher turnover and productivity costs. We also know from a variety of research from sources like the Keystone Policy Center, the Urban Institute, Common Sense Institute, and another, a number of other research sources I'm always happy to share with folks, is that multifamily housing like this does not tend to actually increase crime or lower property values, which I know has been a point of contention around this. And in fact, well-managed communities can reduce crime and even slightly raise values. Here in Thornton, 65.9% of workers already live within a half mile, or within half a mile transit, and this development would enhance that, helping workers live closer to both jobs and the transit that connects them. And also, as noted in the presentation, when we talk about affordable, this potential community would go up to 70% area median income, which is just under $100,000 for a family of four. So that includes the backbone of our community, our first responders, our law enforcement, our nurses, our teachers, and the skilled trades. I am going to take off my RMP hat for a second. I also want to share a little bit about my story because it's relevant to this here. I grew up in a single-parent household, and affordable housing gave us a safe, stable home. That stability allowed me to focus on school, earn the prestigious Daniel S. Fund Scholarship, and be the first in my family to attend and graduate from college. And today, I am a Thornton taxpayer, this is my community, and a professional working alongside cross-sector leaders in this community to strengthen economic mobility and economic prosperity. And so, when we talk about the question about whether this development is needed here or whether it should be anyone else, I'd urge folks to think about, when you're talking about the people in the community, you're talking about me. You're talking about the first responders who work down the road. You're talking about the teachers that work across the street at Adams 12 Five-Star Schools. And I am living proof that affordable housing creates opportunities, stability, and prosperity, not just for individuals, but the entire community. Because now, because I had that experience, I'm able to support more young people to do the same. So I urge you to support the rezoning and the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Hi, my name is Gabby Chavez, and I am a Commerce City resident, and I have been sworn in. I'm a civic influencer with Rocky Mountain Partnership, and I was born in Thornton and spent a third of my life here. Even though I don't live inside the city limits now, Thornton is still home. It's where I buy groceries every single weekend. I even just got gas at Sam's right before coming here. And I do this because it feels familiar to me, and it's what I get to call home. And it's a place that I hope to come back to when I'm married and start a family. With my background in sociology, I've learned that housing is never just about shelter, it's about stability, being able to plant roots, build relationships, and feel secure. When housing becomes unaffordable, people get pushed out of the very communities they belong to. For me, that's not just a theory, it's personal. My best friend and her husband grew up in Brighton and live in an ADU on his parents' property so that they can stay close to home, family, and everything familiar. They want to raise their eight-month-old daughter there. But even in Brighton, housing is becoming harder to afford. As his parents prepare to downsize, they may be forced to leave the community they love. That breaks my heart. My village, the people who raised me up and who I love the most, the people who I get to call whenever I have an emergency, could suddenly be an hour and a half away, or even a plane ride away. That's why affordable housing in Thornton and across Adams County matters. This is the need everywhere. I also want to share this. It's painful to hear people talk about this project in ways that dehumanize the very people it's meant to serve, using words like "those people" or suggesting that they are dangerous or don't belong. I want to remind us all that language like that is not only dehumanizing, but it's harmful. It hurts even more knowing that those who need affordable housing include people like me, people I love, and people who already are a part of this community. It is okay to have concerns, it is okay to ask questions about traffic, about design, about parking, but it is not okay to attack people's dignity. We can discuss challenges with kindness and without stripping others of their humanity. Claude Court is not about bringing others in, it's about making sure that people who already make Thornton work, like the teachers, the nurses, the retail workers, and the young families, have a place here in their community. When we deny housing, we do not just deny shelter, but we also deny belonging. Claude Court is a chance to change that, a chance to show that Thornton values its community. And this decision won't just impact Thornton or a particular ward, it will ripple across Adams County. So I invite you to support this project and help lead the way in meeting this urgent need. Please consider doing this for the families who want to stay and for the kids and everyone else who deserve stability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Ben Martinez, 1985 East 127 Circle. Thomas Scoville, 13457 Williams Street. And Teresa Wilson, 13480 Williams Street.
I have been sworn in. I just want to take a common sense and rational approach...
Could you just state your name for the record as well?
Oh, Ben Martinez, sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to take a common sense and rational approach to the matter on the proposed site. I'm not a trust fund baby who was born into wealth. I'm not ashamed to say, I came from affordable housing projects myself. I feel that I am more than qualified to speak on this matter in opposition to the applicant's proposed plans. I'm not against affordable housing, and neither is any of us opposing it. We are simply against it at this particular site. If there be any person on the council or elected official that is considering leaning towards the applicant, there is one very compelling argument that you should hear, out of many reasons why the applicant's plans are not good for the site, and that is the issue of severe insufficient parking. issue of severe insufficient parking. Parking is a quality-of-life issue. I'm sure that the applicant will give a rebuttal to my comments and other comments of how their parking proposal is 50% over what they normally would allow for this project. But what they are not going to tell you is that the parking spaces are tiny, compact parking spaces. They will also not admit that there is going to be roughly, at any given time, several hundred people living there on this tiny parcel of land with only 120 parking spaces, which is enough parking for half, if not less than, half of the residents. Many people have more than one car or have work trucks. Many will have spouses or partners that also have their vehicles, or other family members or roommates that have cars as well. Not to mention, what about parking for visitors? In the last few weeks, myself and a large group of neighbors took to the streets to picket the site and canvass many neighborhoods to engage with other Thornton residents. We went from reaching just a few hundred people to now reaching thousands the last couple of weeks. Out of all the people we engaged with publicly, 99.99% of them were very against this housing project proposal. I counted less than a dozen people who were actually in favor for it. The vast majority of the Thornton resident voters were against the planned proposal. Many residents who opened their doors and talked with us, and many who pulled over to talk with us while campaigning, all had one common comment or question, and that was the issue of parking. They said, "Where is everyone going to park?" Many of them told us there won't be enough parking. They could double the proposed parking, and it still wouldn't be enough parking. These comments are coming from the general public, not just us neighbors living in the impacted area, not just your own planning commission, but the vast majority of the public in general. This one issue alone should be a deal-breaker, not even mentioning all the other countless reasons why. Also, PS, Makers' rents are going to be $700 more expensive than the apartments on 128th and Washington. Thanks, I yield the rest of my time.
Thomas Scoville, 13457 Williams Street. I have been sworn in. Please associate me with the eloquence of those speaking in opposition. Please disassociate me from the ad hominem attacks by one speaking in support of this ill-advised project. Your first job is to serve current residents of the city and to limit the harm you might inflict upon them. This means not forcing square pegs into round holes. Project at issue here is neither sensitive nor compatible with the neighborhoods around it, and no evidence has been presented to the contrary. Everyone appreciates the budget challenges that most have in this area. These include, but are not limited to, housing, food, transportation, energy, insurance, healthcare, and on and on. Those challenges hit me in the face when I moved here from Huntsville, Alabama, in 2020. That's the new home of Space Command and the highest density of scientists and engineers in the United States. I sold my 2,400-square-foot house and half-acre lot for less than half of the cost to buy an 1,800-square-foot house and a postage-stamp yard here. As a retiree in Alabama, I paid no state income tax, and my property tax was $1,100. All of this in the shadow of Redstone Arsenal. And then I was clobbered by years of Biden inflation, a government inflicted by bad government fiscal policy. Money is fungible, and government should not focus merely on housing, which is a symptom of a larger underlying problem. Giving tax subsidies to developers will only help a lucky few, not enough to even scratch the surface of the problem, as you were discussing just a few hours ago. The larger problem is high taxes and onerous regulation that impact all aspects of the economy, most telling on the budgets and employment prospects of ordinary workers. Rather than treat symptoms, you and all of government should promote prosperity for all with low taxes and less regulation. Signaling your virtue with projects like this may please you and your friends, but it's not a solution. It's like giving salty water to a thirsty sailor. We can do better, start by killing this rezoning and killing this project. I would note that this project is more than a half a mile away from the East Lake train station. You could not walk from a train to an apartment in the units without walking more than a half a mile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Wilson. I live at 13480 Williams Street, and I have been sworn. I'm a local government career professional, and I'd like to thank you for your public service. Dedication to public service can be very rewarding, but it is also sometimes thankless. I appreciate your service. I am opposed to this rezoning. The Maker project is not a bad project, however, the plot of land proposed for this project is terrible. It's a small, oddly-shaped, 3.7-acre plot of land that abuts to a middle school, an irrigation ditch, train tracks, the busy 128th corridor, and a middle school. There is also unpleasant sewer smells that emanate from 128th and Claude Court, not to mention the petroleum pipeline that's nearby. These are likely reasons why this plot of land has not been developed in 30 years. Maker, however, thinks this is a prime location to house 81 families in Thornton. I think Thornton families, some of which will be low-income, deserve better. Due to the small size of this plot of land, Maker is capped at 81 units. If insufficient low-income housing is the problem you are trying to solve, you should direct staff to work with Maker to identify a larger, safer plot of land that could serve more than 81 families. If 81 units is good, wouldn't 200 on a larger plot of land be better? The transit-oriented connection helps if you want to go see a baseball game in Denver, but it doesn't help families get to the grocery store, library, or rec center within a reasonable amount of time. Relying on the Planning Commission's 5-3 majority vote in support of rezoning this land to justify your support of the Maker project at this location is fraught with controversy. Two of the Planning Commissioners resigned shortly after this vote. Had they resigned just before the vote, it would not have passed. Voting in support of this rezoning and approving the Maker project at this location will send a message to the community that this terrible plot of land with serious safety concerns that no other developer has been willing to touch in 30 years is just good enough for low-income residents in the city. I encourage you to send a different message by denying this rezoning tonight and directing staff to work with Maker to identify a safer location that can serve more families, that deserve your protection. I look forward to listening to what message you have to send to the community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Maria Ciano, Adams County. Coleman Erickson, 10461 Pennsylvania Street. And Drew O'Connor, 3301 West 71st Avenue.
Can you say those names again?
Maria Ciano, Adams County. Coleman Erickson, 10461 Pennsylvania Street. And Drew O'Connor, 3301 West 71st Avenue.
Is Maria here? All right, let's move on to Coleman Erickson.
Coleman Erickson, 10461 Pennsylvania Street. I have been sworn in. Council, it is a pleasure to be in front of you and in support of Claude Court development. I think affordable housing is deeply needed in our community and has been for way too long. Housing has been a concern across the United States, and we've all felt it, especially here in the Denver metro area, and Thornton is not exempt from that. I think this is the first good step towards the transit-oriented development that this board has been in favor of and that I've been really proud to support. I think that Claude Court is going to be a cornerstone to what will be a larger movement within the city and within our communities to start accepting the variety of housing that we require, and that we're not currently meeting that. We've already said the things that are true, that housing is a human right, and councils should be doing everything they can to support that, and that housing's become incredibly unaffordable. Those who have purchased housing and have been able to get into housing 15, 20 years ago do not have a difficulty understanding, I find, the complexities and the roadblocks and the struggles of actually being able to afford a life on the kinds of salaries that we expect our citizens and our neighbors and our teachers and our service workers to take on. The income variety in our community is not matched by the housing variety in our community, and Claude Court is a first initial step to meeting that. Transit-oriented development is very important at this juncture in our transit history, and I believe that this is going to be the best first step I've seen in North Glenn to meet that. The East Lake development is very underdeveloped and very underserviced, and we're working on both ends to bridge that gap and to make sure that all of Thornton and all of the North Metro is served appropriately. But in order to meet that, we need to have the right kind of development in the right kind of places, and this is the right place, this is the right time. And I really support what your very smart and very hard-working city employees have brought to you, that is a recommendation to approve both this rezoning and the development. And I fully support everything that the city has brought to you guys, and I hope you guys make the right choice. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. My name's Drew O'Connor, I'm the Chief Operating Officer with Maker Housing Partners. Our address of our office is 3033 West 71st Avenue, Suite 1000, and I have been sworn in. If you go to the Maker website and hit About Us, hit the drawdown again for Culture, you'll see a list of our core beliefs. And one that always pops out for me, that we talk about a lot at Maker, is "All people have gifts and strengths." This is not just a phrase for us, it's something really important. We believe that if we provide a stable home for folks and a chance to connect and contribute in their community, to contribute in their community, and offer some degree of support, people and families can thrive. And those aren't just words, they're actions for us. I wanted to talk a little bit more about some of the programming that we have in place at Maker that support all of our community members across our 19 communities, and would certainly apply to the folks that we live in at this community. As Peter mentioned, we have an expert, professional, community management team that shepherds all our communities with clarity and compassion, and on-site we would have two, a manager and a community manager, or a manager and an assistant manager, and a maintenance team as well. In addition to that, we staff a resource navigation team that works to provide resources to all of our community members through several programs. One being our Housing Stability Program. As you all are well aware of, many folks are struggling to make rent across the Adams County area. And more and more, all of the resources that had been available to help people pay their rent are less available. Most recently, we've seen a loss of 10 funds across Adams County that provide significant rental resources, rental assistance to many people. And so, not only is our affordable housing important, but these housing stability programs are important. Maker actually supports and funds our own internal housing stability program to make sure that our community members can make rent for those tough times that come. We also have a partnership with Food Bank of the Rockies, where at eight of our communities, we serve as distribution sites for community members to get needed food on a monthly basis, and we're looking to expand that partnership with Food Bank of the Rockies over time. We connect our community members to workforce development resources, we connect our community members to mental health resources, we have a credit-building program so that whenever community members pay their rent on time, their credit improves. And if they don't pay their rent on time, it doesn't knock their credit. We also have a community engagement team that works directly with our community members in community to help create neighbor-to-neighbor community connections, identify community projects that they want to work on together, and then build kind of power and ability within those community members to make choices, make decisions, and improve their own communities. A lot of the projects that we've been working on lately, but not the only ones, have been developing community gardens across all of our communities where these community members are adding to that.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Would you please call the next group?
Kate Summer, 13457 Williams Street. David Foster, 1960 East 127th Circle. And Cynthia York, 1 Osprey Circle.
Mayor, people are having an issue online. They've been knocked off, they can't get on the city website. I've had several complaints.
We'll have the staff check it out while we continue the hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kate Summer. I live at 13457 Williams Street in Thornton, and I have been sworn in. My intention is to formally address the City Council, proposing that the current matter pertaining to the Maker rezoning and project approval be returned to the Planning Commission. Specifically, I advocate for reconsideration of this issue to be undertaken only after the appointment and thorough vetting of new commission members. This recommendation is firmly grounded on the observation that the two individuals who recently resigned from the Planning Commission did not demonstrate a vested interest in the proposed rezoning and subsequent project approval. Furthermore, it is important to note that these same individuals cast votes that advance the rezoning and the project approval process. Commissioner Jackie Phillips resigned on August 30th. Her inappropriate comments directed at the citizens during the August 19th hearing were unwarranted and clearly demonstrative of a personal bias, raising serious concerns about her ability to represent her constituents impartially. She is further burdened by the extensive and demanding responsibilities associated with her role as representative of House District and thus contributing to her resignation. Nora Brandon resigned on August 26th, citing move to another state. Her home was listed for sale on July 10th and subsequently sold on September 2nd, suggesting a lack of appropriately vested interest in-
Hold on just one moment.
Excuse me, Mayor. To the extent these comments are about the Planning Commission or the Planning Commission hearing, they're not appropriate for the application that is now before City Council and the evidence and testimony that we're taking in tonight with regard to the application. So I would just ask-
Can we focus the comments on the project itself and not the commission hearing?
All right. Well, both of these individuals in their actions-
And I'm going to ask the members of the audience to please be quiet while we let her speak. Thank you.
All right, both these individuals, I'm sorry, they're not vested stakeholders. Both of these individuals in their actions and subsequent departures made decisions that were demonstrative of-
Can we focus on the project itself, not on the commissioners or the Planning Commission?
Okay. I urge the council to return this matter specifically concerning the Maker rezoning and project approval to the Planning Commission. It is imperative- It is imperative that the Planning Commission thoroughly revisit this project and conduct a comprehensive revote after new commissioners have been fully appointed, vigorously vetted, and formally approved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, audience members don't get to do a point of order.
David Foster, I live at 1960 East 127th Circle, Thornton. I have been sworn in. The core thought about the project with the builder, I think, is a good idea, how they're trying to help people obtain housing, but I'm not in agreement with the land use and then the supporting services should be considered like the police department and so forth. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could you bring up the PowerPoint and go to Slide 4, please? Next slide, next slide, that one. Good evening, my name is Cynthia York. I live at 1 Osprey Circle. I live within 1,500 feet of the proposed development. My husband and I have several concerns...
And were you sworn in?
Oh, yes, I was sworn in, sorry. My husband and I have several concerns we want to bring up tonight. One of them is the way that this proposal is often referred to. Now, it's talked about as affordable housing, and we think it's also very fair to describe it as low-income housing. Next slide, please. Our view is driven largely by the way that Maker has decided to define their rents. When you look at these charts closely, you will see that Makers is very much intending to rent apartments to people that HUD would describe as low-income and very low-income. For example, the chart on the left, which is Makers' rent and income limits for 2025, shows that they have defined rental rates for people who have incomes of 70%, 60%, and 50% AMI. The chart on the right says very clearly that HUD describes residents with those income levels as having low or very low income. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, our first ask is to please stop the marketing spend. Now, let us be open and honest and acknowledge that the proposed development is indeed a low-income housing project. Next slide, please. Next for us is the issue of property values, that we have attended multiple meetings over the last year, and in each meeting, residents have expressed concerns about the potential impact on property values, and to date, the analysis done by staff has not addressed those concerns. So, our second ask is, please complete a property value impact study and then share the results with the community. Next slide, please. Third for us, Makers is very clear that they are actively engaged in managing the Choice Voucher Lotteries for HUD, and it's also important to know that the Choice Voucher Lottery Program is formerly known as Section 8. Next slide, please. Which leads us to have concerns about what is the income profile for residents in the proposed development. So, for example, we want to see how many residents will have incomes that are no higher than 70%, 60%, or 50% AMI. We are specifically interested in understanding if Maker plans to rent the residents who qualify for Section 8 support. Next slide, please. Last, we have heard people talk about the police services impact. What we'd like to do is focus on the conclusion, and the conclusion is that the proposed development would result or could result in a moderate burden on police services in an area.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder to the audience members, if you're whispering and talking, it actually amplifies up here and it makes it very hard for us to hear at the podium, so if you could keep those comments to a minimum or go out into the lobby to have a conversation, I would appreciate it. Would you please call the next group?
Stephen Strinka, 13187 Pennsylvania Circle, Riker Strinka, 13187 Pennsylvania Circle, and Darlene Oglen, Ward 1.
Hi there, we're good. My name is Stephen Strinka, I live at 13187 Pennsylvania Circle, and I have been sworn in. Good evening, I am here today to speak in favor of the proposed apartment complex on 128th. You might ask yourself who I am and why you should listen to One More Voice on the topic after a very long night. I wonder, too. I do live in the neighborhood, but I'm not here to defend my property values or voice fears about traffic or parking or crime. I'm not here to get angry at the process or my elected representatives, so why do I feel compelled to speak on a topic that ultimately will have very little effect on me? I won't live here. Sorry. It's a question I've had to reflect on, why I do feel strongly about this. Prior to a few months ago, I had not been very civically engaged, particularly in local matters. I've been very happy living in Thornton. To the city's credit, things seem to run well, and we're not managing critical emergency after critical emergency. We have clean air and water and most of the things our citizens need, so that is to the city's credit, and I appreciate it. So, when I saw the neighborhood's outcry over this development, I assumed something had gone terribly wrong. When I investigated the proposal, I saw quite the opposite. I saw that everything, I saw everything that had been going right in Thornton. I saw Maker collaborating for two years to develop a compromise with the community. I saw the neighborhood meetings where concerns were welcomed instead of silenced. I saw the thorough reports from the police, water, and fire departments thoroughly vetting the proposal with facts in place of anecdote. I saw the Planning Commission, a group of volunteers from our city, fairly consider the points raised in an unfriendly environment. Finally, I see the City Council here today, which I appreciate very much, listening to all of us. I know that each one of you received a 454-page packet about this meeting, and that's crazy, and reviewing that is an incredible amount of effort, and it does credit to yourselves as well, and it shows why the city of Thornton is being run well, so I appreciate your efforts as well. So, why am I here speaking in support of this? Because I hadn't heard anyone speaking about the things that have gone right to get us here. We're all here because we want a better Thornton, we want to build a better Thornton, but we cannot build a welcoming community without being welcoming. We can't build a welcoming city without being welcoming. I want to live in a welcoming city. I want to live in a future where a new teacher at Century Middle School, fresh out of college, can afford a place to live in our neighborhood. Perhaps they can meet a worker from an Amazon warehouse who lives in the same apartment complex, and they'll fall in love, have kids, the American dream. As they grow and develop careers together, perhaps one day they can afford a house within our neighborhood. That's the future I want to live in, but without the stepping stone of this apartment complex, it's hard to see how it would get there, and that's why I wanted to speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Riker Strinka, I live at 13187 Pennsylvania Circle, and I have been sworn. I have come here today in support of the affordable housing on 128th Street. I feel very strongly that this be approved firstly because of the benefits it will provide to the community. This project will positively impact this neighborhood because of the improvements to the trail it will be built on. I often bike down the path that the housing will be built near. In the lot, there is now little more than prairie dogs, but with the help of Maker, this path can be turned into a beautiful strip of land with lots of vegetation and lighting to make the path better and safer. This is also beneficial to us because of the new community members we will gain from this project. More people in this neighborhood will only be a good thing. More community members help each other in the neighborhood. They share culture, jokes, and dreams. I hope that this project will bring new neighbors into this community that existing residents can share friendships with. Finally, I hope that you will approve this project because not everyone can afford to live here. This is a great neighborhood, and anyone should be given the opportunity to move here. It is an amazing community that we all enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Darlene Oglen, I live in Ward 1. I have not been sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. You hereby swear affirm that your testimony before this council will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief.
I do.
Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, I'm not even going to try. I think we need to listen more to our children. Often, they have a lot of insight. I get to learn from young people every day, I'm very fortunate. Unfortunately, I work with some people who are in my profession, who can't afford to live in nice houses and things like that, or into the community in which we work. I live in Ward 4, I mean, I live in Ward 1, I work in Ward 4, okay? It's a big change, and change is difficult. Change is difficult, I know this. I heard someone speak to, "Don't change what we have going for 25 years." Well, my parents got the house 71 years ago, and we've seen a lot of change, a lot of change that hasn't always been easy, but it's worked out great. One such change was, and I remember my dad didn't speak much about anything, but we were real comfortable where we were, and there was a field behind us, and they wanted to build a childcare center, and my dad said, "Oh, gosh, that's going to be horrible." Later, he said, "Oh, my gosh, that was the best thing ever. It's a child's touch. If you don't know about it, you should go tour it. Oh, my God, it's like an amusement park. I've lived in this neighborhood forever, and you get in there and you get lost because there's so many things for kids to learn." I hear kids being treated well in that area when people go outside, but change, change is not easy. Everybody agrees, I think, that affordable housing is a good idea, okay? But not in my backyard. I'm just going to say it, that's what it is, not in my backyard. Met someone in the parking lot that said, "Are you for or against?" I said, "I'm really for it," and she said, "What are you talking about? Have you driven by there? We could end up with pedophiles by the school." I could end up with a pedophile next to my house. Matter of fact, there might be one, I have no idea. I mean, so, what I'm saying is, this, and what I understand, and so I'm confused, I thought this wasn't Section 8 housing, which people need a place to live, otherwise we need to find out where the homeless encampments are going to be. We have to have a place for people to live. We're not going to, we can't close off the area. I mean, I guess if you can afford a nice ranch with a lot of, a big wall up, that would be great, but in any case, thank you for speaking, that was just brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Kenneth Burns, 1 Osprey Circle, Karen Riley, 13065 Marion Drive, and Jody Rojo, 12885 Vine Street.
Would you bring up Cynthia's slide again? Thank you. My name is Kenneth Burns, and I reside at 1 Osprey Circle, and I have been sworn in. I'm going to finish Cynthia's presentation, and then I have a couple of quick comments. As she was making the comment on this last point, the study conclusion was that the projected impact for the police was going to have a minimum moderate impact for the area. If you go to the next slide, please. Our question is, shouldn't it be more transparent? Should we know more about what is moderate? Instead of asking or giving, handing us, I should say, a report that says, "Oh, it's just moderate impact," shouldn't we know what's going to happen? We've heard some stuff about what may or may not happen, but shouldn't we know? I mean, what is moderate impact? We don't know. We don't know what that is. Lastly, we'd like to have information about the projections on the volumes and the specific information about some projections on what kind of crime. What is that? What are we talking about? So, if you can help us with that, I think we'd all, as people who live in the area, I think we'd feel better about this, or maybe we won't, but that's our ask. Last thing, I attended the commission's meeting, and the makeup of some of the comments here are very different. And personally, and I'm going to just say this, I am offended by the fact that there are people here who don't live in the neighborhood who are making comments about whether something should or should not happen. I live in the neighborhood, I've lived there for 25 years. I have a voice because I've lived there. People that have an hour to speak on their behalf and then take three minutes in here? I'm offended. And I'm offended by these folks who even put them on the doggone list. And I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Riley, and I live at 13065 Marion Drive. I do live in the neighborhood, and I have come to several of these meetings, and I want to, I want to first start by asking, I hope that each and every one of you on council not only is aware of this property, but I've also heard you all say that you're very aware this is quite a passionate group of people talking about this. I hope that you have taken the time to park across the street in the Adams 12 Building and actually walk the property. As you've heard, there is a trail surrounding all edges of that property to really see what we're talking about. This is an area that our own Madam Mayor could not identify, that community gardens were the four little squares in the bottom, packed in a 3.75 acre area. I love the things that they're trying to do, but my passion from this beginning is not about affordable housing, that it's not appropriate. I started in Thornton in Ward 1, I now live in Ward 4. I work with childcare providers, and I stand before you as a nurse of 30 years who is doctorally prepared, and if I was a single mom at this point, I would live in that type of housing as a college professor. I understand the need for this housing, but that location is not proper. There is too much traffic, there is not enough parking. As I heard at one Maker meeting, they talked about how our governor has changed some of the rules for parking, but that's not real life. If I lived in that apartment as a single mom, I'm going to guarantee you, the odds of me having a gentleman friend is high. Where is he going to park? And what's going to happen? I have three daughters. What's going to happen when he has two kids on the weekend and they come over and stay with us? His car isn't going to have a tag, and yes, when you can look at cars that have tags versus not having tags, it can make your parking study look really fine, but what about the people who park overnight? I am concerned that there is not enough traffic, stoplights. Since this has been on our radar, my own neighbors have seen accidents at the intersection of 128th and Lafayette. Our own Thornton police have come there. That stoplight is ran all the time. You're putting a short entrance and exit ramp into that neighborhood. I am concerned that that is not an adequate home space for 81 units with enough parking to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jody Rojo. I live at 12885 Vine Street, and I have been sworn. I appreciate you guys staying late tonight, I know you probably want to go home. I know you probably want to go home. We built our house in Northlake Estates in 1994, and the reason we picked that lot was there was a sidewalk. There was a walking path right out our door. We thought that was excellent, and we have walked that path for 32 years. It's been wonderful. The single ditch trail in Thornton, I don't know if you've all walked it, in that section is absolutely gorgeous. Thornton has done a great job of improving it from Colorado Boulevard to York. It's a beautiful park. There's 100-year-old cottonwood trees. It's shady in the summer. You can walk and not roast. And I'm just envisioning walking along that beautiful path, and all of a sudden, you walk and there's a 50-foot building, which I swear is going to be taller than that because there's water in that land. It's going to be taller than 50 feet, all of a sudden, rising up on your beautiful nature path. And 300 people, all of a sudden, in this beautiful, natural, beautiful area. The planning commission vote, like they said, was five to three, but the deciding vote, you didn't hear the reason. They said, "Why not?" Now, that, to me, is not the way to plan a city. If you want to plan a city, you have to plan it for the next 50 years. And that's why I am proposing that that should be made into a park. It is part of the Eastlake Heritage Trail. That land was the site of the Colorado Alfalfa Milling Company back in the days of Eastlake. There's still concrete there from that. And I'm just, hope you vote against this. I really think it's too tall. 50 feet is very tall, all of a sudden, in amongst single-family homes. The tallest home around there is two stories. And one thing they did forget to mention, that smell over there by that thing? The North Glenn Main Sewer Line runs along the railroad tracks there. The North Glenn Treatment Center is north of Highway 7, and all the sewer from North Glenn flows by there. So it should be an interesting construction series if this, if you approve this.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Stephen Mathias, 2076 East 102nd Avenue. Lauren Richmond Jr., 13933 Dahlia Street. And Julie Malika, 14761 Forest Way.
Hi, everyone. Stephen Mathias. You know me. I live in Ward 1. I have been sworn in. So I support this project because it improves public safety, keeps our local workforce housed, and advances equity by distributing affordable homes across the city. The claim that criminals will live there often gets cause and effect backward. Stable, affordable housing is protective. As Maslow's hierarchy reminds us, shelter and safety form the base that make responsibility, learning, and good decisions possible. With a dependable roof, people go to work and school instead of bouncing from one crisis to another. Independent evaluations, including Denver's Random Supportive Housing Study, found that when people were offered housing, they had fewer police contacts and spent less nights in jail. As long as these projects meet standard guide rails, onsite and accessible management, and strict lease enforcement, we should approve them and hold them to those terms. Second, who benefits? The people who keep Thornton running, servers, caregivers, retail clerks, mechanics, nurses, young workers starting out, many of whom can't afford to live near their jobs today. Approving this project lets those workers live in the community they serve with shorter commutes and steadier schedules. The predictability of the professionally managed, income-appropriate rents helps families build savings and security. And when workers live here, they spend here, strengthening our local sales, use, and other tax bases, which comprised 52% of the 2024 Thornton budget revenues and provided funding for community services, supporting property value growth over time. For decades, discriminatory policies mapped opportunities in the ways we still live. Equity in affordable housing isn't just about how many homes we build, it's about where we place them. When we silo affordability into a few corners, we create affordable housing ghettos, concentrated pockets that isolate families and limit opportunities. HUD defines and tracks racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, and research shows that reducing the concentration of high-poverty neighborhoods improves long-term outcomes for the community. We should embrace that data and distribute well-designed, well-managed homes across Thornton, capitalizing on current opportunities and generating new ones. Finally, a personal thank you to the planning commission, including Jackie Phillips, for their support of our minority, lower-income, working-class communities, and for their tireless efforts to ensure opportunities for underprivileged people in Thornton. This project advances safety by stabilizing lives, supports our workforce and economy, and moves Thornton toward a fairer future. Please vote yes.
Hi. Lauren Richmond, 13933 Dahlia Street. And yes, I have been sworn in. Good evening. I'm a hospital chaplain. I'm a pastor, and I live in the neighborhood. I enjoy riding my bike down Signal Ditch Trail, past that spot Atlanta we're all talking here about tonight. I'm here tonight because home is more than a shelter. It's a foundation for family, for work, and for belonging. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Claude Court Project. When I was a kid, my family first moved to Colorado, and the six of us crammed into a small, 600-square-feet, two-bedroom rental. Four of us kids, three sisters and I, shared one bedroom with two bunk beds. It worked until the winter, when the walls metaphorically closed in, and we realized we needed something more. When I was in sixth grade, my family was approved for an affordable housing unit. It was not glamorous, but it changed everything, and that stability helped my family towards bigger and better things. My parents were eventually able to buy their first home. All four of us kids graduated high school, went on to college, and graduated. And then, for me, that foundation opened the door to a graduate degree and a life of service, as a pastor, as a chaplain, even working for a time in affordable housing in Aurora. Today, my wife and I live in the community. She's an ER nurse. We have two kids, and we contribute to our community. I am quite literally a success story from public housing. There are some who will say that affordable housing makes neighborhoods worse, but I am living proof that the opposite is true. When my family had the stability of public housing, we did not drag a neighborhood down. We became part of it. This stability gave us a foundation to thrive, and it set me on a path to serve others. Affordable housing does not weaken communities. It produces neighbors who give back, who contribute, who strengthen the fabric of the place that we share. And that's the point I want to leave with you tonight, that stability changes trajectories. Affordable housing does not just keep families off the streets. It creates pathways for education, for economic growth, and for community. It transforms not only families, but entire neighborhoods and future generations. I'm a person of faith. I'm a Christian, and I believe the heart of my faith, and many of the faith that we share here together, is this: to love God and to love neighbor. In Luke Chapter 10, the story of the good Samaritan, Jesus challenges the hearers, "Who is my neighbor?" And the lesson is clear: everyone is my neighbor. Approving this project is one way to live that out together and to make sure families like mine have an opportunity to grow, to thrive, and to give back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Julie Duran-Malika. I live at 14761 Forest Way, and I have been sworn in many hours ago. I actually cut my present, my speech, in half because I've been in the seats that you are sitting, and I know how exhausted you guys are. So I'm going to try and keep this brief. As many of you know, I have the great opportunity of serving Adams County as your Adams County Commissioner in District 1. I am a native Adams County resident, born and raised here in South Thornton, and today I'm raising my family and three young children right here in the community that we love. I'm here to voice strong support for the Maker Housing Development at Claude Court, 81 new homes for Thornton families. Tonight, I want to talk about values. In Thornton, we say we're a pro-family community. To me, being pro-family isn't an abstract slogan. It's practical. Being pro-family means being pro-rooftop. It means being pro-bedtime. It means being pro-nighttime kisses. It means creating the conditions where parents can tuck their kids into a warm, safe bed after a real dinner, not after a two-hour commute, not after searching for a place that they can afford, not after deciding between rent and groceries. This project reflects the values we teach our children: responsibility, neighborliness, and, yes, courage. Responsibility because we know growth is coming, and we plan for it with smart, well-managed housing. Neighborliness because we make room for people who are already part of our community's fabric, like our teachers, our medical assistants, mechanics, and service workers. And finally, courage. Courage because leadership means saying yes, when the need is clear and the proposal is sound. I urge you to approve the Maker Housing rezoning and development at Claude Court. Let's put our values into action tonight and make space for 81 more families to call Thornton home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening, and thank you so much for the service you provide to our amazing community.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Deita Dara, 12441 Clayton Way. Patrick Martin, 2035 East 133rd Court. And James Dan, 12865 Vine Street.
Can you call those names again? Can you call those names again?
Deita Dara, Patrick Martin, and James Dan.
Was it Deita, the first one?
Deita. D-I-T-A.
All right, looks like they are not here. Patrick?
All right. My name is Patrick Martin. I live at 2035 East 133rd Court in Thornton. I have been sworn in almost yesterday.[1369.33][1369.33](laughing) My family and I have lived in Hunters Glen for nearly 25 years. Here to ask you, the members of City Council and Mayor, to vote no on the zoning amendment for the proposed address of 1551 East 128th Ave., or as it is currently known in the Adams County and City Thornton Public Records Parcel 0157326400001. This is a square peg trying to be forced into a round hole, or in this case, a wonky triangle. Yes, there will be parking issues at the Adams 12 Building. Yes, Thornton PD can absorb a fractional increase in requests for service anywhere, but the impact, if it occurs repeatedly to any single location, is the actual data point that there's more to consider. After having attended the planning meeting, I believe this is more about questions not answered or asked. Why has it not been developed in some way? Simple. It's been privately owned. I get it. This is not a failure of land use, and certainly not a case of, "Well, we should do something with it now since it's been X years with nothing," which was the sentiment I felt around it leaving the planning meeting. It was the right of the parcel owner to hold it, which they did. However, according to the Thornton City View Portal from 2015 through 2021, this parcel had six pre-applications for development filed by the prior owner, four of which were residential in nature and had the critical path obstacle of being zoned as neighborhood services. The Maker purchased the parcel, and here we are today, tonight, almost tomorrow. All of this raises questions, ones I believe should be considered, and I encourage council to be asking the following questions to be sure you have the data that tells the story and not the story being told to you using data, as these are two very different things. If planned development is the right thing, then why is recently, in the most recent Thornton Future Land Use Plan, designates the parcel as TOD, but the zoning still neighborhood services? Is the intent of consistently designating it this way throughout the revisions for it to be in support of transit but not planned development? Is this fifth time truly in alignment with the future land use plan for, after four previously closed pre-applications that were in conflict with the zoning? Are we now essentially saying the land use plan and zoning to this point has been wrong? I say no. Maker has said housing development is what they do, so it's clear this was their only intent for this parcel when purchased. However, it's also clear they knew and understood the seven-figure financial risk they were taking on, which would require some reverse engineering with no guarantee to remove the critical path zoning obstacle that precludes their intent. I offer it's not the zoning or council's job to reduce or remove risk knowingly taken on by this or any other transaction, nor to make change just so something can be done with a parcel. And I ask you to consider all of this and vote no on the zoning amendment. Thank you for your time, consideration, and staying up late.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Dan, 12865 Vine Street, Thornton, and I have been sworn. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor and City Council, to address you here. It is my fervent hope to be home in time for Manics at 1 a.m. on MeetTV. My family has resided in Thornton for 31 years. As of August, we first established residency in the Country Hills subdivision in a home that we built and still own on Birch Drive. We happily joined the Northlake Estates community on Vine Street in 2007 because it's an exceptionally well-maintained community that manages, without an HOA, to maintain its properties because we are homeowners who care about and invest in the entire community. In 31 years in Thornton, I have known of nothing that has unified this community and adjacent neighborhoods more than the opposition to the development of this 3.7-acre parcel in question for the incongruous three-story, 81-unit rental apartment proposed by Maker Housing. Amid some of the very well-documented visual evidence that has been repeated here tonight that was shown to the planning commission on August 19th, there were many here who offered emotions and expressed their concerns in their three-minute speeches, many of whom left at its conclusion, completely disillusioned by the leader of the commission's assertion that no one was presenting solutions or alternatives, but just complaints. Speaking for myself, this was patently untrue, as the purpose of the commission hearing was to vote on the rezoning proposal to change the property's designation from commercial to residential. I stated then and will state again now that the majority of the residents that I have spoken to would welcome a less obtrusive, business-oriented project housing several small businesses or offices akin to the structure in Eastlake at the corner of York and 124th, otherwise known as Turkey Central Station, or the predominantly dental or orthodontic offices on 136th Avenue between York and Colorado Boulevard that have, by all accounts, proven themselves to be good neighbors. Such a business development poses far less of an imposition to neighbors who are concerned about Maker's towering three-story behemoth and its proposed tenants' abilities to look into the yards and homes surrounding it, to say nothing of the absolute guarantee of the parking and traffic impacts that the Maker Housing Development would pose. I'm going to skip some other comments I had planned about the planning commission meeting in the interest of time, but it seems to me that a city council that respects, we hope, the wishes of its longtime tax-paying, contributing members of this city would want to pursue a more thorough investigation of the concerns of this community that we were able to present to the planning commission just weeks ago. Each member of this council is invited to tour my backyard, walk my neighborhood, do a feet-on-the-ground perusal of the too-small, oddly-shaped triangular parcel, and hopefully not chase us away from the Thornton of our longtime homes and this ill-conceived development. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call the next group, we have about 20-ish left, I believe, which is about another hour. Can we take a quick break, please? We're going to recess for a quick break. Use the restroom, come back. Let's try to make it five minutes. Thank you for letting us take a quick break. I think we are going to go ahead and get started again. All right, I think we are ready to call the next group.
Jessica Troy, Ward 3. Tara Mascheco, Ward 2. Lauren Richmond, 13933 Dahlia Street.
Hello, I am Jessica Troy. I live in Ward 3, and I was sworn in. I've had enough time during all this testimony to finish my cross-ditch project, so that's what I'm doing. I've had enough time during all this testimony to finish my cross-ditch project, so that's pretty cool. I hope, I would consider myself to be a part of the neighborhood. I live about a mile and a half away. I know some people here have been talking like half a mile is a really super-long way to walk. I walk three to five miles a day at work. So I feel like a mile, mile and a half is pretty close. I ride my bike on the Signal Ditch Trail all the time. I do foraging for edible and medicinal plants over there. So I hope that I am close enough to the situation for my opinion to be valid. But I support this project, and I will tell you why. It's because I have already seen families losing their homes and becoming homeless in Thornton because of the housing crisis. Some neighbors of mine, their daughter and my daughter are best friends a few years ago, lost their housing right here. They started out in Ward Three, they moved to Ward Four, and then they were homeless after that. They lived in a hotel for a long time. It was a real bad situation for them. And they've had to leave Thornton and go live with family out in Lock Buoy. They still commute to bring their children to school here to maintain some sense of stability for them, and they've been doing this for about a year and a half now. It adds about an hour and a half of commuting to their day, every day, and they do it because Thornton has been such a great community for them and their kids, and they are desperate to keep their kids in and amongst the communities that have been so good to them all these years. This is a family who was stable here for a really long time. My oldest son is eighteen, and he, I have been seeing them in our schools in the area since my son started kindergarten, right? This is not a transient family who floated through. Thornton is losing families right now. They are, we do not have the housing for the people in our community, and not building this housing is hurting them. My family has lived in this area for three generations, and things, I've never seen things this bad here. It breaks my heart to see people in this community struggling, and we need to do something about it. This is a crucial time. Do I wish this was mixed-use development? Absolutely. But like, there's plenty of other space for mixed-use development. Let's just get something in there. I think this project looks great. I'm not worried about it impacting my access to nature in this area. From what I can tell, all my foraging places are going to be safe. I feel like poor people deserve access to nature, too. I grew up in housing like this, and it's been hurtful to hear how much people say families like mine bring crime and ugliness into communities. It's not... I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tara Mistracchio. Yes, I was sworn in, and I'm getting less articulate by the moment. I am a Thornton resident of Ward Two, and I appreciate very much your patience for the very late evening and everyone's contribution on both sides. I actually very much appreciate, you know, respectful discourse. And on that, really, what matters to me is community. It matters to me. I'm a teacher not far from this, from this location. I'm a high school teacher not far from this location. I'm also a retired police sergeant, so I am this community. I am who is using this housing. I am, and I think we are. I think anyone who doesn't want their thirty-year-old in their basement is this community. Anyone who wants their parents to have housing they can afford is this community. I think that affordability is the biggest concern of voters in this district, and this is what affordability looks like. And affordability looks a little different to everyone. And right now, there's people, forty-two percent of Americans, right now are actually pulling back on their spending of groceries and of bills and of common daily goods, forty-two percent, because they can't afford things like their housing. So that is affecting everyone to this extent, and it's affecting everyone in the community, the community that we are, that we make up. I, one of my jobs, like I say, I am, I am the community. So I work in a high school. I actually work in the state legislature, and I have a business in trauma. I have three jobs to keep, to keep the housing that I have for myself, and that's what I have to do. So I am this community. And as such and part of that, I learned about building a ghetto. We have to disperse affordable housing. We can't put it all in the same area. We are creating a ghetto, and we've already done that in parts of Thornton. And we need to disperse this into other areas where it makes sense because these are our teachers, like I am, our cops, like I am, and our workers, like I am. So what you're, what is happening with affordability is when you get workers who can live in their community and be stable, you have low, lower cost for businesses, which saves money. When you have kids that can have a stable enrollment, you have stability in education, and you have less cost. When you have law enforcement getting three extra calls was what I believe was, was mentioned. Three calls does not mean, does not make a crime rate. It makes three more calls. Every call is not a crime. So you're not increasing a crime rate. You're getting stability in community. You're getting a group of people actually invested in their community because they have stable housing. These all end up having less cost. In the end, it is all about affordability, but not only for the people in the houses, but the people in the entirety of the community. So I think I'm going to get lost in what else I wrote down because I'm ready to call it a day. So thank you very much for your patience and for everyone's contribution.
Thank you. I think we had Laura as the next one.
Lauren Richmond.
All right, let's call the next group.
Eileen Mendez, 2172 East 129th Avenue. Jeannie Scarborough, 2495 East 127th Place. And Chuck Lacary, 2097 East 129th.
Come on down. Is Ellen here? All right, let's go to Jeannie.
Gosh, it's good to be up here. Hello, my name is Jeannie Scarborough. I live at 2495 East 127th Place, and I have been sworn in. For the past four hours, roughly, I've heard all about that this, this whole discussion has been about affordable housing. To me, this is not what this, what we're talking about right now. I am for affordable housing in the spot where it will work. I think that I've also heard a lot of folks in Thornton. Thornton's a big place. It's not a tiny little corridor like 128th Street is. You know, anybody who lives near that area knows what a mess it's been with traffic now. And I appreciate the folks that are outside of the area coming in. However, those that are for this, this section, this place, don't have to live in it, you know? And I think it's the reason why we're passionate, some of us, is because we live there. We have to drive that road every day. The other thing is that the people going across the street, it's a busy street, 128th. It's dangerous. It's dangerous. People cross from the park over to the other side, and if that's the main mode of transportation or getting to the shops, getting to the rail, that's it. You've got to cross 128th. You know, it's for kids. There's lots of skateboarding kids, but that's dangerous. You know, so forever, for however we talk about it's going to be a neighborhood service, I don't quite see how it's going to be a neighborhood service for the people who have to deal with it, the traffic. I just, I just don't. It, it just, it kind of boggles my mind. Have you folks, I'm sorry, may, may I respectfully ask, Mayor Coleman, council members, have you been to the site? Okay. I walk there pretty much every day, and it is so small. I'm not against affordable housing, you know? I, I'm from Northern California where Bigfoot lives. We all need affordable housing, but that place is so small. And it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to me like it's a good location for it at all. You know, we talk, we talk a lot about affordable housing and this and that, and it's, that's not what this debate is about. It's about the people who live there, the people that are going to be behind this huge structure. I mean, I can't even fathom what it's going to look like. And I'll end with this. You said the land, you have a land acknowledgement. May this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our responsibility to be mindful and respectful of the land. It's history and indigenous communities who were the original stewards of this land. And so I ask you to please be a good steward of this little teeny-tiny little triangle and ask Macon to go find another location. Thank you.
I think Jeff was next.
Chuck Lacar, Cari.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Lacary. I live at 2097 East 129th Avenue, Thornton, and I have been sworn in. Everything you heard tonight is probably what I'm going to say, too, but I just want to emphasize on a few things. I am not against affordable housing. Everybody needs a place to live. You've heard that many times tonight. This project is not for this lot. Simple. It's common sense. It's too small. Three and three-quarters acres is not enough for eighty-one units, a hundred and twenty parking spots, and people to live. It is going to be chaos. If you think the malls at Christmas time are bad, just wait until you go to this parking lot every day of the week because there's going to be no place to park. And there is going to be road rage. There's going to be parking lot rage. I can see it. That's my own opinion. I hope you guys can understand that this is not the place for this project. It has to be somewhere else. I hope these people understand this. It's going to be dangerous, just like the lady just said. People are going to be trying to cross 128th because Maker has already tried to find a place that's going to take the overflow parking. It is not going to work. Common sense will tell you it is not going to work. Please. Please take it in consideration. Please look at the place. It is not going to work. A couple of things that they mentioned, that they are going to be on-site. The last project, the last meeting that was held, they openly said, "Nobody's going to be there on the weekends." Okay? Nobody. Nobody's going to be there to control it. Stickers are for children. The children can have stickers. The cars, it's not going to make a difference. I don't, I can't paint a pretty picture. I can't express enough that this place is wrong for our community. Put something else there. I don't care if you, I don't care if you do vote in for residential. Not this project, please. Please look at it and understand that it is not going to work. It is going to be horrible. It's going to be dangerous, and there's going to be trouble. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Amber Alvarado, 3303 West 71st Avenue. Sherry Fry, 10785 Melody Drive. And Benjamin Smith, 11881 Josephine Court.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for your time. I'd like, oh, sorry, Amber Alvarado, 3033 West 71st, and I have been sworn in. I would like to voice my strong support for this development. I am a newer resident of Adams County, but my family has roots in this area that go back over three generations. And it's my hope to continue, to continue that and raise my family here to deepen those roots. As a young professional, it's people just like me that need these developments. It's the waiters, cooks, grocery store clerks, healthcare workers, teachers, and so many more who are the heartbeat of our communities. This development is a stepping stone to self-sufficiency and the American dream. Without developments like Claude Court, that dream will never be attainable for so many people. We all deserve a safe place to lay our head at night, a safe place for our kids to live and thrive, and a safe place for our parents to enjoy their retirement. That's exactly what this is. It's a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry Fry.
I'm not Sherry.
Are you, Benjamin?
I'm Benjamin. All right. Benjamin Smith, 12881 Josephine Court, and I have been sworn in. About seven years ago, my wife and I welcomed a friend from high school into our home. She and her three young children were fleeing an abusive relationship, and they stayed with us for nearly a year. And that experience taught me that offering a home to a family in need is life-changing for both sides. And here, we as a community have an opportunity to give eighty-one families a place to live that is affordable with green space and transit and good schools and safe streets and access to jobs. And this kind of opportunity is vanishingly rare in our state. And my only ask is that if we say no to this project, that we be honest about what we're saying, what we're saying no to. There have been many concerns voiced by neighbors, and I think that the Maker folks addressed pretty much all of them. I'll add one detail about my, my personal experience because I do live nearby. My family of four lives in a nice, single-family home, and we have between us exactly one car. And this is because cars are expensive, and the train is close enough for us, for me to bike when I work downtown. And I highlight that because that's the value of living near transit. It's the value it brings to people. It connects you to opportunity and reduces your need for a vehicle. It saves you money. And so I'll close by saying that that's why, contrary to what others have said, that this lot is exactly the right spot for these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
Dominic Pareko, 913 East 130th Drive. Annika Cunningham, 1450 East 128th Court. And Kevin Hesker, Hesker, 1941 East 129th Drive.
My name's Dominic Pareko, 913 East 130th Drive. I have been sworn in, Hunters Glen Neighborhood, Ward Four. I echo all the oppositions. Ditto to them. And then I would, what simplifies this thing for me is that we said no. We've said it through the petitions. We've said through the pickets. We say it here, and that's it. That should be necessary and sufficient enough. We live in this neighborhood. We said no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and good morning, Soon. I'm Annika Lanning, 1415 East 128th Court. I have been sworn in. I support affordable housing. We need housing. We need housing that meets the needs of the people. That's why the city creates documents, like the 2015 Station Area Master Plan, 2020 Comprehensive Plan, and the 2024 Housing Needs Assessment. These documents reflect years of public input and analysis to shape a productive future for Thornton. I guess before I continue, I want to remind them, can I do a fact-check on Maker's stamp quote? I don't think it was accurate.
I'll take that as a note, and they can address it after the public comment.
On reading the city of Thornton's documentation, it's very clear that this plot of land was envisioned as a medium density such as townhouses. The stamp's vision was reiterated in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. The 2024 Housing Needs Assessment highlights the city's drastic increase in apartments being built and a growing demand for townhouses in the city of Thornton. Ignoring these plans risks undermining public trust and discouraging residents from participating in future planning efforts. When projects deviate from the vision we've already adopted, they create mismatches in infrastructure, transportation, and neighborhood character. What may seem like a short-term solution can lead to long-term costs, both financial and social, if the housing mix doesn't match actual demand. I'd like to quote some of the documentation for your reference. Housing Needs Assessment, page fifteen. On page fifteen, the Housing Need Assessment predicts a decrease in population in the area. Housing Needs Assessment, page forty-two. There's a growing demand for townhomes, which often serve as a more affordable alternative to detached homes. Housing Needs Assessment, page sixty. Housing Needs Assessment, page 60. The decline in condo construction has led to a housing construction market favoring rental units over entry-level homeownership. This shift is evident in the comparison of condo and apartment construction rates with a drastic increase in apartment builds relative to condos as previously mentioned. Stamp, page 39. This concept proposes a number of potential uses for the triangular parcel north of 128th Avenue and immediately west of the railroad tracks. Uses proposed for this area include moderate-density residential, such as townhomes or garden homes, neighborhood-oriented office, or retail-fronting 128th Avenue, or institutional or educational uses, including the potential for athletic fields. I did want to note that the Lyrel station is 0.8 miles from the, from the project. To me, that's not walkable. I mean, it's bikeable, but I would consider this a car-dependent area and we are a retail desert. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if you would let staff know the part you want fact-checked, they can make sure we address it later. Right behind you. Ms. Stoller.
Ready? My name is Kevin Hischke. I'm a 13, 12-year-old, 12-year-old, 12 is late. 12-year resident of Thornton. I'm a retired Christian minister and I just love people. And I love that people have places to live. And so I have a lot of struggle with the whole idea that, that this is about affordable housing. It's about people. And, and what we need to do is care about the people that want to come move here, but we have to care about the people that are here. And so we have a city council. And so the big thing that I just want to say here tonight is, boy, could we just call the question and be done tonight? Okay, I'm sorry. What I'd like to do is just get us home, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about what I've been hearing. I've been hearing that the vote is all about housing. It's all about, well, it's really all about finding trust. Finding trust in what was proposed. Finding trust in the people that say, this is our community. Can we trust them for what they want in their area of the community? I think we can. I think you should listen to the, to the people of this neighborhood that have said over and over again that this isn't quite what fits them. Because you know what? We have heard tonight that there is a struggle. We have heard tonight that, that this is the answer to all the housing issues. No, it's not. What this is, is a place for us to care about people. And I guess I've run out of words other than to say, I hope that you can, through your work, your decision, and I should just be quiet so I can care about you people too. Have a good night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next group?
The last person that has signed up in person is Gabriel Cervantes, 9371 Ellen Court.
Made it team. So proud of everyone in here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gabriel Cervantes. I live on 9371 Ellen Court, just right down the street. I was born and raised in Thornton. My parents moved here in 199...
Were you sworn in?
Oh, I was sworn in. I'm so sorry. My parents moved here in 1993 when most of this city was still a prairie. And as I've grown up here, I've seen the cost of living skyrocket and become inaccessible to the people I know and love here. Over half of Thorntonites are cost-burdened by rent. And while the meeting, the median housing cost is $370,000 across the U.S., the median housing cost in Thornton is just over half a million dollars. When I bought my house in 2021, I made 18% more than my father did, adjusted to inflation, and had to buy my house with three other people. $30,000 over asking price. It is an out-of-touch notion to think that homeownership is the path out of poverty, as it used to be, and even a reality for most Thorntonites today. The projected rents for this development are between $1,300 to $2,600, to which many of, many people have already pointed out that that is a mortgage payment. That's true. My mortgage payment was about $2,300 after tax, but you can't possibly expect me or my friends to have come up with an $80,000 down payment without chaff assistance. I've heard folks say that these rents are unaffordable, but it really speaks to what affordability means today. The cap for a single person living in this development at 70% AMI is $68,000. I would qualify to live here. I have been a restaurant manager in Thornton. I've fed probably most people in this room today. And I currently work at the world's largest financial investment firm. Again, I would qualify to live in this affordable housing unit. To those people who vote, to those people who oppose this development, let me ask you, are you saying you oppose someone like me living in your community? A graduate from the best business school in the state? Someone who has proudly represented this community as a student, a business operator, a nonprofit leader, and as a community member? Are you saying I shouldn't be able to live in the community that I've given everything I have to? We are being constantly told that this isn't the right space. This isn't the right place to build it. Then where is? Is it out of your neighborhood? Is it out of Ward 4? Or are we finding every reason that we absolutely can to oppose this? I acknowledge that, yeah, a lot of us don't live in Ward 4 and we're speaking on this because so many of us cannot afford to live in Ward 4. And that is exactly what this is trying to address. I truly, strongly, and urgently advise that the city approve the Claude Court project because we can't keep pretending that Thornton won't be the fifth most populous city in the state of Colorado anymore. It's time we do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're moving to the online comments now.
Yes, Your Honor. The first person is Steve Odericio, 7403 Ray Street.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Steve Odericio. I just want to thank you all for staying so late and I know you guys are busy going through all this, these facts. But I will say that when looking at Maker, when they do these projects, I think it's important to note that they did a lot to reach out to the community. And what I see as a really balanced approach, they reduced the density, they listened to and responded to the community. These are things that I look at when I'm sitting there as a county commissioner, but also I think that you would appreciate that they made changes along the way. And I think it's important to acknowledge that the engagement was thorough. It was throughout the whole time. And it's something that I think is important to recognize. You guys have a lot to deal with tonight, but I do think it's important also to highlight the fact that these are folks that are going to be moving in this community. Their rent is going to be anywhere from like 15, on average, 1,500 to 20, to over $2,000. There are many folks that are opposed to this whose mortgages and that own houses are less than that. I think it's a, it's important for us to support the folks that want to live in our community. I know I don't want my kids living in my basement forever. I love them dearly, but if we can try to increase our supply, these are things that are important. And when looking at this, when you look at the harmonious, the question of whether it's harmonious to the community, I looked around and I think that actually this is a good location. You do have some like and similar uses. And so looking at this, I think we all are trying to do our part all throughout the region and have, I really appreciate the comments earlier about making sure we have affordable housing spread throughout the community in different ways because we don't want to densify poverty in areas. We want to be able to show that anybody can live in any community in Adams County.
And I know when you sign up to speak online for the webinar, it asks you to be sworn in, but can you confirm for the record that you were sworn in?
Yes, I was sworn in before I was sworn at.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Julia Marvin, Thornton.
Hello, can, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you so much. Well, happy Wednesday, Mayor and Council. My name is Julia Marvin and I am a resident of Thornton. I'm here to speak in strong support of the...
And you were sworn in, right?
Yes, I was sworn in yesterday, so I assume that still counts.
The hearing's still open? We're good to go.
Great. I'm here to speak in strong support of the Claude Court project, this zoning amendment and site plan. Housing costs in our community are rising faster than wages and too many of our neighbors are being priced out. I want to tell you a story about a good friend of mine who works at a restaurant that recently opened here in Thornton. She loves her job and being a part of this community. But when she went to look for an apartment nearby her job, everything was out of reach financially. She eventually had to move to Westminster just to find a place she could afford. And even that, the affordability was still in the $1,500 to $2,000 range, which is more than some of us pay in our mortgages. It was heartbreaking to see her pushed out of this community that she helped serve and that she wanted to live in. And that's why projects like this one, with its 81 affordable apartments, are so important. They give families, workers, and seniors the chance to put down roots and stay in Thornton. I know some people worry about traffic, safety, or compatibility, but well-designed affordable housing like this has been shown to blend into neighborhoods without harming property values, public safety, and thoughtful planning can also help to address traffic. Maker Housing is a leader in housing and I trust that they wouldn't be building somewhere that wasn't compatible for development. What truly isn't compatible with Thornton's future is forcing out the people who work here and keep our community strong. By supporting this project, you're investing in people. You're saying that our teachers, our service workers, and our young families deserve to be here and deserve a safe and affordable place to live. I urge you to approve the zoning amendment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Austin Johnson, 4183 East 129th Circle.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Just make sure you tell us you were sworn in and your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Austin Johnson, 4883 East 129th Circle, Thornton. I live in the Country Hills neighborhood and I have been sworn in. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Let me please also share my respect to our fire department and law enforcement that keep our city safe. And please also bless our teachers and medical professionals who are the foundation of this community. This is my first time speaking in a meeting like this, but I feel compelled to speak out against this. I am a new resident. I moved here two years ago from Aurora, where I've been a lifelong resident of colorful Colorado. My income nearly my whole life has been under $50,000. Until recently, this would be a place that, you know, I would qualify for. I've worked very hard and I've invested my nest egg here. And what attracted me to this part of the city was the trails. And I think that's something that's mostly been talked down on. But just to go into a little bit further depth, these trails back up right up to people's homes. They don't have fences. There's just the ditch behind it. And I think we're going to be having a lot of people out there. I have a dog that I go up and down those trails with regularly. And at nighttime, it's very dark. They'll probably have to put in extra lighting, which is only going to cause more fuss with the long-term residents. Speaking of the long-term residents, this is going to lower their property values, probably substantially. I'm not sure what the end consequence is of that or if that's even a concern, but I think that we're going to be taking money out of our community overall. One of the things that I'd also like to kind of discuss is how, how we're doing new development. It's either big mansions or it's multi-level apartment complexes. There are no small units anymore with just a one-car garage, 1,000 square feet, you know, with a little garden. That's, that's a community to me. And I think that we're taking the jobs away from people in Thornton as well and we're giving them to Maker and BTBS, which is headquartered in Santa Monica, California. What is their long-term goal? Is this, this is just a profit thing for them? But what we're doing is we're, we're, we're talking about affordability, but the problem is, is that we are not creating long-term wealth with these people. If, if you want affordability, bring back the affordable house. I, I spent nearly $600,000 on a house and I, I am 10 years, you know, behind as far as I, where I thought I would be just getting an entry-level home. I, I worked hard for it and apartments never worked for me. I could never move into an apartment. They were always increasing rent just by the amount that I would get there and it's like chasing a carrot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Mary Payne, 12933 Newport Way.
Hello. I'm back. Anyway, I've listened to everything and you guys...
And Mary, can you tell us that you were sworn in, please?
I'm sorry. Oh, no, I've not been sworn.
Do you hereby swear affirm that your testimony before this council will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you as a council see things differently than the community do. And some of you have chosen to live in extreme expensive houses and have lost touch with the people that need help. And the builder got figures from somewhere, but Bureau of Labor Statistics says the teacher in Thornton's average salary is about $53,000. I've talked to people who work for the city and say, I cannot afford to live here. I have to go down to Capitol Hill or I have to go here. I have to go there. There are many people that could not afford even to live in this, quote, "affordable" housing. And I had worked on two projects for affordable housing in the City of Thornton. Someone has got to give. And I think it's the builder because they are so greedy. This area that you're talking about, I have seen it being a weed-infested lot to something that has finally been cleaned up. You talk about a pipeline. Do you know we live on a Sinclair pipeline where I live? We get notices all the time about, do we see this? Do we see that? And having been raised in the oil and gas industry, I know what to look for. There's methane gas where there's several vents around town. But look, the normal person wouldn't know what they were. So you guys have got to do what is best for the community. We've got to stop this, not in your backyard, not in my backyard. And we've got to start helping people. Thank you. And good luck, guys.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Laura Decker, 12858 Claude Place.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm Laura Decker. Address is 12858 Claude Place. I have been sworn in. I appreciate the council allowing me the opportunity to speak. I would like the site to remain zoned as is for neighborhood services. First, I believe that this site has not been developed yet because up until more recent years, much of this area was not developed. It has been in the last 10 or so years that we really started seeing more houses, apartments, and warehouses being built. I don't believe that many people realize this land was for sale and zoned for services, but it also sounds like it could have been overpriced and that probably should have been evaluated and priced appropriately to encourage small businesses as the parcel is too small for anything large. Second, thriving and vibrant communities in Boulder, Arvada, Wheat Ridge, et cetera, have started incorporating more restaurants, small shops, beer gardens, et cetera, near and within neighborhoods. This site is an ideal, an ideal location for that since it is small, close to trails, and central to the existing community. In Thornton, specifically in this area, there are houses and warehouses in every direction and as far as you can see. I think we would benefit from some small shops or light commercial to serve the community in this area since that is currently missing. City planners should ensure there is a good mix of housing and services to create vibrant communities, which is why I think the current zoning is appropriate to this specific site. I am in agreement that we need more affordable housing and that is a huge issue in the state, not just Thornton. I would really love for my 21-year-old son to be able to move out, but sadly, I don't think that this is the right space. I would really love for my twenty-one-year-old son to be able to move out, but sadly, I don't think that this is the right space. Should this pass, there are still concerns from the neighbors that have not yet been addressed. The biggest one has been the parking. We heard from one Maker member that only up to two stickers would be given per unit. While at a previous meeting, another member said that all residents residing in the homes with a car would have a sticker so that we could ensure that we could identify them when they parked in the neighborhood and make sure that they couldn't do that. It does not seem fair that the neighbors' recourse is to ask them nicely not to park in front of our houses, while if we were to go to park in the Maker lot, we would be towed. The recommended parking seems to be more in line with what you would see in a downtown Denver where many folks do not have cars. This site is in the suburbs where most people do have cars, because there is not much within reasonable walking distance. My point is, even though Maker believes they are being generous with parking by having better than the recommendation, the parking is not adequate for suburban life. People are not going to walk to Target for groceries. So in closing, I believe we need more affordable housing, but I do not think this is the right site. We have heard a lot of great speeches from folks in favor of this project, who, by the way, most, not all, don't live near this site. I agree with many of their sentiments, but again, not in this location. I urge you to take the concerns and wishes of the majority of the immediate neighbors into consideration when making your decision.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Jeanette Porter, one five seven two one east Seventh Avenue. Hello, my name is Jeanette Porter, and my address is one five seven two one east Seventh Avenue, and I have been sworn in. I really wanted to bring a different perspective tonight, and so I looked at this community from the angle of not necessarily just Thornton, but what are we doing in housing in a three-mile radius around the proposed bill? And the answer is not enough. Right now, one point nine one percent, and this includes Westminster and North Glen, up north above one hundred and fourth, one point nine one percent of the units are affordable housing. If I take Westminster and North Glen away, point five percent of the units in this area are fully affordable housing. If we don't start building somewhere, where will the people who work in Thornton live? The reason we're seeing upticks in homelessness is because the market can no longer bear the price of housing anywhere in the state of Colorado, but even more drastically where you are in Thornton. I wanted to try to be really quick today and make these few points with you. I want to say that twenty-nine thousand, over twenty-nine thousand people in this neighborhood, twenty-nine thousand households, not just people, twenty-nine thousand households cannot afford the area that you are in. That's just over fifty percent, which we've heard a few different numbers tonight. We are asking to add eighty-one units to an area severely underserved with housing. I want to make this point because I raised two sons and my daughter right off one hundred and twentieth and Claude Court. When I got divorced, I found out I could no longer live in the city of Thornton. And because of that, I now live in Aurora, and it makes me sad that we have to have this meeting. Council members, I appreciate your time tonight, and what I would tell you is this. Sometimes we have to make hard decisions, and those decisions have to start somewhere. Claude Court is going to be built to the standards of the community it is being put in, meaning that there's not going to be a drop in property value. I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions on the stats that I'm providing, please reach out, because it is an accurate representation of the community, not just Thornton as a whole.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Kathy Henson, one zero six nine east ninety-sixth place.
Good evening. Yes, my address is one zero six nine east ninety-sixth place. I have been sworn. My name is Kathy Henson. I am a Ward One resident, former Thornton City Council member representing Ward One, and a current Adams County Commissioner. Thank you so much for your time tonight, council, and thank you for letting me participate in comments this evening remotely. I want to borrow some words that were used by another speaker tonight. I am speaking in strong support of the Claude Court Project, and those words are stability, prosperity, and opportunity. And those are three beautiful words that I think we all want to see in our city and in our community. And this Claude Court Project is going to provide that for the families who will move into those homes. And when we stabilize a family and create opportunity for them to pursue prosperity and be welcomed into our community, it has a cascading effect that's going to have a positive impact on the community around us. This has been referred to many types of housing. We know it is also workforce housing. We know Adams County, I can share with you, our median age is about thirty-five. We're a young county. We're a growing county, and that includes Thornton, the largest city in Adams County, and soon to be the fifth-largest city in the state. And we are growing the workforce. We are the future workforce for the Denver metro region, and we need a place to welcome our families where they can put down roots and thrive. We use that word a lot about Thornton. We want it to be a place where people can thrive. I know I have, and I think we all believe that. I remember that from my time on council. That is something that we all have in common. I have confidence in Maker Housing that they can take this plot of land and really turn it into something wonderful for our community. When cities grow, as Thornton is growing, it brings change, and that also means transformation. And things don't always stay exactly the same, but transformation is a wonderful opportunity. And I believe that Maker Housing can take this maybe oddly-shaped little patch of land and transform it into some beautiful opportunities for stability, prosperity, and opportunity for our families. And this, the housing, will be transformative, not only for the city of Thornton, top to bottom, but for Adams County community as a whole. And I thank you for your time and commitment to hearing people on this project. I strongly support this project, and I please urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you call the next person?
That was the last person who signed up to speak, Your Honor.
All right. I think we have a list of questions, though, that need to be answered by the applicant or by staff. I'll just start with what I have written down here. There was a question about the third floor and the-
I'm sorry, I didn't get here in time to sign up. Can I speak real quick?
So we're already moving forward?
Okay.
Do you have anything additional to add?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a different perspective. If it's okay if I just speak for just a minute?
Can you be sworn in?
Yeah, I was Eric Montoya, and I was here in time for the swearing-in, so I was sworn in. Three one six five east ninety-fourth drive. Thank you for this opportunity. I know it's late. So I have served on the Maker Board of Directors, and some people might say because of that I am going to be biased. But actually, I look at that as I'm intimately aware and knowledgeable of the work that Maker does on a daily basis and the communities that they manage. And I saw a picture today of Greenbrier that was an older picture, and Maker took over less than ten years ago. You can see the development or the remodel and the work that they do. Go to any of their communities, you'll see the work, and you'll see that they are good stewards of their resources and good stewards of the mission. I just want to talk real quick about a couple of things here. This is in a TOD zoning area, and the standards for an area like this are thirty units per acre, one parking stall per unit, up to four stories. And Maker has proposed twenty-two units per acre, one-half parking stall units, and three stories. So they have reduced that quite a bit. And this project or this property has previously been under contract with a market-rate multifamily developer and a self-storage provider. So if it goes to market rate, we're going to be looking at a lot higher density and not serving the income that we desperately need to serve. I know there's a lot of community concerns, and I appreciate everybody that came out and spoke tonight. A lot of these concerns are valid, and I love that we have an engaged community. But a lot of things are like, "I'm in favor of affordable housing, but not this location." Well, this is the perfect location. If not this location, then where? Because it's right next to transit that people can go and work downtown still and live up in Thornton. So if we don't approve this, then I guess my question is to the community. If we don't approve this, then are we willing to deny eighty-one working-class families an opportunity just because of some parking issues or traffic or other issues that are going to be there no matter what development is there? So this is going to be an issue, so this is the opportunity to provide an opportunity for people that live in the community that might otherwise be priced out. So I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'll move back to questions. There was a comment much earlier in the evening about the reason for three stories and why no shop, similar to what is happening in Westminster with the mixed use. Is that something the applicant can talk to?
So the first thing I just want to address, thank you, Mayor, for that question, is about the question about mixed use on this site. As you saw in the stamp plan and just confirming that this is in the northeast area plan that shows for residential, medium to high residential, and that's reinforced, so looking for residential units there. So not a mix of uses on this site is what we're calling for. The other thing that I would note, all the questions we hear about traffic and parking, the highest generator of parking and traffic is a retail use. So we're actually honoring that and not adding more traffic congestion to that one hundred and twenty-eighth corridor. So I just want to respectfully say that that is actually more in conformance with the neighborhood and not adding additional traffic to that. The three-story, just to pull back on why three stories, often this is a PD, a planned development, but it's based on the multifamily zone district. In your code, the multifamily zone district is at sixty feet. So we are using the PD to lower the height here to come to fifty feet and allow that to be the right cap, so it's a three-story product. So again, honoring the context of the multifamily, but bringing in and tailoring it down to a three-story product.
And I appreciate the reference, especially to the height of the building. I think the question is more, is it possible to do this with a two-story building to be more in line with the neighborhood and to blend with the single-family homes?
Yeah, and I appreciate the question, I think, is then also looking at the guidance, right, of the density that's called for on that site. Could you do it at a two-story? You would just simply lose units, right? You'd lose more families coming to this site. At some point, the site will have to have an X amount of units to really move forward. Certainly, Mayor, you could probably look at a form, but it doesn't generate that. I would also note, a tenth of a mile away in the same neighborhood closer than our site is a three-story product. So we are not changing the dynamic of that. We are simply consistent with two other multifamily districts that are in the same neighborhood north of one hundred and twenty-eighth.
So to piggyback off of that, looking at that neighborhood and those three-story apartment complexes that are there, those are smaller buildings that are spread out, so the density feels less. Granted, it's not, because density is density, but this is a large building with a very long product. Is there any thought of breaking that building up into sections in order to mimic what is already in the area?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I'll defer, as you know, this is a conceptual site plan. So right as we move forward, if we're allowed to move forward, we would continue to go through that on the final site plan. The one thing I would note, Mayor, and not at all turn to our architect here, is that in, again, comparing to the multifamily, the same zone district that's away, we have the same exact setbacks, actually more generous, that are in them. So neighborhood transition, site limitations, front side and rear setbacks, we are exceeding. We are at twenty-five feet. So we really are trying to honor that. Now I'll answer your question about could we break that into a smaller building format.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate the question about, you know, could there be another form on this site? And the thing that I would most like to say with that is there were extensive studies about different ways to meet the requirements on this site. When we prepared for that charrette in 2022, there were actually a number of different studies that looked at different things and talked about the complexities of building and navigating on a triangular site. I think everybody's acknowledged that a triangular site with access only on one side has certain limitations. And so the form that we landed on really was striving for the highest and best use of the site with livability in mind, in terms of setbacks and distances. And while it acknowledged is a long elevation, there was also a lot of real intentionality in breaking down how that massing reads with extensive depth of plane changes that far exceed what you would see on most projects.
Thank you. Another question that came up, and I think I know the answer based on what you've said, but the question on overflow parking in the Adams Twelve, I just want confirmation on the record that that is not part of the plan?
Yeah, it is absolutely not part of the plan. We have not had discussions with them. We will unequivocally believe that we're meeting the parking requirements, and we'll be able to park on-site at the one point five ratio.
Another question came up about the ditch itself and the safety concerns related to the fact that it cannot be fenced. Is there any, I guess, landscaping or detriment to keep people out of there?
Yeah, and I'll just, there was an image that we showed along the Signal Dench Trail that actually shows a three-rail, split-rail fence that we'll have along the trail itself. It was actually a specific request from the neighborhood to really delineate the trail and our landscaping. In that site plan, you may remember, we only have two access points to the trail there along that northeastern edge. So we really do define that. We also are, you know, the parking and so forth. So of course you can't, we are not putting a fence on the other sides, but really protecting that trail, if you will, to delineate that. So we have appropriate and standards or fencing that meets the standards under the community.
And then the question about visitor parking, recognizing the plan is to give stickers to the residents that are assigned. How would the property deal with visitors?
Yeah, so the parking analysis, and if I may, Mayor, and just hand this to the city manager to turn in. I said I would- just as I had promised to turn that in, I wanted to be sure and do it. That was the traffic study that looked in the intervening, in the last eight. You'll see that it's dated September fourth. We actually looked at three Maker properties, so we could answer this question to the community, and all of them are based at parking at an average of one point five. It then looked at three different times of day and night, and all three of those studies showed that forty-five percent of the parking spots were open, right? So understanding that and having that available parking. I want to transition, I'm sorry, the stickers maybe ever came up as a neighborhood suggestion. Neighbors said to us, "How can you be sure that we'll know some of your vehicles aren't spilling over to the neighborhood?" That is one way that we do it from an operation. It really has nothing to do with the parking ratio. I want to stand on our ratio in our study that we are parking at one point five. So, Mayor, I may have missed the subtlety of the question, but we are using the stickers as a way. These are people that need this housing, that desperately need housing, and they want to stay in this lease. And it's one of the things that we can manage well and operate well. We want to have and be great neighbors, so that's another way the neighborhood requested that we could use our stickers and show that, that we know that's in there. So that's simply an over, something else that we can do for the community. It's not part of a program. We are meeting by a parking ratio.
And I think the last question I had was based on the fact-checking of the stamp plan.
I'm going to let staff do that, so I'm not editorializing.
All right, so the question came up about, I think, the density that was listed in the stamp plan and whether or not that was accurately represented previously in the presentation. And so the way the stamp plan is laid out is it had a few kind of conceptual plans that were considered as part of the process, and then it had a preferred land use alternative that was kind of the final decision on what would be ideal for the site. And so in some of the conceptual versions, there were different references to density and speaking to maybe doing a townhome-type development on the site. However, the preferred land use alternative that was selected based on the approved plan was for an average density of thirty dwelling units per acre. So that was the figure, and so what had been stated by the applicant team previously was not inaccurate. I did want to clarify, however, in terms of kind of uses there. So the triangular-shaped subject site that we're looking at is part of planning in Area A or Northeast. And then the site just south of the Adams Twelve School District Building is also classified in that same area. And the plan had called for either the residential type of uses on either of these sites or office, retail, or open lands kind of scenarios. And so that was for both sites, so- So it wasn't entirely inaccurate to state that it doesn't call for mixed use specifically, but it also does not call strictly for only residential. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right. Additional questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Coleman. You asked a couple of the questions I had on my list. But going back to parking, I heard, I recall one resident alleged that the parking spaces are all compact parking spaces. Is that correct, or are there a variety of parking space sizes included in the, in the lots? Could you expand upon that, please?
Yeah, the Thornton Code does designate the size of a standard parking space as nine feet by eighteen feet, and it allows for two-foot of overhang on the front curb, and that's precisely how all the spaces are designed. They're standard-sized spaces.
Okay, great. And then in, in our packet, there is a letter from, I believe it's Eric Hall or the, one of the principals from VTBS regarding, there's a statement regarding the property values, and it says, you know, while concerns about crime, safety, and property values are common when it comes to development, they do not bear out statistically. So could the applicant expand on that and explain what type of statistic analysis was used to make that statement and what that, what that statement means and what data you used to make that claim?
So, so I'm Eric Hall.
Okay.
I don't remember making that statement, not that I disagree with it. However, I'm wondering, because there are reports and statistics that Maker has, has provided previously, so that may be better addressed to someone else.
Thank you, council member. So our friends at Rocky Mountain Partnership created, created a kind of myth versus facts for affordable housing writ large, and they have cited a study that is included. I don't have it on my PDF here, but we could provide that in feedback. I could also just pull up the master document and believe that they're, and cite the location. It was either a university or a foundation of peer-reviewed research, so I can come back up with that. I have the sheet in front of me. I just don't have a hyperlink unless I'm looking at my phone.
And just, for the record, that, that, that letter is on page three-hundred-and-twenty of the, it's attachment number four, which is written on August fifth.
And is that from Eric?
Yes.
Um, so many of the residents complained about that no one was going to be there on nights and weekends. Do you have any plans of having security? Do any of your other properties have security?
Yes, thank you, council member. So we are onsite Monday through Friday. Fridays are generally administrative office hours to allow us to complete our compliance obligations as well as training. As is standard with all multifamily communities, there are weekends off, but we have twenty-four-seven on-call, on-demand emergency maintenance services, twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. So if there are needs and concerns, if pipe breaks, we're onsite. If there are any concerns, that we have an entire matrix when it comes to what constitutes an emergency maintenance requirement. Over the July fourth weekend, a couple of years back, at one of our older communities, we had a pipe break. The team was onsite at two in the morning and didn't leave for days, and we worked in shifts to address the needs of our community members. And that's how we go about the business. We are locally based. I live here. Our staff lives nearby. We're not an out-of-state developer. We're not an out-of-state office or management organization. We're here. Many of our community members, our employees, live in the community. Some of them live onsite, take a lot of pride in maintaining the habituality of the communities.
Thank you. Also, are you going to be installing any streetlights along one hundred and twenty-eighth?
The conceptual site plan does indicate locations for streetlights along one hundred and twenty-eighth. I believe it's to maintain appropriate lighting per the city requirements. So with the twelve-foot right-of-way dedication, there's both movement and location of streetlights.
Any additional questions from council? Is there any further presentation from staff or the applicants?
If I could just expand on your question on security. We, we have at our newer communities, including Crossing Point and Overlook at Thornton, we are investing now in security cameras and then having those monitored, live-monitored on nights. So we have, when we don't have staff there, we still have cameras that could be monitored, which gives a better response for calling the PD, Police Department, versus calling or having foot patrols. So we have better coverage that way.
All right. One last call for any additional questions before I close the public hearing.
Mayor, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Martinez. It was an Urban Institute study from April of 2022. Thank you.
All right. With no further questions or presentation, the public hearing is now closed at 12:43 a.m. Councilmember Russell, would you introduce item nine-A one?
Yes, I'd like to introduce an ordinance approving a zoning amendment including an overall development plan and planned development standards for approximately four-point-six acres of land generally located at the north of East Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Avenue between Claude Court and Lafayette Street at one-five-five-one East Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Avenue, one-five-five-one East Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Maker Housing, and move for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Russell, you made the motion, so you have the option to go first.
So I have a lot of comments that I had prepared. I have statistics, notes that I've written, lots of testimony. As mentioned, it was over four-hundred-and-fifty pages. You know, what I think this comes down to is finding the right fit for our community. I, I office at one hundred and twenty-fourth New York. I live further north on New York, very familiar with the area. I can, you know, I had plans to go in and talk about my, my stories of when I was in my twenties and affordability, coming out of the military, being here in Colorado, no family, completely on my own. So I can relate and I can understand those pains in which people have. Now, it's fifteen years ago. My day job is in real estate, I'm a Realtor, so I'm very familiar also with the affordability crisis across our country. But I think over the last four, five hours, however long it's been here, what resonates most with me is the opportunity. We've heard testimony and read testimony from lawyers, a letter from an MIT graduate, MIT, that struggles with affordability. That's a very high-grade quality of education. Licensed therapists who also lived in similar housing and now services our community. A pastor, we had multiple individuals from churches that also talked about community. And so for me, the approval or the yes vote on this really resides in, how do we do better for the residents of Thornton without displacing them? How do we not put all of these types of property build-outs in certain areas of our city, South Thornton? And the diversification is a necessity because it provides housing and it gives these children that live in this housing an opportunity to attend schools, get the proper education, have stability. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to say, you know, that your communities may or may not be affected by crime rates and things of concern, which has been brought very much so to our attention. But I'm asking our residents not to guard their safe, loving communities, but instead open them up, open your hearts to those that are in need, and help foster and build the community by giving those children and families more opportunity. And for that reason, my vote is a yes. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Ayala?
I don't want to take up too much time with comments tonight. I know it's getting late, but I'll be voting yes on this project because the issues our community faces with homelessness and access to housing are challenges that I believe we must address by taking action. And that action requires all of us to come together as a community and create neighborhoods that are inclusive of all people. This is not just a decision for a politician, but to me, it's a decision about building community for all. We cannot continue to rely on outdated systems that deny access to basic human rights of safe and stable housing. Instead, we need to build systems and spaces across all parts of our city that provide the opportunity for residents to be housed, to gain security, and to thrive. This project will offer housing to working people in our community and those who need additional support, such as a mother with a son who has autism or who needs, who needs stable housing so she can get her son to appointments on a regular basis. Employees who keep our grocery stores running, or a young person who grew up in foster care and has no other housing options. When people have a place to live, they're able to contribute to our community through work, civic engagement, and supporting their families. Stable housing creates the foundation for people to improve their lives, and in turn, it strengthens Thornton as a whole. We also need to ensure that housing is available in every area of our city. Right now, most of the housing options like this are concentrated into the south end of town, and we need to build for the future on the north end of town as well so that opportunities are shared fairly and every resident has access to the security that housing provides. So this project is about creating opportunity, dignity, and strength for all of Thornton residents. And I will just say on a personal note as well, my son attended Century Middle School, and that area I, I feel that we, as a family, have a connection to. And I truly believe that this housing will be a great addition to that community and will offer the ability for other children who may have not had that opportunity to attend Century and Mountain Range High School and afford them the opportunities that my son had as well. So for that, I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say that I think that the residents who came and spoke today have brought forward some very salient, relevant claim, issues regarding this particular project. And I want to thank them for the work that they put in on, on bringing forward those issues and concerns and pushing the, the applicant to address them. I think that the issues around parking and the issues around the traffic are legitimate concerns for any, any major change in development, in particular, this property. I do think, however, the applicant has done a sufficient job in addressing those issues. I think many of the issues brought forward regarding parking have been addressed by multiple studies that the applicant has done and also throughout the, the community engagement that has happened over the course of several years. I think that this, well, project, I, I think it's a fact that this project is going to improve the traffic infrastructure around this site, is going to benefit everybody who uses one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue. When it comes down to the future land use map and the stationary master plan, those are strategic and guiding documents, and I think they've set the table for a transition like this. These decisions were made many years ago before this council was elected and before this application was even submitted. And I think that they guide a lot of the, the framework around the decision-making on this. The, the zoning of neighborhood, the neighborhood commercial zoning that it currently in, that we currently have, does not accommodate that future land use map as well as this application. Now, if that was the only story, I would be, I would still have those concerns about the applicant. But given all the data, the four-hundred-and-fifty-page packet, which I, I want to reassure everybody that I read cover to cover, I read everybody's comments, and I made sure to carefully consider all of those factors. And I do want to commend the applicant for putting in so much time and effort into addressing those issues with traffic studies and neighborhood safety studies. Parking, I, I understand the parking, it might be one of the most difficult parts about this project. It being a transit-oriented development project, it does go beyond the parking that is required for a transit-oriented development project, and those are just the facts of what the future land use map and the stationary master, master plan designate this area. So following those guidelines and all the work that was put in, I'm going to be supporting this. But I do want to let everybody know that I did consider and take into account all of the concerns that the, the residents have brought forward, and I think that this was a good example of having a, an applicant who's willing to put in the work. And this is a conceptual site plan, so I still think there's work to be done. And as this project, if this project moves forward, then I think that, that we have proof here that the applicant is going to do their due diligence and do their very best to accommodate the needs of this neighborhood and community.
Any additional discussion? All right, so I'm going to wrap up with my comments. So this, this is a really hard one for me. So this is, this proposal highlights something that's really important for our community, how we balance growth and the need for affordable housing within the responsibility of ensuring compatibility and sustainability in our neighborhoods. So on the one hand, the zoning change could unlock development to a land that sat vacant for years and provide the housing near transit. But on the other hand, concerns are still there around the long-term impacts on services, the neighborhood character, and whether or not this is the right location for a high-density development. And so those are the things we have to weigh as a body tonight. The difference between this project and a lot of the others that come to us is that this is not a use-by-right. So there's an opportunity here to have hard conversations about what should go there, what could go there, and why the current zoning doesn't work. So there are five areas that I've looked at as I've gone through and listened to everybody's comments and concerns, and I'm the engineer in the room, so I always have to do something very careful. Because I want to be clear that this is not about affordable housing. That it's a great project, and if it was just about affordable housing, I'm a huge supporter of Maker, and I love the work that they do, but this is not about affordable housing. This is about a zoning in the area, and does it fit? So when we're looking at growth and development factors, the comments that were made about changing zoning to make something happen because it hasn't developed are valid concerns. When we talk about adequate services, the staff has told us we have adequate, adequate services. We can serve this with what we have there, and there are going to be updates made as needed. When we look at appropriate land use, the comprehensive plan allows for residential and for high-density housing. However, just because it allows for it does not mean it is compatible with the surrounding area. When you look at the comprehensive plan and the policies that go with it, yes, we have a big focus on affordable housing. But again, this project is not about affordable housing. One of the big things we have to do is worry about disrupting existing neighborhoods. And I cannot discount the four-hundred petition signatures and the number of people that have spoken that live in the neighborhood as we're talking about this. And yes, our plan calls for more housing and more transit-oriented development, but it also stresses compatibility with the surrounding areas, and this proposal may tip that balance a little bit too much. And then when we're looking at adjacent land uses, looking at that, that triangle of land, it's a very interesting proposition because what could go there, nothing has for thirty years. What should go there is a great question. I remember sitting in the meeting in 2022 when this first, this project first came up, and the ask was to go to the community and gain their buy-in, and I don't feel like that happened. I feel like we're taking that section of the houses that are on the southwest corner and surrounding them by high-density housing when that was not the plan. It's different to move into a neighborhood with something that's already there. It's a, it's different to build something. And I struggle with this a lot. I really want to support this project, but I, I cannot discount the four-hundred petition signatures and the community, so I'm, I'm going to have to vote against it. Would you please pull? community, so I'm, I'm going to have to vote against it. Would you please pull the council?
Council, please cast your votes. Motion failed to receive the majority, uh, failed to receive the required votes of five.
So with the fail, that means that nine A two is off the table, correct? I want to thank the applicant for the work that they did, and we will move on to the next item, which is council comments and communications.
I just, I didn't hear what, what, what the, uh, city attorney said. Could she, could you repeat that?
Yes, the CSP is contingent upon the zoning being approved. So the next item, we're not going to be considering because the zoning ordinance wasn't passed on first reading.
Item ten is council comments and communications. It is almost one AM, so I'll just remind council to keep it short. We'll start with, uh, word one tonight, councilmember Martinez.
Uh, I'll, I'll save my comments for the next meeting.
Councilmember Salazar? Councilmember Ayala?
I'll wait until next time, thank you.
Councilmember Unrain?
I have no comment, Stephen.
Councilmember Acunto?
No comment.
Councilmember Russell?
No comments.
I will withdraw my comments as well. Uh, it's item eleven is staff reports. There are no staff reports this evening. Item twelve is the consent calendar. Is there a member of council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none is our motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as written?
Second.
Second.
Approval of the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please read the appropriate title into the record and poll the council.
An ordinance adopting the second amendment to the twenty twenty-five budget amending section one of ordinance thirty-seven-ten, making appropriations for the city of Thornton, Colorado for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. For all funds except that appropriations for certain individual projects shall not lapse at year-end, but continue until the project is completed or canceled. Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item thirteen is action items. Item thirteen A is an ordinance repealing ordinance three seven one-two and reenacting a new ordinance prescribing stormwater rates and charges for the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system for the city of Thornton, Colorado. Item thirteen B is an ordinance repealing ordinance three seven one-three and reenacting an ordinance revising and prescribing sewer rates and charges and solid waste charges to the city of Thornton, Colorado. And item thirteen A is, C, is an ordinance repealing ordinance three seven one-four and reenacting an ordinance revising and prescribing water rates and charges for the operation and maintenance of the water system for the city of Thornton, Colorado. It turns over to Kim Newhart, our finance director, to present these items.
Um, good morning, Mayor, members of council. I have
That was rude.
I have one presentation for three action items. I'll try to keep it short. All of these slides are slides you've seen before with the exception of one. Um, the purpose of this presentation is to, to cover the proposed rates for the utility funds. Um, as a reminder, we have four utility funds, water, trash, stormwater, and sewer. Each of these utility funds acts independently, um, as a not-for-profit business with council functioning as the board of directors. Um, rates and fees need to completely cover the cost for these funds. They can't, they can't, um, share funds from taxpayer dollars, from the general fund, so they're all standing on their own. Um, as a reminder, rates are specifically designed to cost, to cover the cost of administration, existing operations, and maintenance. And then our fees are one-time revenues intended to offset the cost of growth or pay for optional services within a utility. The city's rate philosophy is to deliberately delay rate increases to minimize impact on customers. Rates and fees are always the last tool we use in response to inflation or a rising market. We do regular reviews with an outside consultant to make sure that we're fair, equitable, and aligned with city policy, and adjustments are only made when necessary. This slide basically shows a historical and projected rate increases for each of the four utility funds. They're not the same across funds. Um, these are based on actual experience, various inflation factors, and then the needs of the specific fund. So the, um, increases here represent a fully funded, sustainable financial plan for each utility for the near future. Um, water example, this eleven percent is to fully fund our planned PFOS mitigation, and then we're back to something closer to inflation. Um, a little bit more, um, this is a new slide, a little bit more context on PFOS. In June twenty twenty-two, the EPA established a new health advisory level, which was followed by new drinking water regulations, um, related to PFOS in April of twenty twenty-four. These regulations require us to put in over eighty million dollars of an investment into our system to remove PFOS from our water. Um, this project was not anticipated prior to this EPA rule, and that's why you see the sudden spike in water rates. Uh, Thornton is part of a lawsuit to recover the cost, uh, for the makers of PFOS products. And if we do recover anything from this lawsuit, those funds will be put back into the water fund to reduce further rate increases. Uh, the purpose of this slide is to show you the big-picture overview. Thornton's utility bills cover all four services, water, sewer, stormwater, and trash, for those that have trash. Um, so there's two tables here. The one on the left represents a single-family residential bill using an average winter use, so indoor water use, which is four thousand two hundred and sixty gallons. And the table on the right represents the average single-family residential bill in the summer using an average of what our users use, which is twelve thousand three hundred and forty gallons. Um, the first column on these tables is, is the utility. The next represents the current bill, followed by the proposed bill, and then finally, um, shows the dollar change. The only amount that fluctuates between these two tables is water, and that's due to outside irrigation in the summer months. So tonight's recommendation would increase water eleven percent. This is four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Um, in the winter months and ten dollars and fifty-nine cents in the summer months. Sewer rates would increase an average of six percent. That's a dollar forty-eight. Trash, um, one point three-two percent, an average of twenty-five cents. And stormwater, six percent or thirty-one cents. So the total proposed rates, um, we would see an average monthly utility bill for, of six dollars and forty-one cents in the winter months, um, and twelve dollars and sixty-three cent increase on average in the summer months. Again, um, it's important to note, this represents the most common rate, which is single-family residential and an average water user. Um, this chart is how we compare across municipalities. Um, these are comparing our twenty twenty-five current rate, which is an orange, against our twenty twenty-six proposed rate, and everybody else's twenty-five rate. The next one, we break out trash, and that's because not everybody has trash. So you, um, to get an apples-to-apples comparison, we want to look at that individually. Um, one thing to note here on the left, after the name of the provider is the service level, they're not all exactly the same. And so, um, again, to find that apples-to-apples comparison, we just want to make sure that we're, we're being transparent. Moving on to fees, um, so, so again, fees cover, um, optional services or services to pay for growth. Um, council recently did approve a, a ordinance cleanup related to definitions to align with the approved development code update. And these changes related to the requirement of irrigation connections. It didn't increase the fees, um, but it does allow the city to segregate, uh, irrigation from inside water, uh, used when appropriate. Ultimately, um, this will result in the, in better data for rate studies and a planning purpose. There is no rate increase to connection fees. Connection fee increases are set with, um, the rate study and increase based on the construction cost index, which had no increase this year. Uh, click-and-hall fees for qualified assistance customers are proposed to increase from five dollars to fifteen dollars. Um, that's still an eighty percent discount on the lowest load. And the request for container pickup, um, outside of a resident's regular schedule pickup is proposed to increase from six dollars and fifty cents to ten dollars. I do want to remind everybody that we have utility assistance, um, for qualified customers. Um, this assistance is for both single-family and multifamily customers. And then these next two slides you've seen before, um, they're just a reminder of the various things the city does, um, and how the city helps customers and how customers can, um, also help manage their bill. A quick few things to point out. ThorntonWater.com, um, is a great tool to learn the latest water news. Um, it talks about rebates and services, how to save water, any special events. Um, it's also the resource to go to, um, Find Water Smart, where you can track your water usage, you can set leak detections, and you can compare consumption to, um, similar, similar homes. That is all I have. The next steps are, we have, again, three different ordinances. The first one is a water ordinance. The second one is sewer, which includes solid waste or trash. And the third one is stormwater.
Are there any questions from council? All right. Councilmember Unrain, would you introduce item thirteen A?
An ordinance repealing ordinance thirty-seven twelve and reenacting a new ordinance prescribing stormwater rates and changes, charges for the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system for the city of Thornton, Colorado. And I ask for its, uh, a second.
You ask for its approval?
I ask for its approval and then a second.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Unrain, would you introduce item thirteen B?
An ordinance repealing ordinance thirty-seven thirteen and reenacting an ordinance revising and prescribing sewer rates and charges and solid chart, solid waste charges for the city of Thornton, Colorado, and ask for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And councilmember Unrain, would you introduce item thirteen C?
An ordinance repealing ordinance thirty-seven fourteen and reenacting an ordinance revising and prescribing water rates and charges for the operation and maintenance of the water system for the city of Thornton, Colorado, and I ask for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Council, please cast your votes. Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item fourteen is adjournment, and with no further business, we are adjourned at one ten AM. Thank you all very much.